Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart, Mayor Protem Simmons.
Present.
Councilmember Kovar, Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostic, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Circe.
Here.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Ledlog, would you please give us an update on the mayor?
At this point, I haven't heard from the mayor much today. She is in Florida. Her mother continues to be under hospice care. And we have, I don't think it's going to be much longer, but I haven't heard from her for a while. Our hearts are with her, obviously, and we expect that she'll be away for a number of days yet.
Thank you. As you can see, we have quite a few people again with us here tonight. I'm glad you had so much fun last week that many of you came back. We're going to start this evening's agenda with a public hearing on the constant yield tax rate. I have a list here of people who have signed up to speak. Following, going through this list, anyone else who wants to speak on the constant yield tax rate will be invited to the podium. If you do wish to speak, if anyone can't make it to the podium, you can raise your hand and we'll get a microphone for you. But other than that, please come to the podium and speak. And comments at the public hearing, as they are throughout the meeting, are limited to three minutes. I have David Navari is first on the list. He'll be followed by Arthur David Olson. I got you. There you go.
David Navari, 7116 Sycamore Avenue. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with everyone today. Everyone brings their own perspective to these kind of matters. I bring the perspective of myself and two business partners owned a management consulting firm. We had about 100 employees. And when we sold it about 10 years ago, and we knew that each of the financial decisions we made affected the livelihoods of about 300 employees. I appreciated the opportunity to speak with the mayor, my city council rep, and the city manager today about the budget and the tax rate. And they all seemed to talk about the critical interest in continuing city services. So I asked, the question is, have you surveyed your customers, your citizen customers, to see what are the critical services that they value the most? Because if you do that, I would welcome you to do what a lot of businesses have to do, and rank sort the services you provide, from most important, most effective, to least important, least effective, and move the resources from the lowest to the top, and live within the budget. Because the taxes are already going up because of increased assessments, taxes are going up because the Republicans are cutting our tax deductions. And it just isn't fair to people that are stuck on a fixed income. And it really hits, I think, a lot of people that don't have the means. I already have my dog walker telling me, she's a retired lady, does a great job, she's been here for 40 years, they're looking for another place to move. The cost of living is just too much. And I think you're well aware that the burden of the taxes falls disproportionately on residential base. We have subsidized apartment buildings, we have all these other rules that reduces the percentage. I guess we get about 77.2% of our tax base from single-family houses. So I just don't think this is the time to raise taxes again for a third time.
All right, thank you. Arthur David Olson, followed by Maxine Hillary.
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue. The proposed budget calls for a 7.39% increase in property taxes. For comparison, the Montgomery County voluntary rent increase guideline for 2018 is 3.1%. The March 2017 to March 2018 increase in the Consumer Price Index, CPI-W, is 2.4%. And the city's own current rent stabilization allowance is 1.3%. Based on the CPI figure, property taxes are increasing more than three times faster than inflation. That level of increase is not sustainable, and it is not consistent with maintaining an affordable community. I hope the council will adopt a property tax rate that's more in line with inflation. A rate of 51.41 cents would match the city's own rent stabilization allowance. A rate of 52.64 cents would match the CPI. And, in a nice coincidence, a rate of exactly 53 cents would match the county rent guideline. Regardless of the exact figure, it seems that in budgeting, we determined what spending would be useful, and then set taxes to cover that spending. I hope the council will take a different approach, determine what level of taxation is reasonable, and then determine what programs those taxes can support. This may mean tough decisions on delaying or eliminating expenditures. As someone living on a fixed income, I know how hard and painful those decisions can be. But I'm sure the council can make them. That's the reason we pay you the small bucks. I know you can do it. I hope you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Maxine Hillary, followed by Carol Oliver.
I want to compliment those two previous speakers because they were so poised and delivered predominantly the same message I will in such a nice way. So I get to be more emotional. Once again, I'm here to voice my opposition to yet another tax hike at a time when Tacoma faces another county assessment, when the Trump tax bill will make life tough for many middle-income property homeowners, not to mention fixed income, and when we've already seen unacceptable increases in stormwater fees and other streams of city revenue. As you know, the vast majority of city revenues come from property owners. And because of rent control, 53% of apartments are undervalued. We have the most unbalanced and thinnest tax base in the area, and the city keeps proposing more spending for more duplicate items, more positions, raises, employee appreciation packages, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I'm told by our city manager, who doesn't live or own property in Tacoma Park, that the city cannot give the rebate, the county returns for duplicate services, back to taxpayers because the city cannot figure out a way to make it reflective of the different tax rates individual homeowners pay. I'm also told that the city keeps the rebates because, quote-unquote, "it allows the city to redistribute the funds to help low- and moderate-income homeowners, rather than give money back to wealthy residential and commercial property owners." Communism much? I thought that ended when the wall came down. The notion that a woman who started salary three years ago was substantially higher than the salary the highest-paid federal worker now makes, telling me that she has created a budget that penalizes citizens and businesses by refusing to repay their tax dollars so the city can allegedly help low- and moderate homeowners is repugnant. I'm a middle-income homeowner. The city's never once offered to assist me or any of my low- and middle-income neighbors with tree management, paving the access roads used by the police fire and sanitation, invasive species erosion, or anything else. What wealthy businesses in Tacoma Park, if they're so wealthy, why aren't they the tax base that would offset the ridiculous taxes homeowners pay? I'm also told that it's the primary goal of our budget to help folks stay in Tacoma Park. Well, how about grandfathering, and have the services they need with a small over a budget, the one that has the wherewithal to overpay her? How about grandfathering out rent control, which is driving not only the value of properties down, it's suppressing any quality affordable housing from being built here, and it's demanding that low- and middle-income homeowners subsidize renters. Our elderly people are leaving. Our police and firefighters, teachers and nurses cannot buy here. Forget about a low-income person owning a home here. But we make it easy for folks like the registered sex offender who lives next door to me, or the guy who was dealing fentanyl-laced heroin and stockpiling automatic weapons to have a creekside view at an artificially priced rent. Rent control is creating ghettos, and I'm paying $7,000 to live in one, and it's not fair. Nor is asking for more full-time positions when the federal government has frozen salaries and hiring. Tacoma Park's government needs to stop trying to save the world and start thinking of the people who live here, pay their salaries, deal with the fallout of feel-good policies that ask the average Tacoma Park homeowner to pay more taxes than they should, compromise their own financial plans and ability to save, improve, and repair their own homes, and make it impossible for the folks who could contribute the most to this community to be more than-
I appreciate your time tonight. We're having to limit, we have to limit everybody to three minutes because of the size of the crowd.
Thank you, Maxine. I'm Carol Oliver. I reside at Prince George's Avenue in Ward 2. I guess it's a twofold thing. We don't need a property tax increase, we need a better budget. I know that the city manager really wants all of us senior citizens and low-income people to sell, move, leave the city, so that the city has more affluent, higher-income residents to fulfill her financial goals. But that's not what Tacoma Park is supposed to stand for. Aging in place, that program is not on her agenda. This is not the Tacoma Park I grew up in, not the Tacoma Park I grew up in where we didn't even lock our doors. With the projected rise of my property assessment this year, almost $40,000, added to this new property tax proposal by the city manager, that would raise my property taxes northwards of 7%. Is that acceptable to anyone? And I'm going to say something a lot of people are talking about, but may not say here tonight, other than Maxine. It makes one ponder the question, if the city manager were a Tacoma Park resident, and this affected her personally, would she still be proposing a property tax increase? I think not. Thank you.
Thank you. Merle Kettering, followed by Paul Hugener.
Merlin Kettering, 207 Lincoln Avenue, Tacoma Park. Sharing with you the vision of a Tacoma Park diverse, inclusive, harmonious community. It takes a village to make a village. I happen to be on fixed income, and myself, like others who are on fixed income, do not have much leeway to make it. What I notice is that people who are accommodated by lower-income policies, and people who are wealthy enough to be able to afford the housing in Tacoma Park now, create a direction that is very high and very low and stable. But the in-between people, middle-income people, cannot stay here, given the tax rate. We will find ourselves spending a sixth to a fifth of our income for property taxes. We do not earn low enough to get any of the accommodations because it is set so low, and the criteria that you use cannot be met, even though we've lived here for many, many years. We are an engaged, active part of this community. We feel we're a valuable part of the spectrum. We think you should keep us in mind when you do this. If you must raise taxes, find ways to give us some breaks as well. We'd like to stay here. We are part of the community. It takes a village to make a village.
Thank you. Paul Hugener.
Good evening, members of the council. Paul Hugener, I live on Carroll Avenue. And I want to start with your priorities. One of the top three priorities was physically sustainable government. Well, that doesn't mean you raise taxes every time. Since Kate's been the mayor, she and the city manager, every single time, have pushed for a property tax increase, and each and every time, it exceeds the constant yield rate. Now, the amount of money that they want to increase the taxes is equal approximately to $245,000, which out of a $31 million budget is almost a rounding error, okay? There's got to be a place where you guys can save some money, all right? As I did a little cheat sheet, such as it is, I determined that of our expenditures, 58% goes to personnel. The residents of this community are not about hiring the biggest bureaucracy west of Georgia. They want to give services to people that need them, not salaries to people that are skating. General government, 7%, okay? That is more than recreation department, only 3% less than Public Works, which is one of the backbones of this community, and a third of the amount of money that goes to the police department. 58% for personnel costs. If you can't find some money in there, then you're not looking in the right place. Now, what we have going on right now is another compensation study. Well, the city manager has a bent towards compensation studies, raises. I'm told that the HR department can't hire people because we don't pay enough. Well, where I come from in private industry, they get rid of the people that can't do their job, and they find people that can. Not hire more people to sit behind them and watch. I think that we need to find a way, and I asked, when Kate first became mayor, I met with her and Suzanne, and I asked them of ways that they were considering to decrease the tax burden on the homeowners. To this day, from 2015, I have not heard one idea to decrease the tax burden on the residents. Not one idea. Not even a, oh, well, we could, you know, the only thing I've heard is, well, we're saving paper in the offices, all right? There's got to be a better way. And you, as our elected representatives, need to bear down on these people who are paid fat and figure out a way to get this stuff done. The county can find a way to decrease property taxes, but not Tacoma Park, because they're too busy giving raises to personnel that are benefiting year after year after year. Every night, we have almost $500,000 sitting at this meeting of paid people. If you count the manager, the city manager, the assistant, and the clerk, and this is nothing personal, that costs us a half a million dollars a year, okay? That's their combined salary with benefits. So, I mean, what's wrong with this hot dog stand? It just doesn't seem to be serving the people. It's certainly not serving me by coming to me every year, every other year, saying, "We need more money so we can hire more people, so I can feather my nest and have more people to have a meeting with." And I'd like to see the city council do something about it.
Thank you. That's the end of the list of people who signed up to talk about the tax rate. Anyone else wish to talk at this time? If not, we'll move on to the public hearing on the entire budget. All right. We're going to start with, this is again the public hearing on the fiscal year 2019 budget, and begin with Arthur David Olson.
Arthur David Olson, still Hancock Avenue. At recent council meetings, I've heard that a $700,000 addition to the equipment replacement reserve is adequate, and that it matches average spending from the reserve for the next five years. I hope folks can take a wild leap of imagination and imagine that I have a four-year-old child. Every time we go to the city library, that child just lights up. I realize that I've got a budding scholar on my hands, and I decide that I should start a college fund. It's probably belated, but that's what I decide. Well, I won't be spending on anything, anything on college in the next five years. If I base my savings on that five-year average, I'll save nothing and get a nasty surprise in a few years. To avoid a nasty surprise, my planning horizon needs to include all the expenses I'm planning for. The city is in the same sort of situation. Because some of our equipment lasts for decades, we get to look far down the road to get our reserves right. Knowing what we'll be spending in the next five years isn't enough. The good news is that the work of looking down the road has already been done. The bad news is that it results in the $780,000 figure in the equipment replacement reserve spreadsheet. I hope the council will fully fund the equipment replacement reserve. If you stick with the $700,000 addition, I at least hope you'll understand that the reserve is not being fully funded. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Miner, is it?
Megna.
Megna, sorry.
Hi. My name is Pam Megna, and I live on Lincoln Avenue at 300 block. My husband and I have lived in Tacoma Park since 1992. We urged the council to seek ways to significantly reduce the city property tax burden. Attempting to seek additional funds from the state or county is unlikely to result in any meaningful assistance because Tacoma Park's population is only 17,000 and is unlikely to increase. The city's only 2.4 square miles, with the exception of trash pickup, the residents of Tacoma Park are paying for and using county services. Since 2000, the city's population has not significantly changed, while the number of housing units has significantly declined. Since 2000, expenditures have increased from $12 million to $39 million, a 227% increase. It has been 18 years, but overall prices have only increased a little over 42% over that time period. Our total property taxes are in excess of $11,000, 3,800 of which are city taxes. To put this into perspective, if I lived outside of Tacoma Park and we paid the same taxes, our house would be assessed at $1.1 million, 53% higher than its current assessed value, okay? The federal $10,000 deduction limit for state and property taxes, and the lack of state legislation to counteract these changes, increase the likelihood that homeowners will focus their attention on the incremental tax, property tax, from residing in the city. Many Tacoma Park residents will face increased state taxes as a result of the change in the federal law. Maryland expects to reap $300 million windfall in tax revenues from 22% of the taxpayers as a result of the changes. I'm assuming part of that 22% of taxpayers are Tacoma Park residents? The council should consider the most efficient means to deliver services to its residents. The city does a better job than the county in the services such as provision of recreational programs to city residents, oversight of rental units, and snow removal. But it's inefficient for a town of 17,000 to have a full police force, when we're already paying for a county police force. In the county, only Gaithersburg, the city of Rockville, and Tacoma Park have police departments. Gaithersburg and the city of Rockville's police forces are auxiliary. The proposed tax rate is .5450 compared to 2620 for Gaithersburg and 2920 for the city of Rockville. The city gets some money from the county for having a police department, but that's irrelevant to homeowners because their county tax bills are unaffected by this fact. Expenditures for the police department will be $8.5 million, and the force will account for 38% of the city's 172 FTEs.
Thank you.
You have the rest of my statement. Thank you.
All right. Paul Hugener.
Yeah, two separate sign-up sheets. Just relative to the budget, I just would like to see this council try to steer the staff in the direction of distributing services and not just continually hiring more people and giving more raises. You know, I mean, we need another budget hawk. Tim used to be that budget hawk. I'm looking for one of you ladies to please step up to the plate and help us out. Because this is getting out of hand. I mean, I had a neighbor who sold his house for almost $800,000. He moved to North Carolina and got three times the house for half the price. I mean, you're forcing even the wealthy people out. It just doesn't make sense. You know, the budget is in no way, shape, or form connected to this idea of fiscal sustainability, fiscal reality, or whatever. There are many people on fixed incomes, I amongst them, okay? Because we can budget, doesn't mean we should pay other people fat salaries to have meetings. It's just ridiculous. And so many things that the staff touches just blow up. The dog park costs twice as much, okay? The library, budgeted at $7 million, now they have to have sub-water drainage investigation or something. It's one of the first things that we used to do, was soil borings. And a million dollars for a design of the fancy library? Who decides these things? When we need a lease attorney for the junction development, $87,000 plus the attorney that we have on retainer. Where does it stop? We want to get a new chief of police? Oh, we'll hire a search firm. How much does that cost? We need a roadway survey? Oh, we'll hire another firm. I mean, Tacoma Park is like the breadbasket for engineers and consultants, and we're paying for it. I mean, take a look at the real numbers. When you see them, they're just atrocious. You know, 58% of the entire revenue of this upcoming FY19 budget will go to personnel, you know? And I would dare say- You know, and I would dare say, you know, we get four police per shift maximum, four out of the 42 or whatever that are out there. That's number one. We have one chief at $146,000 and three captains at $125,000. We should have selected one of the captains to be the chief, but no, we have to have this elaborate process. Everything's a process in Tacoma Park, as long as they don't have to pay for it. If you'd start holding people on the staff responsible for the effects that they create and for their work that they do, and holding them to their budget, you'd see a lot different picture of things. And I hope that we can do that in this budget and upcoming budgets.
Thank you. Okay, again, I've hit the bottom of the list for people who signed up to speak about the budget. Does anyone else wish to come to the podium to speak? Come right ahead. And if anyone else wishes to speak on the budget, go ahead and get in line. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Sally Kern from Woodland Avenue. I just did a cut and paste and wrote out one of the, one of the city council's priorities from the Tacoma, city of Tacoma Park website. And number three, I'm sorry, number two is to have a fiscally sustainable government. And under that, excuse me, it says, current city council priority details, and this is in all caps. It says, goal, minimize adverse impacts of changes to the federal tax system. Strategy, sorry, I get nervous.
Take your time.
Assess implications of changes to federal tax system and develop tactics to help mitigate adverse impacts. Desired outcome, colon, minimize adverse impacts of changes to the federal tax system. And I would say that that's extremely applicable to the rise, proposed rise in property tax rates. So, I would say that if, if that is one of the five top priorities of the city council as stated on the Tacoma, you know, city council website, and that is the number one priority under fiscally sustainable government, I say that that's pretty self-instructive. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Please state your name and address.
David Navari, 7116 Sycamore. The common theme when I spoke with my city council representative, when I reviewed this document on the budget justification, and when I spoke with the city manager, and I appreciate everyone's time, was that there was zero, nada, there was no quantifiable data to justify any of this. Everybody was busy. They were busy, and there was a lot of initiatives, new initiatives, and we couldn't do this. Our firm, we had a time and accounting system. Every single hour was tracked. If the city council asked the city manager for the next new shiny project, we would budget it out. You would know the schedule, you would know exactly how much it would cost, and then you would say, that's great, what do you want to stop doing? What projects do you want to kill? Because we can't keep adding more and more. I know it makes people feel good, all these projects, all these services you want, but you have to start deleting and killing services and live within the budget. That's, that's, that's what commercial companies have to do. That's what we have to do if you want to keep some of these elderly citizens around that are stuck on fixed income. The burden is way too high on residential base. We need to go out and hustle revenue for other sources. And I've been working with Kate and others to try to attack this tax duplication issue. I also ran an analysis of the size of the Burlington, Vermont, where I grew up, police department compared to our police department. We have 67 staff here for 17,400 people. They have 136 for 45,000. For every one of their staff up in Burlington, there's 330 residents. Here, it's 259. So, we're 27% less efficient. If you look at square miles, for every one of the police officers up in Burlington, Vermont, they cover, there's eight, they only have eight staff members for every square mile. We have 26 staff members for every square mile. So, again, I would just ask, try to base these decisions off quantifiable data, use an evidence-based approach. There's always going to be a myriad of new requests, new good ideas, and we just can't afford it.
Thank you. All right, anyone else to speak on the budget tonight?
Yes, my name is Kitty Tucker. I live at 615 Kennebec Avenue, and I have learned today where the funding for the person who would be hired to help the city develop a socially responsible investment policy that would not have us banking on the bomb. It's only a $15,000 item, and it's on page 40 of the budget. And when they sent, sent me the page number, they said, well, maybe they should have itemized that so that people could tell what it was for. And I urged the city council to set an, a meeting at which the public is invited to share with you their concept of a socially responsible budget. Because there may be other things, because I'm on the Nuclear Free Zone Committee, I have been very active in not banking on the bomb, but there are other things that the city probably shouldn't invest in, like coal, anything that increases our carbon emissions, weapons and armaments, and I'm sure there are other items that other people might bring up as items we would try to avoid. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I hope you keep the socially responsible funds for that purpose.
Thank you.
My name is Velmut Lanza. I'll be back to talk about the junction. I want to say a few things about the budget. As you can imagine, we have these discussions in our household all the time between my husband and I, what we can and cannot afford. It's a continuing back and forth. I feel that the proposed budget is out of control. It's not prudent, it's not fiscal responsible, and I would expect something a little bit more prudent from the council. So, I hope you take that in consideration. I defer to others who know more about budget matters than I do, but it seems pretty clear. Also, I work for the government, the federal government. We currently have a hiring freeze. I'm not proposing that you do a hiring freeze, but there are open positions right now, and these positions could maybe be filled before you add new ones. Also, maybe you might want to consider a clear expert on some of these matters, like urban design and urban planning, and maybe combine two positions into one so you can have a competitive applicant, and those are my sort of two cents on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else on the budget?
Good evening, neighbors. Steve Sletta from 13th Avenue. I'm going to take an unpopular stance and say that I'm okay with the tax increase. I ran the numbers, and it's an extra $5 a month for my house valued at approximately $500,000. I'm, I'm okay that our esteemed city manager makes more than me. She manages a huge staff and has a lot of responsibilities, but I would just, I feel like we do need to do something for, for people on fixed incomes, but for people who think the sky's falling, I would just ask you to take a look at the numbers. It's, we live in a great city, right? Talk to anyone who's got a condo association fee. My total taxes will be $227 a month for living in the city of Tacoma Park. Talk to anyone with a condo fee, it's way more than that. We get a lot more than what your average condo owner gets. We've got our own police force. We have our own recreation department, which will hopefully include a new and improved Hillwood Manor Park. We just have a lot of awesome stuff here. So, it's, it's expensive, it's the most expensive thing in the state, but just ask yourself why you chose to move here in the first place and whether or not you'd rather live anywhere else. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the budget? I believe someone's coming here, will you?
Good. Good evening. I don't have any prepared.
I'm sorry, you're.
Oh, my name is Amber Williams and Elson Street, Tacoma Park. And I'm here to talk about getting a new park for Hillwood Manor area, and I don't have anything written up or anything like that, but I just wanted just to give my two cents about it. My husband, when my husband and I decided to move into this area about eight years ago, one of the reasons that we wanted to be here was because, you know, the creek, the people, the parks, and it's kind of like its own oasis outside of a busy city. So, fast forward eight years, we now have a dog and two kids under three. And so, the park has really been, become a place that we are always, we're always there. However, the park in our area, it's pretty beaten down. It needs a lot of updates. And, and for small children, I think that's always kind of like a hazard. Of course, we definitely want them to be able to get their hands dirty, fall down, and, you know, we pick them back up and get them going again. But I do think that the park really needs some updates, if not just structurally. I think it'll be very helpful to make the park a little bit more adult-friendly as well. Around the Sligo Creek area, there are a lot of trails and bike, people are biking, they're running, and if they could also have some fitness-type area with the park, I think that would be great. And so, I do hope that we are able to get some funds for the park, if not a whole lot, if just a little bit, that I think that would just be helpful, just even just for a facelift. I think it'll really make a huge difference in our community, especially where I live. People lived there for 20 to 30 years, and at this point, this is, from talking to some of the neighbors, they said that this is the most families that they've seen in our neighborhood, so there are a lot of children that are around and attending this park. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Healy. I'm at 7009 Poplar. I've never spoken to you before, partly because I have an eight-year-old, so for the past seven years, I've sort of been busy. In order to catch up, I spent much of last night listening to the last two council hearings, and I just wanted to reflect back to you some of the things that I heard that I think you might find useful. I think that there's been a call for some data-driven decision-making in your capital planning, needs, prioritizing your needs, really understanding what the impacts of those investments would be and for how many people for deciding to invest in sidewalks because, well, it was on the list and we had to finish it, or how many people use that sidewalk versus another sidewalk on a state highway versus a city-owned road. There are some pretty basic analyses that can be done to just prioritize, put off some of those expenses until, there's a lot of development that's going on here. I'm not sure whether or not you really need to raise the taxes on homeowners right now. I mean, if we're really worried about affordability, it's just, it's a nice nod to think about it, make those tough decisions. There's some things that can wait here. There are some things that maybe are more important to do than some others because they impact a lot of people in a really meaningful way. And I think you guys have the responsibility to really look at that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jill Sletta. I live in Ward 6, and I'm Steve's wife, so not to beat a dead horse, but we'd really like some funds for our Hillwood Manor Park. It's like 20 years old, and it's unsafe. And just to bring up some figures, you guys all know the budget is $32 million. You guys have allocated $27,000 to fixing up all the parks in Tacoma Park, and kids are our future. Yes, no? If they are, let's put some more money towards their health. Because if we don't, then, then our words mean nothing. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, going, going, gone. I thank you all for coming tonight for the budget hearings. We call this budget, public hearing on the budget to a close, but we still do listen to comments and desires, so please send your emails or letters to the city clerk, and she'll distribute it to everyone on the council. All right. If we go on back to our agenda now, we're going to continue with a youth council update.
My name is Alfia Davey. I'm on the youth council, and we had our second meeting of April this past Monday, and one of the biggest things we discussed was Tacoma Junction, and so I'd like to read a prepared statement by the youth council on our priorities when it comes to Tacoma Junction. The youth council is in favor of usable and public space at the junction, and having a plan to develop this space has the potential to improve the quality of life for young people and families in Tacoma Park. However, we do have several concerns on the plan proposed by NDC. One of the most important issues for us is pedestrian safety. With increased foot traffic to the junction, there will most likely be more young children walking along Carroll Avenue, a busy road. The location of the public space proposed by NDC is right next to the street, and if children stop to play or run around, it appears to us to present a serious safety risk. Having more automobile traffic and large trucks parking in the nearby lay-by may cause additional danger. Another concern of ours is making sure that the public bus stop is not adversely affected by the changes at the junction. Many teenagers rely on public transportation and the bus system to be more independent in getting around the county. Having a usable stop at the junction will be important to people of our age. We ask that the council keep considering the well-being of the city's youth when moving forward with this development. We know that everyone in this room, whether in the audience or on the stage, desires what is best for Tacoma Park, and the youth council has stressed that the city council will move forward with a plan that will benefit the city and its youth.
Thank you.
That is what I have for tonight.
Thank you very much. And we're now going to go to public comments. We'll start out with public comments on the voting items for tonight, and the first item will be the second reading ordinance exempting 100% of inventory from the business personal property tax. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on that? Seeing none, move to the second item, which is a single reading ordinance authorizing a contract for computers, software, and support for the computer learning center. Any comments on that? All right, then we will move to general comments on any topic you'd like to discuss. Again, I appreciate how courteous everyone's been tonight, and, and also I appreciate how everybody's adhering to the three-minute limit. So, we do have a couple of people who have requested ahead of time additional time, and a couple of people who have requested some slide presentations, and so we will take those in order when, when people come to the podium, okay? So, anyone like to speak now? Any topics?
And we were going to kind of encourage folks who did have time constraints that they could come first.
That's right. I'm glad, thank you for reminding me that. I, I did want to, since many people do have children, young children at home, they may want to come and line up first so that we can take care of any, any parents who have kids either here or at home that they have to attend to tonight, and we'll try to. either here or at home that they have to attend to tonight, and we'll try to pass them through the lines, since there are so many people here tonight. So, go ahead and line up, and you can start.
Hi, my name is Renata Johnson. I live on Ethan Allen, and can we talk about the Tacoma Park or the-
Anything.
The Junction? Well, I support the Junction development, even though I love the co-op, and I'm a member, and I actually bought a house on Ethan Allen because of the proximity to the co-op. But I'm thinking about my children, I have a seven-year-old and an eighteen-year-old, and I really dislike that parking lot, and I think it should, it's been delayed for many, many, many years, and I'd love to see it redevelop as soon as possible. And I'm sorry to resent, actually, the co-op for putting obstacles, so many obstacles along the way, you know? And I walk to the school, I walk to the TPS every day, we walk with our children every day, and I really, really would like people to be more reasonable. I look in detail over the plan, and I feel like people should be more reasonable and move on. Of course, taking into consideration the traffic studies, and, you know, making things easier for the co-op, because it will be an inconvenience, but it would be a lot better for our community. And I'm thinking about myself, and my children, and people like me, to have some development there, in that area, instead of an ugly parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I do see a lady with a young child back in the line who may want to come forward. Are there any other?
I have a child.
She might have some things to say, too.
Are there any other people now with children that need to come forward? Please come on up to the front of the line.
Hi, thanks. Thank you. Hi, my name is Elena Cantoreri, and I live at 7205 15th, and I just wanted to say I love walking to the co-op. I have my five-month-old son. One of our favorite things to do is get the shoulder and go walking to the co-op, and going beyond it into the different shops and restaurants. And so, I just want to say that I am opposed to the development at the Junction, and as far as safety measures, I think that it would be best if we keep the parking lot and respect the different local businesses that are there, and so I just, I will get off the mic before he starts squealing, but I just wanted to say that I am for keeping it as it is. Thank you.
Okay. Any other people who are being pressed by children?
I have a grandchild. I have a grandchild.
Oh, no, that doesn't count, doesn't count. Back in line, okay. All right, let's go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead.
I have a grandson here who's being babysat.
Oh, that's a good reason.
Okay, and he has to go home and do his homework, okay? Please.
My name's Elias Lanton. I'm at 319 Elm Avenue, Ward 3, and I was here a couple weeks ago and made a proposal for an advisory referendum, because I felt that this whole process has been very divisive to the city, and I wanted some way to move it forward. There are good people on both sides, and I wanted some way to move it forward. That has not been embraced, so I would like to just see the council try to bring together, look at the stakeholders in this process. The stakeholders are not really NDC. These people are the stakeholders. We're the people who pay the taxes, who care about the city, and who want the best for the city. And there are people on both sides of the issue on that. I totally accept that. So, can the council try to bring the diverse elements together, come up separate from NDC with some kind of a proposal, now we have the NDC ideas, and, you know, breach the two sides to come together with something that most people can agree with, and then the city can move forward? It would be terrible for it to be voted on now with a large number of people vehemently opposed to it. It would divide the city, and it will create bitterness that is just not warranted. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. And I have just been given a list of people who have, I guess, children to-
I'm not sure. I think Evan's- I think we've been trying to go through with the list to try to catch people, so I'm not sure if it starts at the beginning here or not.
So, people can sit down if they need to.
Right, so the object is that those folks who have had their name put on the list, then you can sit down until we call you, so you don't have to stand the whole time.
Okay, so the vision is then, we got people in the front of the line?
We've got some folks here in front, I think you probably should take those, but-
Yeah, well, the front just will keep on coming around, I mean, I'm not sure that the sign-up list is going to be very effective. Yeah, I think it's, yeah, we just do it in the order that they're in line right now. Okay? So, let's go ahead, and next.
Hi, I'm Keith Kozloff, Ward 3. We're going to hear a lot of different views tonight. Based on my interactions the last few days, I think a broadly acceptable solution to the disagreement about the Junction, one that the council will support, is possible if we have the will to uncover it. But to do that, I think we're going to need to shift our approach from a focus on our respective position to a focus on interests, such as, and these are just examples, we want the Junction to be a vibrant and attractive place for more community members to visit, even if they're not planning to patronize one of the businesses there. We want the intersection of Carroll and 410 to work from the perspective of both pedestrians and motorists. We want the project to constitute a net plus for the co-op, taking account of both the project's positive and negative effects. We want the project to be economically successful, with its leasable spaces filled with tenants offering services and goods that the community, broadly speaking, finds useful. So, I think the focus on interest is important. I think that each of the different actors, the council, the different community groups, the co-op, NDC, et cetera, all have a role to play in this. But I imagine, and I fear, that the, under the current path we're following, we're either going to get a project that a significant segment of the community doesn't support, or we're not going to get any project, because I don't think this council is going to start over again with a four- to five-year process, and frankly, I wouldn't want it to. There's many other pressing challenges and priorities that Tacoma Park faces that I want the council to focus on. And if we can't find a solution in this, in the context of this current process, like I say, I wouldn't want to spend another five years on this. So, the good news is that several people have approached me over the last few days about finding a collaborative solution. There's different options that people have suggested for supplementing the current process, not replacing it. One is to incentivize the co-op and NDC to conduct more constructive engagements than they have so far, either with or without an independent mediator. Another is to assemble a group of community members interested in compromise from the two citizen groups, again, with or without the co-op, NDC, and the city as resources or observers. The council could invite the co-op to a meeting between the co-op and the city to discuss concrete solutions to the concerns that the co-op has about its business, and again, that could include NDC or not. So, I just invite neighbors to contact me if they're interested in pursuing one of these collaborative approaches. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to call Sarah Severding, who has two children, if she could come forward. Is she here?
She's coming.
Okay. Fighting through the crowd. Okay, well, we're going to go ahead and have someone else speak first, and then when she gets there, she could be next. Please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Kirk Kershaw. I live at 7100 Central Avenue, near Sligo Creek, and I'm here to strongly support the Junction development. We've heard earlier that our taxes are quite high here, and that it's largely borne by residential taxes, people that own homes. Increasing our commercial base and increasing the tax base would be beneficial. In addition, the city has owned this land for close to 20 years, and has been working on this project for over four years, and it just seems like it would link the Junction more to the downtown business district, and hopefully provide more traffic through the existing businesses on Flower. Regarding the co-op, I am a member, and it's a useful co-op, but I don't know that the co-op has surveyed all its membership to see what their approval or disapproval of the Junction development is. In addition, all co-op members aren't necessarily residents of Tacoma Park, so I ask the council and their deliberations to realize that the co-op is one voice in the community among many. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Severding, and I live a block away from the Junction on Carroll Avenue. My family and I have lived there for nine years, and I wanted to come out tonight to express my support for the site plan and for getting the redevelopment underway. We are excited. We're excited about more retail to come to the Junction, and think the project will bring a lot of foot traffic that already exists downtown up into the Junction area. This will be good for existing businesses in the Junction and good for our community. There are issues that need to be resolved, but issues are not resolved by putting up roadblocks. Instead, they are resolved by the community coming together behind such a project and thinking constructively of solutions. Thank you.
Thank you.
How do you do? I'm Marika Partridge. I moved to Tacoma Park 30 years ago. First, I lived in an apartment on Lee Avenue. We bought a house on Tulip in the historic district, and we have followed all the rules, making sure we respect the aesthetics as governed by the city. Tacoma Park cares about aesthetics, and so do I. I'm a proud citizen of Tacoma Park. I'm originally from a military family, and I never had a hometown to claim until I got here, and this is what my brag about Tacoma Park sounds like. I live in a small city on the edge of Washington DC. We have a mayor and a city council. There's accountability and responsiveness. Neighborhoods around us are governed by a county or the city of DC. Here, we're self-governed, and there's a voice for the people. And I brag like this, we're the number-one municipality to give 16-year-olds and legal immigrants a vote, so much to be proud of, a sanctuary city concerned about nuclear investment. We have a food co-op, our own library. We're progressive and unafraid to take a risk or a stand. Tacoma Park is my kind of town. I raise my three kids here, and I'm extra dedicated to this place. For seven years, I've worked on creating Tacoma Radio. Since 2016, we've had a 24/7 voice on the air. We're prize-winning, and that's part of my brag. There's a lot to brag about. I live in downtown Tacoma Park halfway between the station and the proposed development. I'm opposed. My family depends on the co-op for food and walkability. Two members of my family have neurological health issues, and the quality of the food at the co-op and the proximity of the co-op is very important for us. Those two family members need to be walking distance to a healthy food store. One does not drive, and one should stop soon. Many people have a similar need for a walk-to grocery store with healthy options. That is befitting of our small town here on the edge of DC. My respectful plea to you, City Council, please preserve the low-rise character of the Junction and build on a scale that fits Tacoma. The proposed building is too big, it crowds the space, and appears to put the co-op at risk. There's no evidence of a play area, picnic tables, or commitment to local businesses. Please be responsive to the community. Thank you.
My name is Dan Hutton. I live on Prince George's Avenue. I wanted to add my comments supporting the development of the Junction. I was raised on Pine Avenue. Some of you may know my parents, Debbie and Bruce Hutton, and I'm proud now to be raising my own children in the Forest Park neighborhood. I've been teaching at Tacoma Park Elementary for 17 years, and that's the end of my prepared statement, but I, this is, this is the Tacoma Park that I grew up in and I still love, and I just want it to get better. So, I think there are risks, there are drawbacks, but the benefits outweigh the cost. Thank you.
Okay. Once again, I'm Carol Oliver on Prince George's Avenue. I've never attended a city council meeting before tonight. I work over 40 hours a week for two nonprofits as a volunteer, and my time is limited, but I felt tonight it was very important to discuss two subjects. And forget the kids, I have five seven-day-old bottle-baby kittens at home, that 20 minutes past their due date to eat. But I am in favor of the Tacoma Junction project for many reasons, and I'm sure that a lot of these good people behind me are going to cover them. My concern is that those opposed to the Junction project are in favor of the co-op, a not-for-profit, a for-profit business, holding the city hostage on this issue. The idea that their food purveyors dictate to them the times of delivery is absurd. Almost well over 40 years of myself receiving deliveries of food and beverages, I know that other than the Montgomery County Department of Liquor Control, the customer dictates the times deliveries are accepted. I look forward to the finished project, and I like to think that it may, I don't know, lower my property taxes, or at the very least, prevent increases. And I'd like to give a little history to the folks that have only lived here 20, 30, or 40 years. Prior to the co-op inhabiting that building, it was Turner Electric, and prior to that, it was a Safeway store. People walked there to shop. My grandmother walked there to shop. Not only was it convenient, but the prices made it conducive to shop there. Think about that. The prices made it conducive to shop there. I can't shop at the co-op. The Tacoma Junction will most likely benefit all the businesses in that immediate area, and that includes the co-op. They need to start making concessions and not threats. Thank you.
Okay. Did I ask, I'd like to ask Elena Alschuler?
Hi, thank you. I'm sorry for cutting. I have a three-month-old baby, so I appreciate it. All right. My name is Elena Alschuler, and I'm here to express my support for the Junction development. I live on Aspen Avenue between Lincoln and Boyd, only three blocks from the Junction site. My husband and I bought our house about a year ago because we fell in love with the quaint small-town vibe and diverse liberal culture here. We thought it would be the perfect place to raise our family, and we now have a three-month-old baby, so I'm missing bedtime to be here. For what it's worth, I also have a degree in urban planning from MIT, and have worked on neighborhood plans for places ranging from Greensboro to Austin to the Dorchester neighborhood of Boston and Stapleton-Staten Island. I specialize in energy efficiency and the built environment, and then my last position was at the U.S. Department of Energy, before I went to work at a startup that makes smart windows that have energy efficiency and augment health benefits. If we truly believe in sustainable, healthy, and equitable development, then we should be celebrating this project. It is on an existing, underutilized parking lot in a commercial area less than a mile from the metro, an ideal site for dense, walkable uses that will reduce the car trips that local residents would need to make to shop or dine elsewhere. In fact, there is good reason to believe that the increased activity in the area will actually benefit the co-op, as people will pop in unplanned when they pass by. Moreover, the tax revenue from these commercial uses will offset the need for residential property tax increases, keeping Tacoma Park more affordable. I am excited about this development, because I think we actually need more local shopping and dining choices. The representative from the Tacoma bid confirmed my personal experience with compelling research that this area is underserved a lot, underserved by retail, and there is plenty of demand for current and new businesses to be successful. In fact, neighborhood revitalization efforts around the country have shown that having a mix of uses, including public space and retail, is actually more effective at creating successful neighborhood gathering places than large, unprogrammed, open spaces. I am very impressed by the amount of community engagement and thoughtful planning that the council has undertaken to date. In addition, the developer is clearly committed to a long-term working relationship with the community, as the design is in keeping with the neighborhood character, and they have agreed to provide public space, sustainable features, et cetera, in response to community feedback. The traffic studies conducted by both the consultants look very thorough, thoughtful, and unbiased. I think the best solution can be objectively selected based on this analysis, and it could result in an outcome that is better for pedestrians, cyclists, and cars than the current traffic situation. I have run community meetings myself, and unfortunately, the naysayers always turn out in greater force, so I encourage you to take a broader look at sentiment in the community-
I'll stop there. You've got 30 seconds.
Oh, I have 30 seconds, okay. As all my friends support the development, I trust that the council will be able to resolve any outstanding questions about traffic flow and other technical details in an expeditious manner, so we can get shovels in the ground and enjoy the improved Junction as soon as possible. Thank you for considering my-
Thank you. Evan? I'd like to ask Evan to take your clipboard and go up to the line and write people's names down. It's ridiculous to have people that have to stand in line so long, they can sit down- They can sit down and just follow if they sign up on the list. Thank you. Okay, you can go ahead with your comments.
Hi, my name is Ashley Ward. I live on Sycamore Avenue, 7007, and I support the Tacoma Junction redevelopment project as recently proposed by the NDC. I've also never spoken at a council meeting before, in part because I work full-time and try to protect evenings for focusing on my kids, but also because I'm clearly very uncomfortable with public speaking and also with conflict in general. It is taking all my courage to stand here right now. But I'm standing up here to publicly support the junction redevelopment project because I want to make sure it's clear to the council that when those who object to the development plan use phrases like "our neighborhood thinks" or "our community thinks," they're not speaking for me. I love the plan as proposed. I'm really excited to add some vitality to the junction. I'm excited by the prospect of having more businesses to frequent within easy-walking distance of my home, by the prospect of converting an ugly heat sink parking lot into something more beautiful and environmentally friendly, and by the prospect of increased foot traffic in our neighborhood. And then while I'm at it, because I'm not likely to make speaking in front of you a regular thing, I'm also in full support of the proposed development of the John Nevin's Andrews site into a center near a childcare center if that goes forward. I can't imagine a better way to support the continued diversity of our community than welcoming a much-needed childcare center with a proven track record of success at meeting the needs of lower-income families into our neighborhood with open arms. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa Hewitt-Marx. I live at 525 Lincoln Avenue, and I'm a co-op member. Many other co-op members join me in supporting the junction project. Voting it down would be a missed opportunity to improve the environment, to increase economic opportunities, and provide a place for those of us living close to it to gather. Let's move forward with the junction project. Thank you.
Hi, Laura Barclay with the Old Tacoma Business Association. I'm here to state that the Board of Directors of the Old Tacoma Business Association has voted to support the combined site plan for the Tacoma Junction development with the following expectations. We expect that there still will be thoughtful improvements should be considered to better serve the existing businesses, community, and future customers, and that the city council will continue to hold the developer to the terms of the agreement and proceed with the process as defined. We know that these discussions have been difficult, and to be very clear, the Old Tacoma Business Association values the TPS co-op's important place in our community as a thriving small business. We also value the mindful development of the junction, which we know can be compatible with the co-op's continued success. We are encouraged to hear that the co-op and the developer are in discussions again, as an expanded co-op has been one of the project goals from the start. Additional businesses in the shopping corridor will fill a gap in our commercial district, activate the street front, add increased density, vibrancy, and customers, which will benefit all businesses on the block. To continue to achieve this positive impact, we are cautious about increasing the setback of the building any further, especially in front of the proposed anchor restaurant, which may minimize its visibility and the positive contribution that an anchor restaurant will have on this entire project. I'd also like to make the following points. Point one: New commercial space will provide additional opportunities to meet the unsatisfied retail demand that exists in our community as supported by our recent Tacoma Retail Market Analysis. Point two: The current density of businesses of Carol and Laurel in Old Town contribute to the success of all the businesses in that area, per this market analysis. Point three: The community spends a considerable amount of money outside of our community as supported by our recent Tacoma Trade Area Overview, and this is economic support that we can bring back to Tacoma Park. Point four: Current leases for new buildings or newly renovated spaces in our community run from $43 to $50 per square foot and are currently leased primarily by independently-owned local businesses. Also, our commercial spaces are almost all fully leased right now in the commercial district. Point five: The current density and scale of the proposed building is approximately the same size as 7,000 through 7,008 Carroll Avenue, which is from Trattoria Delina to Middle East Cuisine. Point six: Excessive setbacks in large parking lots do not activate a street front or contribute to vibrancy. Examples in our commercial district include the CVS on Carroll Street and 6930 Carroll Avenue Office Building. Lastly, the proposed public space in the site plan exceeds the size of the existing patio space at the gazebo. So we're confident in your leadership to continue to guide the project and to demonstrate that Tacoma Park is a welcoming place for both existing and new businesses and future development projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you. My name's Paul Wapner. I'm on Sycamore Avenue, and I want to thank you for letting me speak. I'm supposed to be on Tacoma Radio at 8 o'clock. First, I want to thank the council for working so hard on this issue. I think you've developed it, and you've taken us to a place of, you've evolved the decision-making process on this. However, as we can see here tonight, this is incredibly divisive to this community. Sadly, I think we're more polarized than we have to be on this issue, and I think that in some ways, the material piece of this may be put in place, but I'm afraid of the community costs of this. I would just plead with you to slow down the process. I think we can do better. I think we can get a plan that brings us together. When I walked up here, someone said as a joke, "Are you for it or against it?" That's not the way Tacoma Park has to work. We can all be behind a great idea. This is the start of an idea, but it's certainly not the end of the idea. It could be much better. I think, as someone said earlier, we can bring a mediator in to sort of work ourselves into a whole on this, rather than go forward as a broken community. You know, it took the Quakers 100 years to make a decision about slavery. Now, they should have done it faster, but they took 100 years. That deliberate, deliberative, careful, compassionate thought went a long way. And so finally, I wanted to say this: I'm pleading with this council to bring our community together, to bring the various voices, because we can. We can do this together. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ashley, before you go, I just wanted to let people know that you had requested extra time.
Yes, I requested extra time. I'm reading on behalf of lots of people. I cut it down to make it much more brief.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the mayor does allow people to go beyond the three-minute time limit, up to five minutes with advance notice, and just so if people wondered why you go on further.
No.
I appreciate the extra time, Councilmember Siemens. You look good in that chair, but let's not tell Kate, okay? Good evening. My name is Ashley Nugent. I live on Belford Drive. I just wanted to take a second out. This wasn't planned or anything like that, but I just want to thank the council for all of your patience, city manager, city clerk. I know this has been an arduous process. And I also want to thank all of the new faces who are here tonight. There's people that you've never seen at council meetings before, people who are speaking for the very first time, people who are nervous. I want you all to know, and I'm sure you do know, this is also Tacoma Park, and I'm very, very excited that they're here. So I want to give them a round of applause. So I've been very vocal about my support for the development, but I want to use my time here to lend my voice to the neighbors who don't have the opportunity, time, or ability to attend the council meetings. I've shortened some of their statements because they're very long, but I'll provide you all with the full statements. So I'm going to start with Tom DeLiberto. He's from Prince George's Avenue, and Tom wants me to let you all know that my family would love to have been present here to give these comments in person, but they have a sick toddler, and a late evening is going to prevent them from being here. Tom moved to Tacoma Park not because of what it is, but because of what it will be, all caps, for me and my family. I want Tacoma Park to change for the better, and that begins with better progressive density development practices, and that starts here. I urge the council to make, and I can't believe I have to say this, in Tacoma Park of all places, courageous and progressive, all caps, choice to move forward on this development, working on the small things that need to be changed and set a precedent in the city that is forward-thinking with its development practices. Next is from Gretchen Goldman, also on Prince George's Avenue. Gretchen Goldman wants you to know that she's a Tacoma Park resident, a mom, and a co-op member, also a scientist. She serves as the Chair of the Air and Climate Public Advisory Committee for the Washington Metropolitan Council of Governments. Gretchen says the density of buildings has many positive economic and environmental impacts, lessening the need for Tacoma Park residents to drive and allowing for people to combine trips when out. Study after study has shown the importance of density in reducing carbon footprints, environmental impacts, and reducing traffic injuries. It is crucial that the future of Tacoma Park not be centered around the car, and development is a key step. Gretchen wants her child to grow up in a community that values people and a community that thinks about its own economic future. Tacoma Park has been very limited in its expansion of new housing and commercial space in recent years, yet these factors are vital to ensuring that our town continues to thrive. We need to think about future generations who will inherit this city. This development helps us look to the future, and Gretchen fully supports the proposal. This is from Allison McDonald on Flower Avenue. Work and travel has prevented Allison from joining us tonight, and she's sorry to miss it, and she wants to thank you all for allowing public comment. Allison also wants you to know that she's very excited about the recently released plans for the Tacoma Junction and urges the city council to move forward with the plans with little delay. The junction is truly the geographic center of the city, and a revitalization of the city-owned parking lot would give the community a gathering point within walking distance of all the Tacoma Park neighborhoods. Kelly and Caleb Gibson live on Trescott, and they want to express their support for the most recent site plan. They are excited about more places to gather in Tacoma. They can't be here because Kelly is working and Caleb is putting the kids to bed. Kelly Mills, she lives on Sherman, and she wants you to know that she can't attend tonight's meeting because she has a six-month-old and her bedtime conflicts with the evening meeting. However, she would like to express in writing that her family supports the development at the junction. Her family is eager and enthusiastic about the prospect of a desolate parking lot being replaced with a wonderful gathering place for the community. Matt and Kate Fraes from Trescott Avenue wants you to know that they are thrilled about the prospect of a vibrant, walkable community and commercial space closer to their home and feel that the developers have taken great lengths to incorporate and balance the spectrum of our community's values and preferences in this plan. They can't attend the meeting because they have toddlers, but they feel it would be a shame if the wide support for the redevelopment plan shared by young families are discounted because of their limited ability to attend. Two more. Kenyon Crawley, Belford Drive, he's supportive of the smart development of the junction. And Elizabeth Scane from Jackson Avenue, she says she can't make it because it's dinner bath time for her toddler, but if she could be there, she would say that she's excited that a local developer has envisioned great things for this severely underutilized public space. Let's not let a few solvable challenges get in the way of an awesome new destination for Tacoma Park. Thank you so much.
You may. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alex Perkins. I live at 311 Boyd, just a few blocks from the junction, and I just want to say that I support the Tacoma Junction redevelopment economically. It will generate tax revenues that will offset the need to raise taxes and hopefully pay for social programs that support the most needy among us, which should be a priority for our community and the city council. Communityally, the junction will create more local spaces for residents to spend time together. And environmentally, the development of the space will eliminate a heat island and offer more walkable retail spaces so folks can avoid driving to shop and eat outside the area. I like the co-op, and I shop there. Our family remembers. But the co-op should not be allowed to hold hostage a common-sense, thought-through development proposal that will benefit the entire Tacoma Park community. Thank you.
I'm Gordy Shaw, Forest Park neighborhood, Circle Avenue, in Ward 2. So I have recently had a change of heart regarding the proposed development in its current form. I have gone from thinking it's kind of a bad idea in its current form to thinking that it might not be so bad. And I want to explain, give a little background of my thinking. I moved here with my wife Janice 14 years ago, and we were informed by our friends that Tacoma Park was the only acceptable place to live in the DC area. I'm given to understand there's been a lot of discussion about what it means to be a Tacoma Parker. I don't necessarily know what makes that true for other people, but personally, we came here for the weirdos. So the freaks, the artists, musicians, scientists, Ls, Bs, Gs, Ts, and non-binary, hippies, punks, anti-fascists, activists, tree huggers, and all the others who don't fit into any narrative, except maybe the narrative of Black Lives Matter. Generally, the people who are here today with us all. It's my sincere hope that we can all recognize that openness to communication between neighbors that are very different is not necessarily the norm in the United States culture. Where I grew up in Pennsylvania, people practically hid from their neighbors, really. So it was really nice for me to come here and see people actually really talking to their neighbors around where they live. Among the privileges we have, this one seems particularly worth protecting. In my opinion, this is probably more important than property values of parking lot or local traffic. Mind you, I have a pretty bad commute. How do we protect our sense of shared community in the context of the pressure to make adjustments to conditions that do not meet the ideal needs of our community weirdos? Well, I think this is probably too big a question to answer in a few minutes, so let me just say the following generally in regards to the topic of today's meeting. I think it is of utmost importance to creative community, progressive creative community, to avoid stagnation. For this reason, I have changed my opinion from opposing the development project in its current form to supporting the development effort. Given the fact that people in the U.S. have a difficult time with roundabouts, in my experience, I would support. I think that triangle island looked pretty good in the traffic studies when I looked over them. It seems like that could be made to work well. And that is my time. So thank you very much for...
30 seconds. You have 30 seconds.
Oh, that's 30 seconds? Oh, I shouldn't have closed my document. Okay.
But you don't have to use...
I am sort of keenly aware, and one of my big objections to the whole thing to start off with was the hardship that the co-op may undergo as regards to getting deliveries and garbage pickup. And so I was thinking, you know, maybe if you had the pickup in the front and the offset, or rather, the drop-off of the food in the offset, and then provision for the collection of the garbage around the side, that would be enough to fill those needs at the co-op. Thank you.
All right. Now, I had everybody sign up on the clipboard, so I would say from Lisa Cookson back, you could all sit down, and I'll call your names in order. I know some of you in the front of the line didn't do it. If you all want to stand, that's fine, but I'm going to start calling names with Lisa Cookson. Could you wave your hand, Lisa?
Wait, does he sign up just because we were so close?
Okay.
I don't know.
I'm right here.
So where's the first of the people in line that stood?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll keep going in low order, and I don't know how I'm going to know when it's time to... Who's the last person that didn't sign up?
It's the gentleman with the blue tie.
We did not sign up. It was so close.
Okay, okay. So when we get the guy with the blue tie, then from that point on, I'm going to start calling names. All right, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Leah Goldstein. I did sign up, so you can cross my name off of there. I'm the... I live on Flower Ave. I'm in Ward 2. I'm the parent of three children. I'm very active in the PTA at Tacoma Park Elementary School. I'm the president this year. I'm a small-business owner in Tacoma Park. I own Little Loft. It's an art studio for kids, and I have an aftercare program there. I am also on the board of the Old Tacoma Business Association, so I'm very involved in this community, and I can't usually come to these meetings because of family obligations, but I wanted to make sure I was here tonight. I support the development of the junction. My family was drawn to Tacoma Park because of its sense of community and the fact that it's a mixed-use neighborhood, and I think adding this development is really going to add to that. It's a great place to own a business. We really were drawn to a thriving community, and I think that will add to that. I feel like it's been, from what I've seen, it's been thoughtfully designed. The developers have taken into account the values of this community, and I think it would be better for the neighborhood than a parking lot.
Thank you.
Hi, Cesar Ibanez, 7200 Central Avenue, in Ward 2. My wife Jessica Heppen and I have lived here for nearly 14 years. We have two children, 15 and 7, and we strongly support the city's moving forward with the plans to revitalize Tacoma Junction. And we want to thank the city council members, you all, and Mayor Stewart for their commitment to this process. We think that the junction project provides a great opportunity for local small businesses and for residents to support those businesses. We are excited about the NDC plans to turn the parking lot into an environmentally friendly place for our community to gather. We like that it will reduce the need to drive to other cities and towns to shop and dine. And we recently reread the city's stated vision for the junction, and we continue to support it strongly. The analysis of the economic benefits for Tacoma Park is clear, and it seems important to the city's long-term economic viability. We form part of a strong constituency of people who love living here and invest heavily in Tacoma Park through improving our homes, being involved in our schools, coaching our sports teams so more kids can play, and providing support for local events. We, the members of this strong constituency, look forward to helping realize the city's predicted economic benefits for the junction by patronizing the shops and the restaurants there. We are encouraged by the results of the traffic studies, which suggest that improving the intersection at the junction would improve traffic flow and pedestrian safety. And we know that there are details to work out, but we strongly support moving forward And we know that there are details to work out, but we strongly support moving forward with the NDC plans, which include working with the county and SHA to address the intersection. Thank you.
Rachel Healy, 7009 Poplar Avenue. I didn't want to say what I do for a living because I don't like to wear it on my sleeve, but since everybody else is, I probably should too. I'm the Sustainability Director for Metro, so when we talk about public transit and how this site will be served by public transit, whether or not it has traffic implications beyond this intersection, and also within the context of the Washington Christian McLaughlin School, the Seventh-day Adventist property, and the John Evans Andrews School, and with the junction combined, I just have to say that I think that we're not looking... There's been sort of a team sport thing that I hear going on here and which I've sort of heard whispers of in the community. Like I said, I've not been all that involved in the past. I don't take sides. It's not who I am. I respect the opinion of both sides. I don't... I'm not on the co-op side or the anti-co-op side, but I really would like us to take a look at what the impacts beyond that intersection are because... And with these developments together, because what you're doing is you're sort of developing a center, right, that's a little bit further from the metro than is walkable, okay, for most people. Maybe not everybody, maybe not sort of a certain demographic, but a lot of people are going to get between downtown and this area by car, and a lot of people are going to come to it by car. And I think we just need to be aware of there are regional efforts to try to reduce air pollution in the area, and they've looked at having activity centers. And those activity centers are in major transit corridors that are served either by major bus lines or by metro transit, by rail. So that's just one of my little things I just wanted to share. If anybody wants to talk about it, I'd be happy to talk about it with you. But I think the impacts we're looking at are a lot greater. We're also looking at the Purple Line. We're looking at more traffic coming through the town. So if we're going to... What's the induced demand? Let's say we get the state to actually spend the money to change the intersection. Do you really think that those delays are really going to stay at what's projected with just the addition of this development, right? You're going to have more throughput through the town. So I think we just need to take a bigger look at things. Also, I live on Poplar, and I think the scale of the development in the back is way too big. I think an 18-floor story is not one story, it's two.
We have a...
Like a short PowerPoint?
Okay. Are we ready for that?
Yeah.
I think Rob is coming up to help you with getting that started.
Is it on there?
Right behind you.
Sorry. I'll be quick.
It'll still be three minutes.
Jesse would know.
Well, they're doing a list.
Yeah.
We figured out we're in a list.
Yeah, and then how do I... And then we...
I've got it right here.
Which one? So I go like this?
Pass it around or something or make a...
Sure. Evan, could you help me out with that? Thank you.
And is it on the screen?
It will be. Just give me a minute.
Oh, you're going to go back there, and then I hit the button? Okay.
Just give him another page.
All right. You should be ready.
He's going to bring it up.
Hi, my name is Velmut Lanza. I live on Cedar. I used to live on Hickory. I've been at this for the last four years, and I want to start with a few small things before I run through this PowerPoint quickly. I developed this PowerPoint four years ago. Shows you how long we've been at it. I edited it a little bit. First I want to say is that we all want to speak the truth, you know, kind of taps back a little bit to what Rachel was saying. We also want to be constructive. This is not a for or against. This is about coming up with a solution. So I want to run through this really quick, and then I'm going to add some comments while I go through it. So the issues of the junction. I am where urban design meets public art. I currently work for the federal government in large public art installations, so design comes very natural to me, is very important to me, but I think for me at this point, the biggest issue is really safety and traffic. And no matter, you know, all the things that people have said about development and revitalization, they're all true. Does it have to be exactly this way at this particular location? I am not so sure. It's a major gateway. It could use a lot of improvement, but we have to be very careful. I want to tap back a little bit into what Rachel is saying because it's not just about this particular intersection. It's going to affect all of Tacoma Park. So we have lots of up-and-coming spaces, not a lot of open space. Setbacks are not always a guarantee. Infill development, you have to be very careful with. It goes back a little bit to my comment about the budget. I really would like some comprehensive planning approach, not just small ad hoc fill-ins. If we do infill, if we do urban revitalization, can we do it sort of systematic and think about it holistically? So I'll just flip through those. These were some of the major criteria for the junction. Expanded community use, sufficient open space. I did not see that in the renderings. Master Plan, Bruce Williams, who's in the room tonight, said that the last master plan was created in 2001. There were lots of new challenges in the urban fabric of Tacoma Park. We talked about the school, the McLaughlin Woods, et cetera, et cetera. We need to take these into consideration. Need for updated studies. We have all these different plans that were done quite a long time ago. You can read that in more detail. We should think about flexible programming options for these spaces. I'll be quick. There's other ways to kind of create buffers to prevent delay by, you know, sort of creating safer spaces if we go with the lay-by option. This is like a few examples of what you can do with old parking lots that have or open spaces. Some of them are... And then here are some daytime and nighttime markers that I think are really, really key to keep in mind. Another flexible programming idea that also functions at night, something to think about because the Columbia Woods is not the safest space. I'll leave it here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No, if you can close it because it's... Oh, okay. Okay.
Hi, everyone. I'm Adam Beern. I live on Hudson Avenue in Ward 5. I'm also one of your volunteer firefighters and EMTs at Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department. I just wanted to make two broad points, one more personal and one more political. The personal point being that being a neighbor of the development at the firehouse, I'm quite keen to see something there. When we are riding at the firehouse and we have to go and get something to eat, maybe get some lunch or something, we have to take an entire fire engine, an entire crew, out on the road, down to University Boulevard or wherever, throw all our stuff in there, and then come back. So having somewhere to pop right next door to get something to eat would be great, and if you're into the environment, which we all should be, then it's obviously more environmentally friendly than taking a big smelly fire truck out on the road. The more... And my second personal point is that I'm a co-op member as well, and I'm for the development. So I don't feel like my reviews are really reflected there when I hear some things coming from the co-op. And the broader political point I was going to make is that a lot of people, I feel, especially where I live, my neighbors in Ward 5, can't really afford to shop at the co-op, and that's fine, you know? A co-op is one option among many, but I feel there should be more options for other people in our community, especially in Ward 5. And if we're looking at supporting lots of the great programs that we love to have here in the city, which I would say are probably used more by my neighbors in Ward 5 than use the co-op, then, you know, increased tax revenue from the development, I think could be very useful for supporting things like the rec department that people and my neighbors use, things like, you know, a Hillwood Manor Park, or, you know, all these other things that we love to have in the city. It's got to be paid for somehow, and I think that getting that increased tax revenue from the development would help us. And so Jared, as my council member, I would really hope that you would support the development. I think it's probably more in the interests of people in our ward that it goes forward. So thank you.
I live on Flower... Well, on Hudson Avenue in Ward 5, and I am just here to strongly support the development. I have been working on this since day one when the RFP went... Wow, that was quick. Thanks, Terry.
Sleep on the switch. Sorry.
I have been working on this since day one when the RFP went out. I am a trained urban planner, and I've been very excited about this project when I worked at the city, working on this project. So I want to say that this has been a very slow, deliberate, transparent, democratic process where lots of people have had their opinion heard, including myself, for the last four years. So slowing it down is not necessarily something that needs to happen because it has been happening. Also, I am a practicing historic preservation... Preservation... I'm sorry, can't even say my own career. A preservation assist... Oh, I can't say it. And I work for FEMA, and I have been in Houston since September. And I have to tell you that having a... Being in a city that has really, really bad land use is never, ever good for anyone involved. So I think having lots of surface parking lots and anything like that is never going to be good for anyone. It's impervious. It's not good for the environment. I'd also just like to bring to the forefront this idea of the development or the site plan not being aesthetic to the area as a preservationist. I still can't say it. There is... I want to bring this idea of what the Secretary of Interior standards are for historic preservation. These are the standards that dictate historic preservation in the country, and this is something that it says about new construction. "New construction should be distinct from the old and must not attempt to replicate historic buildings elsewhere on the site and to avoid creating a false sense of historic development." So I just want to keep in mind, it is in keeping with the area. It is in keeping with the area, but it should not replicate the area. Our Secretary of Interior standard says that. So I just want to put that out there. I strongly support it. I encourage you as voting members of this to not think about future elections, but rather think about current, what people, all of Tacoma Park want, not just a small subset. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Roger Allen. I live at 401 Ethan Allen Avenue, and this morning, as usual, my trip to get my boy to school was about four times as long as it needed to be because of the existing traffic This thing is just too damn big. I mean, that's simply what it boils down to. The other thing that's an issue here is the lay-by, moving trucks in and out of there. My boy crosses that street to get to school. The truck drivers will not be able to see kids there. It's... If anyone's ever seen a truck driver follow the rules about parking, it's news to me. The truck drivers will stretch the rules, push the rules, get as far as they can on that lay-by. It will be dangerous. There isn't very much open space. It would be nice to have something besides a parking lot there, but are we really going to end up, after years of construction inconvenience, with something that's going to improve things for everybody here? I kind of doubt it. When we hear about all the grand arguments about tax revenue, my wife works for the State Department. We've moved into our house three times because we've gone overseas and come back. We said, oh, great, we're going to make some money renting our house out. We got the rent we wanted, and we were just barely broke even. Yeah, we'll get new tax revenue. Yeah, we'll get new expenses. This will cost money as well as earn money, and I doubt that everyone's spreadsheeted out to figure out how that break-even point is going to come. And it's too big. It's going to cause a tremendous amount of inconvenience. The traffic is already bad enough. It will not be coordinated with all the other grand projects that are discussed as happening like 20 feet from there, and where it's just not going to work as the pretty renderings go. It's been a tremendous frustration for the people living on Ethan Allen Avenue to have to sort of bear the brunt of all the other construction traffic over the years, and this will be more of it. One other thing I want to say to the citizens, rather more than people on the front of the table, don't count on the Montgomery County planning people to be a last line of defense. I've had dealings with them. If you put a ham sandwich in the middle of Carroll Avenue and said, I'm going to build a condo there, they vote in favor of it. So this is where you got to make your stand. If you want this changed, if you want it scaled back, if you want it made smaller, it's got to happen in Tacoma Park because it, once it goes to Montgomery County, the bigger the better. Thank you.
My name is Paul Hewitt. I'm at the 500 block of Lincoln Avenue, Ward 2, and this is the first time I've been to a council meeting. It's very enjoyable, and I appreciate your time. I just want to speak out in... I'm also, should say, a co-op member. I want to speak out in favor of the development, only because I live at Lincoln Avenue, and where we see this as a benefit for my kids, my three children, and my wife, is that we often want to link to downtown. And that walk is a bit long as it is, and it would really be nice to have a hub for us to visit, to visit those shops, and also to visit the shops that are across the street, which we often don't do now because there really isn't a draw there. And I see those businesses come and go a lot, and I'm really kind of surprised by how much turnover there is, and I get the feeling it's because there isn't enough foot traffic. So I'm very much eager to see, you know, something happen in that area, and this development seems to be a nice effort at trying to balance the needs of the community. I also want to point out that obviously there's some... The aesthetics of a parking lot are not that great, and I can tell you honestly from my heart, I've never taken my children to play at that parking lot, and I don't think... I don't have any plans to do so. So I don't see the value to our community of keeping that. And just generally speaking, I hope that we can see that, you know, sort of waiting for the perfect solution is not going to be a good option here, and not everyone's going to be pleased, but hopefully, in general imbalance, it'll benefit the community overall.
Hello, my name's Megan Scribner. I live at 7321 Willow Avenue in Ward 1. I know you and many others have spent a lot of time in the Tacoma Park Junction and development, and it's frustrating to think about delaying decisions or considering making significant changes to the design or even considering something new. But I believe it's very important to get it right, and it is worth all the time it takes because once it's done, it's done, and there are no chance for do-overs. While there are some obvious disagreements, I don't think the community is as widely divided as it may seem in these three-minute testimonies. It is very difficult to be anything but confrontational in this format. There are those of us, including me, whose priority is the co-op. It is a very important resource for our community, for the 9,000-plus members, the quality of our town and environment. Having a grocery store within walking distance means that we're a city that literally walks its talk as a locally sourced, sustainable, environmentally supportive city. I have heard some here and other places painted as an elitist store or throwback to another era, but if you go to the co-op on any day, time of the week, you'll find that the members' shoppers are very diverse and that is well-used. But I also can understand the desire for more restaurants and amenities in this part of Tacoma Park. I'm not against that. I'm not against the development, per se. The key here is size and scale. My heart drops when I see the current design plan, how it takes up the entire space, how high it will be. That frame was just stunning to me, and how it creates many issues for the viability of the co-op and future restaurants and businesses at the site, and how it leads to traffic issues and gridlock and only leaves a small space for public use, one that will be perpetually in the shade of the large building, which means that the trees, pictures, and the developers' drawings are highly misleading. I strongly urge you to go back to a smaller is better focus for the development, similar to what NDC first proposed and what led you to give them the bid in the very first place, or to an alternative vision and design. If NDC feels like it cannot afford a smaller footprint, so be it. That's not our problem. That's for somebody else to come in and look at other things that will fit the space. Focusing on what really fits the space and what will best serve us the area and not overwhelm the space, traffic, and parking will better serve us and the development in the long run.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bruce Kazarsky on Willow Avenue in Ward 1, but I spoke two weeks ago. I'm not here to speak for myself. Former City Councilman Dan Robinson had a statement that he wanted to deliver, but he can't make it tonight, so I am reading his statement in his stead. So I'll start now. In the 1980s, I helped Tom Kaufman and others circulate a petition to keep the owner of Tacoma Junction at the time, Mr. Antonelli, from putting up a People's Drug Store there. of Tacoma Junction at the time, Mr. Antonelli, from putting up a People's Drug Store there. Around 2,000 people signed. Beyond the negative message of restricting development, we also had a positive message that the city ought to purchase that lot. That petition was persuasive to the City Council, and the city did buy the lot. If those of us who signed the petition could have looked forward 30 years, I believe we would have seen a similar choice: either max out development or adopt a lightweight, inexpensive and preservative approach. As a resident of Grant Avenue, president of the SS Carroll Neighborhood Association, and later a member of the Tacoma Park City Council and a board member of the co-op, I worked on sequential visions for the lot. The choice now is clear to me. The current proposal is wrong, and something that values the co-op and public use while adding a little retailer office is a path more in line with what Tacoma Park wanted then and what Tacoma Park needs now." Thank you.
My name is Leslie Malofsky. I live at 7207 Flower Avenue. I'm a very longtime inhabitant of Tacoma Park. My first apartment that I moved into when I was a teenager, I moved out of my parents' home to go to Maryland, was in Tacoma. My first home I bought as a young, single woman was in Tacoma Park, and the home I currently live in, with my husband and son, are in Tacoma Park. So I'm deeply invested in the community and echoing what others have said. It really saddens me greatly that this has become such a divisive issue when the prospect for positive growth exists. I'm pro-co-op, I'm pro-development, if it's done in an intentional way that's consistent with Tacoma Park values, the diversity. My son is a third grader at Piney Branch. I don't feel that the people involved on either side, from what I've seen, although I've come late to the game, reflect the diversity in Piney Branch Elementary or in Tacoma Park Elementary. I don't think that white tablecloth dining is something that many of my son's peers and classmates would be able to take advantage of. So I would like to see smaller scale development that offers more to Tacoma Park residents comprehensively. What I wanted to say to you today was not all of that, so I'm afraid I'm going to run short on time. What I wanted to say was an anecdote that some people here have heard. About 30-plus years ago, a friend of mine was at the intersection where the co-op is located when it was Turner Electric. A Metro bus was in front of her, then there was a car between them, and then there was her vehicle. And she witnessed, and this story has stayed with me, I feel like I was there witnessing it because of how traumatic it was. She witnessed a young child get off the bus, his mother was behind him, he darted across the street, and the car between her and the bus wanted to move around the bus, and they did, they went around, they couldn't see the small child, and they struck him, and he died. So, this is a story from 30-plus years ago, but I am really concerned, as the mother of a nine-year-old, that this is what we're going to see more of. So I please hope you'll take the safety issues as the paramount issue on the table in whatever you do with the development. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. After the gentleman in the blue shirt, I'm going to start calling people in order from the list who signed up, okay? And Lisa Cookson will be after him. Thank you.
Hi. I'm the gentleman in the blue shirt. And I'm Rick Weiss, Pine Avenue. I'm happy to see the traffic plans getting done. From what I've seen so far, probably some imperfections, but I think it's a great step forward in continuing to improve our downtown area. I've spoken before about how great it's been to see over the last 25 years, real improvements along Carroll Avenue, getting rid of dumpsters on the street, moving parking off-street, putting in pretty sidewalks and historic streetlights. Why in the world would we want to go backwards and build something completely out of scale and out of character on this newly improving, always improving main street of ours? That is the question I want to ask. I also want to say upfront that when I hear people who are in favor of this development say things like, "I don't want to have a parking lot there," I haven't heard anyone here advocating for a parking lot. We all want to make this area better. The question is, what are we going to do with this last big piece of our land that we own as citizens of this community? So, you know, I'm for converting the lot into something good, but just because this is the plan that NDC has come up with doesn't mean it's the plan that we have to go with or that we ought to go with. And as someone else has said, if NDC can't make something profitable enough for itself that suits our needs, then let's go to someone else. We don't need to stick with them, we're not married to them or something, right? So, and as a reminder, let's go back four or five years, when we, as a community, decided together in a long process what we wanted to do with that space. I never hear people talking about that anymore. But a little bit of memory, and you look back at the document, it's still on the website, we wanted expanded community space, pavilions, gardens, playground, park. I don't see any of that. The little patch that might be a little bit bigger than the gazebo, but big deal, is a slap in the face to us for what we ought to be getting out of that space. That problem is representative with many problems with this design, where finance was first and the rest was a make-to. First, we're going to make enough money, and then we'll figure out how to give people maybe what they need. And it stretches from everything, from where the elevator is placed, which is completely wrong for people who are parking and shopping in the co-op, to big things like the lay-by, which is a terrible idea and just completely disrupts our city's street. Last thing I want to mention is that we're two weeks away from a vote, and there are still not even measurements on many of these drawings from the developers. When I was at the historic--the facade commission a couple of weeks ago, people on the dais that day were shocked that there were not even numbers on these diagrams yet. We don't know how they're going to deal with runoff. How big exactly are these things going to be? There are so many unanswered questions. It's time to step back, take a break, and rethink this from scratch. Thank you.
And after her is David Goodson.
Hi. My name is Lisa Cookson. I'm a resident, 18 years at Tacoma Park. I live two blocks from this proposed development on Grant Avenue, just around the corner here. And I'm here today to strongly urge you to vote to approve the proposed Tacoma Junction Development Project. I have taken the opportunity to read the community vision for Tacoma Junction Group's Facebook posts and websites. In addition, I've read the letters from the city to the developer NDC, the co-op, and the respective responses, and I urge you to continue to move forward. The NDC's site plan delivers what is needed for this area: an incremental, infill, mixed-use building with streetfront retail, all wrapped up in a beautiful plan. This will enhance our fine city. Our earlier topic on tax increases will be helped tremendously by this proposal. This is the exact building type that will meet the needs both of the tenants and the residents of Tacoma Park. It is the next logical step in Tacoma Park's development cycle. This is a proven development pattern that has been built in towns and cities across the United States. This development pattern has developed--delivered financially and ecologically sustainable development that leverages our existing transportation and civil infrastructure investment, and we should welcome it in our community. Plus, I just want more exciting places to walk to, right here in Tacoma Park. Again, I urge you to take all of Tacoma Park's residents, businesses and visitors into account when you vote, and please vote to approve this project. Thank you.
David Cookson and Susan Robb are next, too. Bruce Kozarski.
Thank you for this opportunity, on the mic. My name is Susan Robb, and I live at 203 Manor Circle. And my 1930s Sears house is threatened by the realignment of Carroll Avenue traffic plan. I thought that most of the discussion tonight would be on traffic and circulation, so I focused on that for--with my remarks. And I'm going to skip over--well, I'll read the first part of how it threatens my Sears house, but then I'll skip to the broader view of the community. Who among us would welcome a realignment that would move Carroll Avenue to within 16 feet or so from his or her property line? I dare say no one. Anyone living along East-West Highway in Tacoma Park can recount the perils of traffic noise and vibrations to one's property and peace of mind. And then I'll skip to the broader community aspects of the particular plan, the realignment of Carroll Avenue that was proposed, I think, by NDC. The realignment plan is designed from a vehicular point of view at the expense of pedestrians and cyclists. I leave the cyclist to address their own issues on this point. But from the pedestrian point of view, and from the neighborhood point of view, the loss of the new crosswalk from the bakery to the city lot leaves only two north-south paths for pedestrians, one at the fire station and one at the co-op at the opposite ends of that area. There is only one east-west path, which is across the island in that divided highway sort of thing in the middle there. And what are the odds of getting stranded midway across? These limitations adversely affect people walking, my walking neighbors, and the junction businesses alike. Finally, I'm confounded by the simultaneous release of traffic studies and plans and the handover from State Highway Administration to Montgomery County for the synchronization and management of junction signals. Do I have a few more seconds, Terry?
You have 30 seconds.
As of today, Montgomery County continues to fine-tune the light synchronization begun on Sunday. I've observed the changes in the traffic plans, and it looks to be what some of us thought all along, that the lights simply needed to be synchronized. In other words, I've seen a vast improvement in the traffic flow through the junction.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Megan Scriber, I think it is, and Leslie Malofsky.
Megan's spoken.
Okay. Oh, I--that was the one, I couldn't--Leslie Malofsky?
She's spoken.
Okay. Is that Sean? Oh, this was a bad idea, I can't read.
Just go with the line. Wait a minute, some of us were waiting on line.
Okay. Jeff Hopkins, whoever was in front of Jeff Hopkins, so go ahead. Go ahead, Jeff.
Nobody's in front of Jeff.
Huh? It looks like Sean or Seth Harretts? Hassett?
Seth.
Okay, here we go.
Seth Hassett of Sherman Avenue. Thanks so much for this opportunity. And just, we're 13-year residents of Tacoma Park. We love being a part of the community. We love the co-op, we're members. And I--we have a lot of respect for the spirit of this community in terms of questioning development, holding our people accountable, but we also are strongly supportive of the development plan, and just wanted to voice our support. We've been watching closely for the last four years, and this process has involved a lot of community input. And it is time to move forward with continued accountability, but a process to make sure we have cohesion in our community, walkable businesses. And I do believe our community can come together and, after this decision, and move forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you. After Jeff is Ben.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Hopkins. I live at 51 Walnut Avenue. And I would like to ask, if the answer is stop redevelopment, what in the world is the question? Is stop redevelopment perhaps the answer to the question of how to save the co-op? The co-op reports 2017 revenue of close to $10 million, with a challenge of turning around a couple hundred thousand dollars of groceries every week and taking out the trash. The logistics of doing this are trivial, because the co-op loads and unloads through the city parking lot. With redevelopment, this would no longer be trivial, but it's not nearly as daunting a task as made out to be and will not put the co-op out of business. The question can't be how to save the co-op, because the co-op doesn't appear to want to be saved. Thank you very much. It wants to be left alone and made whole. And a pony, perhaps. I think if they ask for it, they might get it. Could stop redevelopment be the answer to a different question: how to solve the traffic problem? I have a friend who's a planner. He said he's pledged to take all of his eventual Powerball earnings and use it to fix Tacoma Junction, just flat-out fix it, which I thought was great, although another friend who's also a planner says even Powerball money isn't sufficient. The second planner is correct, in part because we give too much deference to cars and trucks. The problems are regional rather than local, and redevelopment cannot make much difference in congestion either way. Given this, the question of how to solve the traffic problem is a red herring in the redevelopment. Debate and discussion, it's misleading and distracting. One more to consider: could stop redevelopment be the answer to the question of how to improve the environment? At last weekend's pop-up, I was drawn to the issue of stormwater runoff. One person asserted that there is no way that redevelopment can absorb the project's surface runoff headed into the Chesapeake. To add insult to injury, there will presumably be waivers on demand from the city available to developers if it is proven that they are unable to comply with their permits. I have more faith in our regulatory process than that. The redevelopment project gives us a chance to fix some environmental problems posed by an impervious surface on a former landfill site, and stopping redevelopment will do the opposite, continuing to impose environmental liabilities. Wrapping up, I think the question is, how do we make Tacoma Park a better place for the people who live here now and in the future? It encompasses all of the other questions above. So if the problem is not the question, it must be the answer. City Council, do not stop Tacoma redevelopment.
Thank you. Ben, and then Kim.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ben Rampell. I'm at Cleveland Avenue in Ward One. This is my first council meeting. I moved here about 16 months ago with my wife and two kids and dog from Honduras, and I'm very excited to be here for a very, very long time. And I'm here tonight to express my support for the development of the junction. The last seven years, we've been living in cities around the world that are very insecure and lacked any public space at all. I was excited to bring my family here to Tacoma Park, because wherever we are in town, we feel safe, and there's a beautiful public park within walking distance or within a short bike ride. And that's an environment that I want my kids and my family to grow up in. It's my humble opinion that the development of the junction right now will in no way adversely impact the many, many beautiful public parks and spaces that we regularly enjoy in safety and security in this community. What the development will do is allow us to enjoy one of the other things that we love about Tacoma Park, and that is the joy that my family feels when we're walking around town and we run into friends and neighbors more often, with an additional walkable, accessible and attractive option for small retail and public community space, while spending our very limited disposable income locally to help this incredible progressive community. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Kim? And Rick will be next.
Great. I didn't know if the line was actually the right order. My name is Kim Hanum. I live at 108 Sherman Avenue. This is also my first city council meeting. It's not easy to get here. We have two small children, we both work, they're actually next door in the azalea room past their bedtime. But I thought it was important to come, because prior to now, I didn't realize it was important to speak up if I was in support of the development. And now, recently, it's been brought to my attention, and certainly with the contentious arguments I've been hearing, I think it's important that everyone's voice is heard. And so, it's not that I don't have concerns about safety, certainly some of these stories tonight have been concerning. But overall, I really want this project to move forward, and I thought it was important to tell you that I am in support of it, and I hope that you will move forward, obviously taking the traffic study and whatnot into consideration. So, thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Rick, and then Pam. Rick? Rick? And then Pam.
I'm Rick Vitullo. I'm a local architect. I live a block away from the junction. I live a block away from the junction on Woodland Avenue. I want to give my impressions of the primary illustration, which is the perspective rendering that I've seen that seems to be the main drawing that is selling this proposal by NDC. And I want to tell you that I'm supportive of development of this site, and I'm actually charmed by what I see in the design. However, what I see in the perspective drawing is a small-scale building. In actuality, the building is 40 feet tall. And that is too tall. Forty feet is actually five feet taller than the peak of the firehouse, and that thing is huge. While I'm an architect, I also do perspective renderings for other architects and other clients that are used to sell designs to certain audiences. To me, and I'm sure to others, this building looks to be, from the rendering, about 25 feet tall, which is actually a perfect height for the neighborhood context, which, in this location, I think should be about a two-story-type structure, about 25 feet tall for a commercial building. A 40-foot-tall building is more like a three- or four-story building in height, and there is no need for a two-story building to be 40 feet tall. I believe to have this drawing honestly show its true height and mass to us, I urge the developers to create an honest drawing. Show neighboring adjacent buildings like the 19-foot-tall co-op on the left and/or the 35-foot-tall firehouse to the right, adjacent to the junction building. Show the perspective from the vantage point of a pedestrian eye level or 5' 6" tall. The current drawing is shown, I estimate, from a 15-foot-high level, which diminishes the perceived height of the building, and I feel like that is not an honest drawing. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam?
Hello. My name is Pam Matson. I am a Ward 3 resident from Lincoln Avenue, and I have been in front of you several times expressing my opinions, so I'll be very brief tonight and just say that I'd like to thank Mayor Stewart and this council and the previous council for all the incredible thoughtful work that they've put into this process, and again, reiterate the transparency of it. And like I said, I've expressed my opinions in the past, so I'll just say now that I support the Tacoma Junction revitalization and ask for you to vote to move forward with the site development plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Caroline Swicker. I live in Ward 2 at 701 Colby Avenue. I want to say, first of all, thank you to the council and to the city for your service to all citizens of Tacoma Park. I am in support of the revitalization project, and I won't use up more than this time to say that I strongly encourage you to go forward.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Noah Matson, Ward 3. We've been members for the co-op for 18 years. I spend hundreds of dollars there a month. Highly value having a walkable grocery store near my house. Having said that, I've also had to walk past this eyesore of public land, public parking lot, for that amount of time on my way to downtown Tacoma Park. The city bought it to do something with it. I want to thank the city council for actually moving forward after decades to actually do something with this property. You guys should be commended. So, totally support their revitalization effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike?
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Mike Royce, and I live on Park Avenue in Tacoma Park. I am happy with 95-plus percent of the revised site plan from NDC. This afternoon, I provided council member Kovar with my final comments regarding the Tacoma Junction redevelopment. On Monday, this last Monday, April 23rd, two traffic studies were presented to the city council. Every council member up here was present. That showed that Tacoma Junction intersection can be made much more functional and safer for both traffic and pedestrians, even with the addition of the proposed development. These two traffic studies also showed the best option for deliveries to existing and proposed new businesses is the proposed lay-by on Carroll Avenue. The Tacoma Junction redevelopment will provide several positive benefits for residents. There would be an improved quality of life because there will be more choices for eating and drinking establishments within walking distance for many people. There would be an increased vibrancy for this area, which hopefully will have a ripple effect throughout much of the city. The redevelopment could give Tacoma Park an air of funkiness and artiness, which I am strongly in favor of. So I urge the council to move forward on this project. Years ago, I had a former boss who, when a project was discussed to the point of going around in circles, would say, "It's time to put down your phone and pick up your shovel." And if anybody in this room needs a shovel, I will happily let you borrow one of mine. Thank you.
I'm on that list somewhere, Terry. Hi. My name is Linda Kolko, and I live at 117 Sherman Avenue, so I'm in Ward 3. Okay, I would like to, I've written you several letters in support, and I'll continue to reiterate my support for the redevelopment of Tacoma Junction as proposed by NDC. I have been very impressed by the plans they have submitted and enjoyed visiting the pop-up on Sunday to get a better feel for how the new development will look. I have lived on Sherman Avenue in Tacoma Park for 32 years and joined the co-op when they moved to the junction. I support the points below stated by the Junction For All Group. I think these are really excellent, so I will state them quickly. The council has afforded everyone multiple opportunities to speak at meetings, talk directly to council members, and write comments. The process has continued through two mayors, three elections, and a clutch of new members. The city government is doing its job, moving at a slow, deliberate pace. It is difficult to imagine a more democratic process, and I thank you all for that. We have an attractive proposal for a site plan from the Neighborhood Development Company, which has done its fair share of listening to the council and input from citizens. Can more be done to improve the plan? Of course. That's why the council is engaged, and thank you again for that. Should we look carefully at the impact on traffic? Of course. The council will be digesting data from not one but two traffic studies prior to making a decision. The key question isn't whether the traffic will grow, because we know it will, it will no matter what we do. It's whether we can handle the incremental change that the revitalization will bring. Does the co-op have a chance to thrive? Yes, it does. A development that brings more people to the area, diners, shoppers, strollers, that can hardly be bad for a specialty grocery store. Imaginative thinking can solve problems like delivery and trash haulage. The co-op seizes the moment. Above all, let's take a cool look at what's being proposed, try to improve it, and continue to move forward. Again, thank you, Mayor Stewart in absentia, and the city council members for allowing the many voices and ideas of Tacoma Park residents to be heard and supporting such a democratic process to incorporate many of the suggestions. However, now is the time to move forward with the redevelopment of Tacoma Junction. Thank you very much.
All right. Did Sam Brown? Is Sam Brown?
Jeff is Sam Brown.
Okay. You were on the list here?
Thank you.
And after him is Sue Immerman.
Thank you very much. Sam Brown from Central Avenue in Ward 2. Thank you to the council for all your work on this and the past councils for their work as well. I don't want to take up too much time, so I'd just like to respond to a point raised by my esteemed fellow citizen, the man in the blue shirt. And this really comes to, I wish this process hadn't been so divisive. And I wish that some of those people who had concerns about the site could have those concerns addressed, but I think at some point, you really do reach a binary decision. And in speaking with my neighbors about this project, I've come to understand that the city has been working and thinking about developing this site in one form or another since 1980. I think that if we don't move forward with these plans, even if we have to make some adjustments, if we don't move forward now, I think it's going to be another 38 years before anything happens. And I really hope that we don't have a parking lot there in 2056. That just seems like a waste, and it doesn't seem like it's reflective of Tacoma values. The parking lot really isn't useful for anything. I attended a beer festival there, and I've got to say, a hot parking lot in July is a really bad place for a beer festival. And I will just close on that note. I support the development, and thank you very much for your time.
Sue, I'm allowing Sue to go early just because of a business commitment she has in the morning, so please go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm reading tonight because in the past, I talked off the cuff, but I'm...
Speak to the mic. Closer to the mic.
Here?
Yeah.
Hold the mic to me.
You're good.
Bend it to me.
Your time's slipping away. Go ahead.
Okay. Is that working? Okay. So, I wrote what I wanted to say today. Normally, I speak off the cuff, but I didn't want to do that. I just want to say, I'm supporting the redevelopment for Tacoma Junction and to go forward as with the path we're on. I'm not for, I'm not against the co-op, and I vote with my feet and shop there at least once a week. And we've belonged to the co-op since it opened on Sligo Avenue, so we're co-op members, and we love having the convenience of that. Here's the rest of my pedigree. I've been a Tacoma Park resident since 1975. I raised my family here, and along with my daughter Eve and my husband Tom, we happily made a significant investment and commitment to the community in purchasing two properties in Tacoma Junction. Eve and I own and operate Mad Fitness, a small fitness studio on Carroll Avenue, but none of that really matters. I'm not more important than anybody else. I know that. I'm just here to speak as a business owner. And so, I wanted to speak because I know there's been a lot of discussion about how businesses will be impacted. And there's been some pressure about how we should be speaking or what people are thinking. And so, I want to speak for myself. And so, when people are talking about the small businesses at the junction, they're talking about businesses like ours. And even I jumped in when we saw the opportunity to open a studio here because it's our hometown, and people asked us not to have a big-box studio, but to open a studio here that they could come to because they were scared of, you know, the big gyms. So, we were really lucky. Even though we knew that the junction was the problem child of Tacoma Park, there was no parking, there were empty storefronts, no businesses wanted to set up here, and nobody really wanted to come out to the junction because there was nothing here and those kinds of problems. But we knew that we wanted to make it work. We live right down the street, and we thought we could make it work. So, things I want to talk about. I want to talk about the worry over rising rents at the junction, and the fact is that the majority of the junction businesses are owned and operated by the building owners, if that makes sense to you. So, rising rents is not really an issue, and I want to say that the people...
You have 30 seconds.
30 seconds. Okay. The people who own the buildings aren't greedy scumbags, you know? They're just other people, and they're not trying to make a ton of money off of us. About property values, trust me, I don't want my property value to raise because I've been told that I just want my property values to raise so I can sell and make more money. Far from it. I pay enough taxes. I pay my fair share. I'm fine with that, but I don't really want to be paying more. I don't care.
Thank you.
I had more, but that'll do.
You can submit written comments. You may submit written comments to the city clerk, and they'll pass them on to the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Susan Katz-Miller?
Hi. Sue Katz-Miller, Ward 3, former Piney Branch PTA president. I watched the traffic presentation on Monday, and I admit I had a hard time fully understanding it. I don't envy your job. I can't imagine being responsible for all the details and making the right decisions. And once again, I thank you for your service to the community. I'm awaiting the release of the full studies and ask when that will be. It sounded like some data was based on six hours on one single day. I do hope that's not the case. But primarily, I ask if both traffic groups interviewed the fire department, crossing guards, and adjacent businesses. I'm formally requesting that the council interview these key local experts and invite them to come give public comment before we take any action at the junction. Unfortunately, our fire chief, Tom Musgrove, could not be here tonight, but since we have a lot of new faces here, he authorized a reading from his statements from previous public meetings. At city council July 20, 2016, the fire chief said about the lay-by, quote, "We're constantly blocked right now at the fire station while trying to exit. We often have a major issue. My concern is, with putting tractor-trailers there, we're going to increase our inability to come out and provide the necessary protection to our citizens in Tacoma Park." He also said about the co-op, quote, "You have strong community ties to one of your businesses here, and coming from a place, Rockville, that lost all of that several years ago, I applaud you for what you have here in Tacoma Park." And this year, at the session with the State Highway Administrator on April 5th, the fire chief said, quote, "Ask yourself, how are these tractor-trailers going to get here? Are we now going to increase the flow of tractor-trailers up and down Philadelphia Avenue through town? We haven't done our job to make this a safe environment for the elderly, the walkers, the bikers. We already have a problem right now with traffic congestion in the morning and the evening just getting out of this firehouse. Understand, the slower we get out of this fire station, we're not able to do our job. Our job is to protect each and every one of you. When you dial 911, it's our job to get there as fast as we possibly can," end quote. So, we must tap our own experts on junction traffic and safety, the fire department, crossing guards, and the adjacent businesses, including the renters, for any junction plan. And if we are going to restructure the junction as the studies seem to recommend, then let's do that before we further complicate things with a lay-by, new shoppers and workers, and an underground garage with an exit just around the blind corner from the firehouse. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Maceel? Maceel Fuzan? No, you can tell me how I clobbered that. Thank you.
That's okay. My name is Marcel Fazard. I live in Ward 3. I've heard so many amazing facts and information tonight, I can't possibly think of anything else I can add to it, except that I do support the revitalization of the junction, and perhaps some of our citizens that are urban planners, there's so much knowledge here in Taylor Park, can come and help the council out. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob Carter. Rob Carter?
Rob.
Okay. Ariel Woods? Oh, okay. Ariel Woods will be next.
Sorry, it's been a, couldn't get up to the podium quite fast enough. Hi, I'm Rob Carter. I live at 7302 Maple in Ward 1. Hi, Peter. Lived there for four years, and prior to that, lived there for nine years on Grant Avenue in Ward 3, right where the junction is. So, I just wanted to talk tonight to add my voice to the chorus of folks who are supporting the development plan for the reasons that are articulated probably far better than I could. The only other thing I wanted to say is that we've been doing this, we've been at this for, you know, four years now. My older daughter is nine, or excuse me, was nine when this started. She's a teenager now. And I'd really like my kids to actually be able to take advantage of this development. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Ariel Woods, followed by Annie Moser.
Hi. I'm Ariel Woods. I live in Conway Avenue in Ward 2. I moved to Tacoma Park 17 years ago. This is my very first council meeting. I'm representing my household, including my 10-year-old and my 32-year-old brother, who I think is propping up the entire, like, restaurant industry with all the dates he goes on. I'm supporting the junction, and I want to say that I've been here long enough, and I'm sorry for anyone in the drinking game of how many years you've been here, like, just made everyone drink. But, you know, I've been here a long time, and I remember when there was controversy about the CVS sign. And I want to say that what makes Tacoma Park Tacoma Park is not the co-op, and it's not the CVS. It's not any of those structures that we inhabit. It's the people who fill the spaces and the way that we fill them. And when I think about, like, okay, the building at 7050 Carroll, which I think physically belongs in a Rockford Files rerun, but spiritually, when I'm in that, when I'm in Fair Day's play, I feel like I am definitely in the spirit of Tacoma Park, even if the building isn't quite what I want a building to look like. I think that when people gravitate here, there's no defining characteristic, but it's where we all come together, it's how we come together. There are homeowners and renters and apartment dwellers. I've been all those things. Overall, it's a wealthy suburb, but my daughter goes Piney Branch. She walks right through that intersection every day on her way home from school. A third of those kids qualify for free and reduced lunch. And I want to make sure that the way that we keep our community from turning into Bethesda, I don't think it's going to become Bethesda anytime soon, is that we keep on developing re... And when I think about, like, okay, the building at 7050 Carroll, which I think physically belongs in a Rockford Files rerun, but spiritually, when I'm in that, when I'm in Fair Day's play, I feel like I am definitely in the spirit of Tacoma Park, even if the building isn't quite what I want a building to look like. I think that when people gravitated here, there's no defining characteristic, but it's where we all come together, it's how we come together. There are homeowners and renters and apartment dwellers. I've been all those things. Overall, it's a wealthy suburb, but my daughter goes Piney Branch. She walks right through that intersection every day on her way home from school. A third of those kids qualify for free and reduced lunch. And I want to make sure that the way that we keep our community from turning into Bethesda, I don't think it's going to become Bethesda anytime soon, is that we keep on developing resources to serve all the members of our town, not just preserving the existing ones. I also want to say that I work in Bethesda. I've worked in Bethesda for 16 years, and as I've worked there, more and more people are telling me that they drive through Tacoma on their way to work because they live out in Hyattsville. And those are the people who are stuck at that junction stop sign. I have made the maps on how to go around it. I think that it has to be improved, but I don't think that the development is or isn't going to be the thing that creates traffic. I think that if anything, I'd like to be able to catch some of those people so that some of the time they spend with their cars idling is also time that they're putting money back into our community. So, I'm going to close with, Tacoma Park, Tacoma Park, people who choose to live here, a building can't break us. We can do this. Thanks.
Thank you. We've got Annie Moser, followed by Amanda Boyce.
Hello, I'm Annie Moser. I'm a 23-year resident of Tacoma Park, and I live in Ward 1, right in Hodges Heights neighborhood. I've raised two children here, and my grandparents were 40-year residents of Tacoma Park. I'm invested in the community. I volunteer with a racial equity working group at the youth garden right here at the community center, and I facilitated an anti-bias seminar here in the community center and plan to do more in the future. I'm a strong supporter of the NDC site plan. I would be proud to have a LEED-certified building in our community, especially in a place that begs environmental improvements. If you are ever curious about the effects of a heat island, just look at the youth garden here at the community center. The beds in the parking lot are covered with weeds that grew over the winter, and the beds near the library have no winter growth. I have also been asked to speak for Jennifer Aliva and her husband Adam, who live a half a block from the co-op on Carroll Avenue. They say that they strongly support the NDC site plan, living within walking distance of the junction. They look forward to having new commercial space nearby. Jennifer and her family, they have two elementary-age children, walk to most places in Tacoma Park, and they want this to be the next. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Boyce, followed by Alan Zibble.
Hi, I'm Amanda Taylor-Boice. I'm also in Hodges Heights up the street, and I've lived in our, we bought our house in 2005. Both of my girls were born here. We are, they are both now at Piney Branch, and we're all very proud Tacoma Park residents. We are also co-op members, and we fully support the co-op. Tonight, I'd ask that the council approve the Tacoma Junction site plan as soon as possible so that we can move to the next phase of development. I think with a little compromise and a lot less hyperbole, we can make changes to the current plan that will be able to satisfy all reasonable concerns and help revitalize an underutilized part of Tacoma Park. Not only will it eliminate an eyesore, a heat sink, and a source of polluted runoff, it will invite more foot traffic to all the businesses in the junction. It will increase our tax base. It will keep our local dollars from being spent into Silver Spring and DC. We've had four years to think this through, and I think it's time to move forward with development. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan, followed by Vern Kelly.
Hello, my name is Alan Zibble. I have lived here for just over five years. We're on 32 Philadelphia Avenue. I am Ward 1. Hi, Peter. I just wanted to add my voice to the chorus of people who are supporting the development plan. We think it will be a very good addition to the community. It will be a walkable, livable, you know, fun addition. I think it'll be good for the co-op. I think people who are working in the offices that will be constructed as part of the development will come there and buy, you know, buy lunch, buy a beer on the way they go home, buy, you know. I think it'll be good for the small businesses in the neighborhood. I think it'll be an economically viable development that'll bring a lot of interest and excitement to the area. And I think that, you know, I do live on Philadelphia. I know, you know, I've seen a lot of traffic, a lot of 18-wheelers, a lot of trucks going by. I wish they wouldn't, but, you know, I don't think that this will be much of an incremental difference in terms of traffic. I think that, you know, if anything, it could, maybe it'll even take some cars off the road when people are not driving up to Rockville or driving to outside Tacoma Park to make their purchases. So, I strongly support the development. Thanks.
Thank you. Vern Kelly, followed by Tony Camilli.
Good evening, council. Vern Kelly, Westmoreland Avenue, Ward 3. This is my business. I'm a site planner and a landscape architect. Wow, this is incredible. Thank you, everybody who have not come before. It's good to hear your voices, your opinion. We're not that divided. We just want something better. We want solutions. We want first, do no harm. Now, we have a traffic study, but do we have other ideas? We had ideas in October where we passed a resolution, you passed a resolution, or the prior council did, which was not favored by everybody, but it was something that we don't have now as a result of the new design. Your resolution had a 35,000 or 34,000-square-foot building and a two-story restriction. You've heard Rick Vitello and others tell you that that's not what we're getting. The developer wisely went after Johnny's Auto and added 15,000 square feet to his building to get to 50,000. That's not what was approved by the council. 35 was it. So, I'm for development, but how about this? How about the building move away from the co-op, over to Johnny's and stay at 35, leaving a big open space next to it? And also, as another thing, because we as landscape architects have to design the fence that we have to sit on so we can play to both sides, why don't we do this for traffic? Let's get rid of the parking lot, completely. The underground, the lower-level parking. No driving to that site. That only encourages traffic. Let's be green and sustainable. And if you have to have, because listen, it'll save the developer a heck of a lot of money, okay? And you are getting into possibly Pandora's Box with the landfill that's down there, all right? Another idea would be, if you do have to build it, have only non-gas, non-combustible cars because you don't want to pollute the air and push it out the back into the houses and other people. You're basically going to have soot coming out of there. And of course, the elevator has to be moved. And if we left the space open for the co-op, maybe there would be a way during off-hours, which they darn well learn, better learn how to accept and get, because anybody will deliver anything to America at any time. There's always somebody who'll step up. So, in that open space that's next to the co-op, or even in their parking lot, they can receive the goods they need. But if we separate those buildings, and not by seven feet, my goodness, that's an alley. That's like Rat Haven. We don't want that. We want real good planning within a size and a footprint and the right kinds of businesses, not eight different businesses because that generates more and more traffic. Let's get smarter. Let's push a button that says, "We, council, we, city, do want this, but we can do it much better." Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Camilli, and Alan Strasser.
Tough act to follow right there. Evening, members of the council and Madam Mayor and absentia. I'm Tony Camilli. I live in, on Tulip Avenue, Ward 1. And I've made my news, my views known about this junction development for quite a bit of time. I've written about it quite extensively through blog posts and whatnot. And I just want to say publicly to the folks, the co-op supporters, that, just to be clear, I harbor no ill will towards anybody that is not personal. This is just my, these are my opinions on things like urban planning and development. I will continue to shop at the co-op. I buy all my beer there. Very, pretty good selection. So, whoever's doing that, good job. Keep it up. But I do want to say thank you very much to all of you, mostly because the work that you're doing here, this is democracy at its finest. And all of you, in my mind, deserve a pat on the back and probably a pay raise, although it's not the right time to say that, for what you do, because this is a hard job. And you see that we have, we have a community of very invested people, activists, people who've never been here before coming up and talking to you. So, I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for what you do, because I think that the job demands a lot more than what you get paid for, including you, Suzanne. So, with that being said, though, I just have a few things to say about the site plan itself and a couple of things that came out of the traffic study. I think the project, generally speaking, is pretty good. Is it perfect? No. No project is perfect. Anybody says there's such a thing as a perfect project is making you, is making things up. But it's a pretty good, you know, they, the strike came, or the ball came across the plate, and they hit it pretty good. This is a nice plan. It gives you, it gives you a lot of what you want. It gives you, and also gets rid of a lot of what you don't want. A few tweaks that I'll just note. I actually agree with, and I'm sympathetic to co-op supporters that believe that we should have probably an elevator shaft closer to their store. As I looked at the site plan, I think that that is what I will call a missed opportunity. I think it would be disingenuous to say that people are not going to be driving to this parking lot. As the gentleman before me said, if you build for cars, you get cars. People are going to drive to this park, to this parking lot because they're going to know that, they're going to know there's parking there. So, if people are going to be driving in the parking lot and there's going to be a parking garage, let's give people who are going to the co-op the ability to access the co-op easily and not have to traverse through the public space. I think that that's kind of a missed opportunity. Wow, I've done it 30 seconds. As I said, don't just build for cars. I really think the council is missing an opportunity itself. Put Carroll Avenue on a road diet. Go from four lanes to three. If you want to get rid of people that we talked about earlier who are crossing through from Hyattsville and whatnot, put the road from four lanes to three. Put it in a road diet. You can have turning lanes in the middle that share the space, and you can put in bike lanes so people can get to the co-op by bike, by walking, and by cars. That's all I got to say. Thanks.
Okay. I've got Alan Strasser, followed by Paul Mackey.
Hi, good evening to the council, and thank you so much for all your hard work and deliberations on what is a very, very tough issue. I am on 7215 Garland Avenue, and I've been a member of the co-op for over 20 years. I get my hair cut at the junction. I go to hot yoga. I'm one of those crazy people riding their bike up the hill to get to the junction. So, I've seen it from a pedestrian perspective as well. And I guess my main thing is that I am for the development, but I do think there's been some really good concerns raised. I don't want to rehash them, but I think the devil's going to be in the details. I do want economic development. As a property owner, like many of you, I want good amenities. I want good quality things I can go to. But I also don't want to degrade the community and just turn this into a big traffic quagmire. That is a concern of mine. Trying to park at the, in the co-op area during rush hour is a nightmare. I think all of us know that. I go to yoga. I ride my bike to yoga because I can't, I can't park half the time. Sometimes the lot is full. So, it's very difficult. And so, what I'd like to just say, leave you with, is to say that I do think the gentleman or several gentlemen that suggested that consensus building is pretty important to optimize the costs and benefits of this proposal, to get us across the finish line is going to be important. So, I think we're almost there, and I do think there's a lot more common ground in this audience than there is, there are differences. Your continued leadership will be important, and I was a former mediator for many years, so there's no black and white here. I don't think this is a co-op versus everyone that wants the development. I do think most people want some kind of development, but they don't want it to be too overwhelming. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've got Paul Mackey, followed by, I think it's Margie O'Mello.
Hi, thanks for having me up here. I just want to make one quick point about, I think, people have talked about it quite a bit, but connections, connection is very important here, I think. My name's Paul Mackey. I live down by Forest Park on Prince George's Avenue. I'm literally in transit from Columbus, Ohio, which recently won a $40 million US DOT grant to become a smart city. And a lot of what they're, so I've been out there this week and learning about what they're doing to really connect the city in much better, much smarter ways. And so, I started in Columbus in the bus that the OSU athletes use, and they dropped me off at the airport after I went to a vehicle testing area. To get to the point, though, I went to the airport, and then I got here, I rode the metro, and then I rode Capital Bike Share down here. It was a seamless connection from Columbus downtown to Tacoma Park, and at least two of three of those services are pretty good. Bike share's growing. Airplanes always have their seats full. I won't comment on metro right now. But another thing is I'm director of a transportation demand management think tank over in Arlington County. Arlington is a really great example. Tacoma Park's not like Arlington, but if you've ever been on the three-mile stretch of the Roslyn-Bolston corridor, it is amazing to go over there and see. They had the foresight 40 years ago, the council, to put metro underground and build a beautiful mixed-use transit-oriented development for three miles. And you go over there, and there's no traffic. It's amazing. You'd think it'd be bottlenecked all the time, but going down Wilson Avenue from Northern Virginia into Washington DC, there's not traffic. There's beautiful bike lanes. There's protected bike lanes. It's walkable, huge wide sidewalks, not a lot of parking. So, I think that that's the kind of thing we can do here. And I just really want the connection to happen in Tacoma Park because I never go around that way to get anywhere. And it's a shame because it's right in the middle of me and my friends. You know, I'm on Forest Park. I've got friends on Philadelphia. I've got friends over by the elementary schools and elsewhere, and we don't ever meet up there. We go around that literally. And when I ride my bike or I walk, two areas that could use a lot of help in Tacoma Park in general. But this is a place where we can really set an example for the region and for the world if we're really walking the talk, that we're the Berkeley of the East. This is a spot where we can make it all come together with really smart transportation options and great development. So, I'm all for it. Let's go forward quickly.
Thank you. Thank you. Margie, followed by TJ.
Hi, thank you. And thank you, everybody, here on the council. My name's Margie O'Meara. I've lived here for a few years. I live in Ward 3. It's not my first time here. It's my second time at a council meeting. And unlike so many of the other folks who've spoken tonight, I don't have a job in urban planning or sustainable development or a PhD in something that is relevant to building this project. I'm a political consultant, so I travel around the country. I listen to people talk about why they voted for Donald Trump. That's what I do. And I moved here for the same reason everybody else moved here. We're, we, it is perhaps relevant experience in this respect. We all, we, everybody in this room, I suspect, most people in this room are here for the same reasons. They have progressive values. They want to live in a community that's diverse, that's environmentally sustainable, that is open to others and to new ideas and new experiences, and while also keeping an eye on the whole, on the holistic perspective of how we all work together. And I think that it's so toxic a few blocks away from here and everywhere else, and we don't want to have that toxicity infect this, this neighborhood and this community. And that's exactly what we're all trying to get away from. So, I think that means thinking about, folks who are on different sides of this, what our shared goals are, our shared priorities, the shared things that we're fighting for, and think about how we can all really work together to come up with a vision. What's the vision for what we want next? And if it's not a parking lot, which that seems to be perhaps at one consistency, then what is it? And I think it's having more of what we like about this neighborhood, more options to buy the sustainable things we want to buy, more options to sit outside, more options to connect with our neighbors, more options to be, you know, have all the monthly festivals we all like here. So, that's the reason that I'm supportive of the development. I don't, I can't tell you the details of what I see in the traffic study. That's not, that's out of my lane, but I am in favor of bringing more of the lovely things that we like about Tacoma Park to Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got TJ, followed by Mayor Williams.
TJ Matthews, Ward 2. I wonder how many beers it would take at the Olive Lounge before Mr. Cook, who told us he has 46 years of studying traffic. He works with the traffic group. Or the gentleman from AMT would confess that the traffic into Tacoma Junction is a cluster fill-in-the-blank. Two beers? Do either of them have opinions about SHA? Maybe three beers? This is the same SHA that recently adjusted the traffic light in Tacoma Junction and created a horrific danger for pedestrians crossing 410 where cars turn right down Philadelphia. I sure hope that's fixed. The manager here has told me that they're working on it hard. Be careful. Twice Mr. Cook passed the methodology done by AMT. AMT informed us that the method they used was the one they were told to use. They also said something about lining up their data with the traffic group. I don't know what that was about. What's going on here? AMT's analysts of one cut-through for drivers avoiding Tacoma Junction fell way short of reality, and it's an embarrassment of a failure. Drivers, including myself, use other cut-throughs regularly to avoid Tacoma Junction, such as Elm, Lincoln, Sherman, Lee, sorry neighbors. All of these should have been studied. We had heard about the new large daycare program, but Monday night was the first I had heard that the middle school is expanding. These should be part of the final math, not some conjecture on the Monday night meeting that they won't have an impact and are not a big deal. Were these documents rushed to make the 423 deadline? They both seem to be incomplete, and here we are talking about them, hoping they are sort of enough. How long has a traffic group been doing business with the NDC? I'd really like to know. That they failed to notice the current right turn into the small lot next to the co-op is a stunning oversight. Hello? Thanks to the council member who asked this question. More than once, Mr. Dorr, also with the traffic group, told us that he had witnessed the trucks making deliveries to the co-op. Did he talk to the co-op management and ask them how many trucks deliver each week? How about those of us who live here and use the junction? The traffic group pitch of the lay-by was also a failure. They showed a picture of a man talking on the phone with one hand and pushing a large-wheeled dumpster with the other, which was only one-third the size of the dumpster the co-op regularly fills. Who here thinks the co-op staff will be pushing a dumpster all the way around the store and time it perfectly with the arrival of the on-the-move trash truck? Trash trucks don't wait around. There is no way that is gonna be safe while pedestrians are walking by. This will be true of any new business in the new space as well. All of this will be true for trucks delivering goods who need more space to open doors, lower hydraulic lifts, and remove goods. And then they show us a map of where trucks that don't have space to park can go driving around town for 13 minutes. This seems like a confession of failure involving zero beers! And last, none of the traffic, traffic study presenters mentioned fire trucks and ambulances. That is a huge oversight. Thanks.
Mayor Williams, followed by Mayor, Mayor, Mary Rooker.
Good evening, council members. My name is Bruce Williams. I live in the 300 block of Lincoln Avenue. This is not my first council meeting. I think I've probably been to about 1100. My husband and I are also co-op members. I just wanna remind you that the co-op initially wanted to try and move to the, what's now the city lot, probably about 30 years ago, it was early in the time that I lived here. So, the co-op has been trying to do things to improve their business for many decades, including moving there. The efforts to redevelop the junction lot started in earnest probably at least 25 years ago. This process has gone on for now four years, and I'm encouraged that you all are continuing to work through this process, to work to make sure that issues get addressed, to improve, hopefully things like moving the elevator or having a second elevator over by the co-op, dealing with trash issues, dealing with traffic issues, dealing with delivery and loading issues. What I wanna remind you of is that I know some of you have concerns about this being kind of divisive time in the community and how to, how to work through that in your deliberations. And I would like to remind you of experiences that I had when I was on the council about divisive issues coming forward, and I called your attention two in particular. One is the community center expansion, and the other one was the either relocation or redevelopment of the fire station in its current location. And when, when you're in the middle of these things, you really feel the heat, you feel the divisiveness, the division, the differences that people have, and sometimes you wonder how you're gonna get through that. You do get through it, you keep working at it, and you come up with the best solution. And once you come up with that solution, that's been part of this long public process, this open process, people move on because they have something that's concrete, that they can deal with, that's an improvement in their lives and an improvement in the, in the community. And so, if you ask people now about the community center, people love it. I'm sure there are still a few people who, you know, hang on to know it was the wrong thing to do. And there were, there were a lot of people who got, there were very divisive meetings in here about what was gonna happen with the fire station. We moved through it, and we're served by a fire station that serves our community. So I would just urge you to keep working on this and find your path to yes, and say yes to this redevelopment. Thanks.
Mary Rooker, followed by Mr. Feinstein.
Oh, looks like someone's left their laptop. My name is Mary Rooker. I'm a member of the Board of Representatives on the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Food Co-op, proud member of Ward Two, 804 Large Avenue. Hi Cindy. Thank you for your, this opportunity to submit testimony on behalf of the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op, a grocery store with nearly 10,000 household member owners regarding the redevelopment of the city's parking lot in the Tacoma Junction proposed by the Neighborhood Development Company. Let the record be clear, the co-op is not opposed to development. I repeat, the co-op is not opposed to development. As you know, we have testified before the council on many occasions over the past several years regarding our concerns about the proposed development, and each time, we have consistently raised the following issues. One, the need for safe and efficient delivery of the co-op's products. Two, the need for replacement of the customer parking that will be lost when this site is redeveloped. Three, the need for safe and efficient trash and recycling materials, storage and remove, material storage and removal. And four, the need to ensure business continuity during construction. The board has been clear that reasonable accommodation, quote-unquote, of the co-op as set forth in the city's development agreement with NDC must meet those needs and address them fully. So, this particular testimony has three purposes. First, we wanna update you on our recent discussion with NDC about its newly presented draft site plan, and inform you that the result of the discussion was to exacerbate, rather than resolve, many of the concerns about the effects of the proposed development on the co-op. We are now even farther from the mutual goal of achieving reasonable accommodation of the co-op's operation. Therefore, we ask the city to take a more active role to ensure that our concerns have been adequately resolved before making a decision on the proposed development. And second, we wanna take this opportunity to highlight some of the significant concerns raised by our review of the summary traffic study presentation at the April 23 city council meeting. We look forward to providing a more detailed analysis, once we have had a reasonable opportunity to review the underlying data and complete analyses. Finally, we request that the council ensure, establish a schedule and procedures that will allow for meaningful review and comment on information that has yet to be provided to the co-op and other members of the public. This information includes the data and analyses underlying the two summary traffic presentations at Monday night's council meeting, and the data and analyses underlying the city's racial equity impact statement concluding that the proposed development will not proportionally impact, disproportionately impact any particular group. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Feinstein, followed by Michelle Rosenfeld.
Hi. So, we, we have a statement, a statement that different board members and consultants with the co-op are gonna give, so it continues. So my name is Fred Feinstein, I live on Sycamore, Ward Three. Hey Casey. So, the co-op is appreciative, is appreciative of a longstanding relationship with the city, whereby the co-op pays the city for space on the city lot for two of its critical functions, deliveries and trash recycling storage and pickup, and also rents a space on the city lot for overflow parking. When the city awarded the opportunity to redevelop this site to NDC, it clearly stipulated that NDC must provide the co-op with reasonable accommodation, including these functions that I just mentioned. The city also required that NDC must provide reasonable accommodation to the co-op's business continuity during construction. NDC's 2016 concept plan raised significant concerns for the co-op regarding the question of whether and how the development plan would accommodate the co-op's operational needs. NDC's bidding bid for the development contract proposed a modest scaled building and a dedicated loading area for the co-op, quite different than its current proposal. The pending plan instead shows a building that fills the entire lot and eliminates the dedicated loading area, substituting a lay-by lane in front of the development that is not suitable for multiple deliveries that are commonplace in our business. NDC also proposed to change the co-op's, proposed to charge the co-op $45 a square foot to expand into the new space. We inform you that these conceptual elements raised serious red flags for us, and you responded by adopting, and we were appreciative of this, of a resolution on October 25, 2017. While the resolution found that a lay-by may be adequate for 18-wheelers, you stopped short of reaching a conclusion. And you said, and I'm quoting, "The concept plan shows a design for deliveries by non-18-wheel trucks and trash and recycling collection that raises questions and concerns about its workability, and questions remain about the opportunity for deliveries or trash, for deliveries or trash and recycling collection to occur through the lower half of the structure of, the level of parking." Therefore, the council asked NDC to provide, in its draft site plan, accommodation of delivery, trash, and recycling vehicles in a manner that does not cause traffic problems, optimizes public enjoyment of the site, addresses the need of onsite tenants, and provides reasonable accommodation to the co-op. The council also asked NDC, NDC to provide details regarding parking options for off-site businesses located in the junction, and finally, placement of an elevator and elevator's location that serves patients conveniently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Michelle Rosenfeld and Colleen Scott.
Thank you. Michelle Rosenfeld, legal counsel to the co-op. On April 4, NDC and its consultant streets ends presented, for the first time in the four-year history of this project, a draft site plan showing some level of detail about the physical, physical relationship of the proposed development and the co-op, including parking features, the elevator, and specific dimensions of the lay-by. That was followed by additional new information presented a week later on April 11, and yet more new information a week after that on April 18. And there do remain some significant operational concerns, as you'll hear. On April 18, co-op representatives met with representatives of NDC, including Mr. Adrian Washington and Rachel Hardwick, president of the co-op, and myself, and Colleen Scott, the co-op's consultant on this project, did meet to discuss some of these operational issues. The first thing that NDC advised us was that it will not allow use of lay-by, of the lay-by for trucks smaller than 18-wheelers. During our meeting, NDC representatives stated that they will only allow the largest delivery trucks, the 73-foot 18-wheelers, to use the lay-by. NDC expects that the co-op will use the co-op's parking lot on Sycamore for its other delivery vehicles. But the AMT traffic study presented on Monday night indicates that there is no safe way for even a 55-foot truck to pull into the Sycamore lot. In addition, the co-op facilities in the Sycamore lot lack a lift to raise deliveries to the floor level at the rear of the store, has no loading dock where supplies can be unloaded, and there is no receiving area in the interior of the store at this location. Redesigning the interior of the store to duplicate the existing interior receiving area is costly and takes away valuable square footage now dedicated to other essential store functions. Without the use of the lay-by for these delivery trucks, the co-op cannot secure many of the products that it sells. By restricting access to the co-op delivery vehicles to only certain-sized trucks, the new design is even more problematic for the co-op than the earlier concept plan was. We also learned in that meeting with NDC that it makes no accommodation for storage or removal of co-op trash and recycling materials. NDC stated that the trash room located in the interior of the NDC building will be available exclusively for its tenants and will not be made available for storage of co-op trash. The open-air corridor, the alley, is for product deliveries only and is not to be used to move co-op trash from the rear of the site to the front. The area in front of the lay-by that has been designated as the area for trash removal on the NDC plans is not intended for co-op use. NDC assumes that all co-op trash, storage, and removal will occur on the Sycamore lot. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Michelle Rosenfeld, I'm sorry, Colleen Scott and Susan Chow.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Colleen Scott, development and construction consultant for the co-op. To continue our points, the council's October 25 resolution called for the placement of the elevator or elevators in a location that serves all patrons and tenants conveniently, including the co-op. We met with NDC on April 18, and contrary to the plan that was presented, they did express some willingness to either add a second elevator or relocate the elevator closer to the co-op, after we explained it was not feasible to wheel shopping carts the length of the block. So I think that we are making some movement on that point. We appreciate their direction and decision, and we hope that they consider further design modifications to address direction on other operational issues. Back to the lay-by, that it's not available for a period of use during construction, which is an ongoing thing that we keep being told will work out, will work out. There's not a concept yet for how that's going to work, and we have serious concerns about being able to get our deliveries during construction. It's highly unlikely that the lay-by could be built and operable while the remainder of the property remains an active construction site. I've heard that twice now. I've been building buildings for 20 years. We never put the curb in first, so I'm not, I'm not exactly seeing that happening here. If the co-op cannot have consistent delivery of its store products for weeks or months, the project will put the co-op out of business. The issues that we keep discussing, both the elements of NDC's draft site plan and our discussion with NDC, have made it clear that NDC is not willing to absorb the cost of the reasonable accommodations that will protect our existence at the junction, including delivery space for trucks that serve the co-op, the trash and recycling, storage and pickup, reasonable parking rates in the garage, and then back to the elevator. We're hoping that we see it closer to the co-op in the next set of plans. Instead, NDC has proposed a development project that devotes nearly 100% of the city lot to construction of the NDC building and fails to allocate any portion, meaningful portion of the building to the co-op needs. We wanna make it clear, just if we, just as we have consistently paid for our use of the city lot, we would be willing to pay NDC a reasonable rate for comparable continued use of the space, but we have not been offered that reasonable accommodation. Under the circumstances, we respectfully submit that the city must take the measures necessary to ensure reasonable accommodations required by the development agreement. We ask the city to ensure that the co-op can remain operational during construction. We'll continue, we will continue to work with both the city and NDC to ensure that the co-op can continue to provide service to its 10,000 households. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Chow and Diane Curran.
Good evening. My name's Susan Cho. I live on Manor Circle in Cindy de Balas Ward, and I'd like to, oh, and I'm on the board of the co-op. I'd like to start out by thanking council member Circe for pointing out a problem with one of the traffic group's options on Monday, which would have put some cars, would have kept them from being able to pull into the co-op's parking lot. That demonstrated that she was really looking out for our shoppers. I've heard concerns from other council members that show that there is a similar, that it's on your radar to look out for us. And since you've clearly set out the requirement that this plan reasonably accommodate the co-op, you'll want to know exactly what that entails. With the specs that we now have, we're trying to tell you as much as we can, having had less than 48 hours to evaluate the summary PowerPoint presentations presented on Monday, with our multiple alternative proposals to modify the junction. It is impossible to respond to any of them in detail or with meaningful analysis. We will however, provide some of the concerns that arise from our preliminary analysis. First, both the city's and NDC's traffic consultants based their studies on a very limited amount of data about issues such as cut-through traffic and deliveries. I understand that the standard requirement is only for one day, but we're very concerned about making major design proposals, such as for the lay-by and for redesign of local streets and state highways without adequate information. We await the provision of more data to assess this issue further. Second, it is clear that the traffic planners envisioned the use of local streets for overflow traffic from delivery trucks and cars using the junction. We're very concerned about the safety implications of the strategy. Third, the traffic consultants appear to anticipate a major configuration of the state highways adjacent to the co-op. This is clearly a very complex and significant change that could have huge impacts on co-op shoppers and others with respect to pedestrian safety, access to the co-op Sycamore lot, and access to bus and bicycle transportation. The traffic presentations at Monday night's meeting are not sufficiently detailed to assess these important issues. For example, it is critical to the co-op that shoppers may remain able to access the co-op's remaining onsite parking. As shown in this unnumbered exhibit in the presentation by NDC's consultant, this reconfiguration makes it impossible for vehicles to drive safely across the junction intersection from Carroll Avenue to Carroll Avenue to the co-op. Councilmember Circe pointed this out and asked that the traffic group address that problem. We ask that the council also consider the pedestrian and bike paths in and around the junction, as we have both employees and shoppers who arrive via bus and bicycle as well as in cars. One significant benefit to this location is that shoppers have a number of ways to travel to and from the co-op. The council must ensure that any redesign of the junction retains full vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle access to the co-op. This requires additional analysis and design work. Thank you.
Diane Curran, followed by Rachel Hardwick.
Good evening, council members. My name is Diane Curran. I'm a resident of Ward 3, and I'm here on behalf of the co-op. I'm a member of the Board of Representatives. I'd like to talk to you about one of our key requests tonight, which is to establish some procedures for considering the significant amount of information that's flowing in recently, and also the significant amount that we still need to look at. I think the council has done a really good job, and I want to make a shout out to the city clerk for constantly updating the schedule for review of this project and giving us precise dates for what's going to happen when. This is tremendous help to the co-op and I think, you know, everybody in the city. What we have here is we've just gotten some, the first detailed plans that we've had for this development in four years, just came in at the beginning of April. We also just got some summary PowerPoints about traffic studies that have huge implications, not just for the co-op, but for the entire city. I think you heard that here tonight. And of course, with a traffic study, they always have data underlying them and a more detailed analysis than what you saw. And finally, we have, the city has just established racial equity policy, and we basically have a one-sentence statement with a finding that there are basically no significant effects of the development on racial minorities, and we still need to see what was the data that was looked at, what was the methodology applied, and what was the analysis. So we have written a letter to you suggesting some specific actions to take here. It involves setting a schedule for posting, say, the traffic studies and the racial equity study, giving the public three weeks at least to review the traffic studies. This is what our experts tell us is needed for any traffic study to do a good job of looking at the data and sorting it all out and figuring out what are the implications. And then, and this is consistent with your resolution that was passed October 25th, set a schedule for some city work sessions and an open house where we can actually talk to you as opposed to the three-minute comment period, and we have some interaction. And then, and then the city should make its own analysis and share that with us and let us comment on that analysis, because you're going to want to evaluate these studies yourselves. Then finally request that if the city decides to make any changes to local roads or to seek state approval for changes to state highways, please postpone your decision on the proposed development until you've worked out all those problems.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have Rachel Hardwick, followed by Cynthia Mariel.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Hardwick, president of the board of the co-op. In conclusion, we want to reiterate that we are not anti-development, nor are we adverse to paying a reasonable price for reasonable use of the city lot at the junction. But we continue to have very specific and important needs that are not being met by NDC's proposal. Number one, we need space for safe and efficient delivery of the co-op's products. Given the frequency of co-op deliveries and the range of truck sizes, from small trucks to 18-wheelers, the lay-by provided by NDC is simply insufficient to allow for all of our deliveries. Number two, as a grocery store, we are constantly generating trash and recycling. Thus, we need safe and efficient storage and frequent removal of trash and recyclable materials. We do not have space on the Sycamore lot to accommodate trash storage or trash trucks, nor has NDC offered to rent us any space on the city lot, and crowding the lay-by with trash and recycling trucks in addition to delivery trucks is not a workable solution. We will need, number three, we will need to replace the customer parking that will be lost when this site is redeveloped. In order to serve our customers, the parking will need to be both affordable and accessible. NDC has refused to give us a price for parking in its underground garage, and it has placed the elevator serving the garage so far from the co-op entrance that using the garage will be difficult and time-consuming for our customers. Number four, finally, we need to ensure business continuity during construction. To our knowledge, ensuring business continuity usually entails some complex planning to coordinate construction with the day-to-day operations of a store. The only solution NDC has offered is to build the lay-by first. Not only is the lay-by problematic for us as a delivery location, but we don't think it would make sense to build the lay-by before digging the underground parking garage that will lie almost directly underneath it. With the more detailed information that we now have, we expect to be able to return to you with alternatives for you to consider that can help address some of these ongoing issues of concern. We will contact city representatives in the next few days with a request to meet and discuss some of these issues in more detail. Thank you for considering our concerns. We look forward to further information from the city and NDC and to further discuss these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Mariel, followed by Tina Schneider.
Thank you. I'm Cynthia Mariel. I've lived in Ward 2. I've been a Tacoma Park resident for more than 32 years. Nearly everyone is in agreement that concerns about traffic at the junction are enormous, regardless of one's view on the proposed junction development. I have several questions about the traffic studies, especially existing gaps in the research. As government officials in King County, Washington, have stated, data alone cannot drive practices, but data are central. Data are qualitative and quantitative. Who did the city identify and traffic study researchers contact as key informants for these studies? The purpose of key informant interviews is to collect information from a wide range of people, including community leaders, professionals, or residents who have firsthand knowledge about the community. Likely key informants about traffic at the junction are service providers such as emergency workers, the fire chief, police officers, bus drivers, sanitation workers, supply chain drivers, and of course, crossing guards. How did the traffic studies integrate the perspectives of users of the junction? Drivers, cyclists, bus riders, and pedestrians of all ages and abilities? How did the traffic studies include the voices of Tacoma Park residents? An informal network of Tacoma Park neighbors organized the only recent forum, of which I am aware, that brought together traffic professionals to listen to Tacoma Park residents who provided testimony about traffic at the junction. My perspective as a former usability researcher, who is that these traffic studies are incomplete without direct input from users and key informants most familiar with traffic at the junction. I trust not including the key informants that I previously named was a simple oversight versus an intentional one. I urge the city council, mayor, and city staff to commit to filling in these research gaps. I also urge the city council, mayor, and city staff to use these research opportunities to dig deeper and fully examine the racial equity impact of transportation at the junction and with the proposed development. King County, Washington, an expert and leader in government and racial equity and social justice, requires that research is data-informed as well as values-driven. Our Tacoma Park brand, our values in this community, our diversity, democracy, and social justice. Why throw Tacoma Park's brand and values under the bus?
Thank you.
We have not adequately assessed racial equity
Thank you.
in this development project.
Tina Schneider, followed by Sally Kern.
Good evening. I'm not one to usually talk about my profession, but since a lot of people did, I'm going to just say that I work for the county, and I am an environmental planner, and my focus is on sustainable urban development. That's what I do for the county. So I'm pro-development. I'm pro-revitalization, but rather, I mean, anything rather than the heat island effect that we have right now in the existing parking lot. I understand and hear the divisiveness of the community. You can help abate that by asking NDC to resolve many of the issues and address the community's concerns. You know that the devil is in the detail. A lot of the people who are pro-development were not really getting into the specifics of the details. You need to work out the details. So I would ask you to ask NDC to show us how the lay-by will work with the existing traffic. Show us how the co-op will be able to receive the goods and dispose of trash during and post-construction. Ask them to show us how the open space will enable flexibility, flexible use with accurately scaled drawings. Show us how they will meet the stormwater requirements on a 25% slope without requesting a waiver. Now, not all lead is equal. So show us how this lead gold building will meet the new carbon initiatives and International Green Construction Code, and there are many other, show us things that they could do. So I see developers all the time coming to the, to the planning board. They show us how things are going to get done. They animate things. They show us in plans. So ask NDC to show the community to help abate some of this anxiety and concern and fear that people are having. And if they can't show us, then I ask you, the board, I mean, the council, to, in a detailed resolution, have the, I mean, specify what you want before the plan is approved, and have it conditioned so that they can provide this, so that there is safety in protecting the people and the community, and we have real sustainability. Thank you.
Sally Kern, followed by Stephen Kevin.
Hello, I'm Sally Kern from Ward 2. Thank you, Cindy, and thank you, everyone else. And I would like to say, all hail to the crossing guards at the junction. There, I don't, I don't know if you know this, but one of our saintly crossing guards volunteers, and maybe, maybe I'll get in trouble for this, but volunteers extra work hours a day, every day, more than she's paid because she's concerned about the other students who go early for early activities, high school students, after-school, kids who attend after-school activities, sports, et cetera. And I would say, I'm going to show you, which you can't see, but I'll describe. Here's a photo of my high school, I mean, my college freshman when he started kindergarten here, and the neighborhood walk pool that we, we walked to, we walked to school before Lucy Neer started the, the Safe School Roots to School program. Now, this was before I started the petition, which I testified at the, the fire station. I started a petition through council member mail and the city council to get the crossing guards. But one thing I really wanted was that crosswalk at Grant Avenue, which now that, you know, my son was like three feet tall practically, and now he's like 6'3". We finally got that crossing, that, that crosswalk, which, hallelujah, I love it. It works, and it takes you, what it really does is link Carroll Avenue stores with co-op, and whatever's developed there, nobody wants a heat sink parking lot, believe me. But I would say that the traffic studies, which I've just pored over on my own a little bit, are very, very scary. Everybody talks about, everybody being held hostage. I would like to say, I don't want pedestrians being held hostage to motorists. This is huge. I would say that I was freaked out to hear the VP with 46 years' experience saying that we need to balance the needs of pedestrians with the needs of getting motorists through the junction efficiently. I sent you like 16 points about the traffic study already. I'd be happy to share that with anybody. I encourage you to put the, make the traffic studies easier to find for the layman. A lot of people can't seem to find them because they have to click through many, many links to get to them. And I would say, oops, okay, well, thank you. Is that 30 seconds or what? Is that, is that it?
No, that was the end. You skipped over the 30.
Oh, all right, thank you.
All right, Stephen Kevin, followed by Tom Kenny. You're next.
Stephen Kern, Woodland Avenue. In regard to the traffic, I'm in favor of reconfiguring the intersection with the traffic island. I think that's a good idea. I look forward to hearing more about this proposal and how the co-op parking will work in the next junction work session now that the final vote has been postponed. I do hope it has been postponed. I also look forward to more discussion about the economics of the junction, specifically about class divide. I had a nice chat with a council member this, this past weekend, and argued that with rents in excess of $40, most nonprofits and independent local businesses won't be able to afford the junction. I can testify to that because I am a local, independent, small business. I currently pay $23 a square foot for a lovely office in Tacoma, DC. So that's about half. The junction is simply put out of our league. On the retail front, Mr. Washington, president of NDC, stated that the centerpiece of his new development will be a restaurant. Do we think the prices at this restaurant will be closer to Mark's Kitchen or to Republic? I think it's safe to say Mr. Washington is planning on landing a destination restaurant, just not a destination for 40% of Tacoma Park residents, including our firefighter. The council member responded my observations by saying that the fancy restaurant and stores and offices will increase our tax base, which in turn will provide services for low-income residents. Funny, because that's exactly what the former mayor and former council members, including our current mayor, said this development was not about. As suspect as it sounded, we were told on the record it was not about increasing the tax revenue. It was about the use. It was about revitalization in its purest sense. So, I ask for an explanation. Are we building what will amount to an exclusive, private enclave on public land? And are we really dusting off the trickle-down theory to justify excluding those who are less well-off? Can you claim inclusivity when you refuse to mandate meaningful public space on public land? Isn't it time to admit that the driver now is pure economic development? A place for the professional class, aka the haves, to unload cash, a place that will raise, a place that will raise the values of those who own homes, a place will increase, a place will increase tax revenue? What happened to the ability project in affordable apartments? Seems like the highest good stuff took a bus out of town. I'm not complaining because I own a home and I have disposable income, and I'm probably be the first to compliment the braised rabbit and the profound cabernet at the New Junction Cafe, but please, don't make me choke on the bones by telling me the development was built for everyone. If you're going to vote for this, stop pretending this public land is for the people. It's for the select group of people who can afford it.
Thank you. Tom Kenny, followed by Morgan Snyder.
Good evening. My name's Tom Kenny. I'm a 35-year resident of Tacoma Park, live on Poplar Avenue, the 7,000 block, just a block away from Tacoma Junction. Sue Immerman, my wife, spoke earlier. We own a business, Immerman Kenny Properties. We own two properties, 6 Lee Avenue and 7322 Carroll Avenue. At the Carroll Avenue address, that's Mad Fitness, where my wife and daughter run the business there. I'm speaking in favor of the junction project, redevelopment project. However, and I didn't come with prepared remarks other than to lend my voice to the support of the project, but I did hear testimony this evening from the co-op that gave me a little bit of pause, and there has been recommendations made with regard to having some formal interaction between the two parties, the developer and the co-op, to resolve the issues. I think it's important that we do give reasonable accommodations to an existing business. As a business owner, I As a business owner, I understand the issues, and you probably have heard plenty of this, but what gives me pause tonight is it seems like those issues have not been resolved and there seems to be a logjam there. So if there's something that the council can do to move that along and to have those issues addressed, that would be a good thing. And I think it should be done. So those are my comments, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm Morgan Snyder, followed by Jenny Weida. Is Morgan Snyder here? Jenny Weida? Nancy Graham, followed by Tracy Kaufman.
Hello, my name's Nancy Graham, and my family and I live on Allegheny Avenue in Ward Three. We've lived there since 2003 and we love Tacoma Park. And I don't have anything different to add to those who support the redevelopment. I simply wanted to come and have my voice heard that I am in favor of the redevelopment. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy, followed by Richard Cowden.
Tracy Kaufman. I live on Second and Allegheny in Ward Three, and my family has lived in Tacoma Park since 1996. We have been thrilled as our downtown has added locally-owned restaurants and shops over the years. Our city has become an appealing destination while maintaining the quirkiness that made it such a special place and the reason that we came here in the first place. We have also, over the years, seen missed opportunities when we have allowed delays in projects long enough to eventually kill those projects. So I add my voice to those that came before me to please continue to move the Tacoma Junction redevelopment forward and let's strive for progress, not perfection. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Cowden, followed by Ellen Fabian.
They left.
Okay. Rachel Letter. Kitty Tucker. Well, she gave her, Tim Mail. And...
I'm here.
And Mr. Mail did ask for extended time, so you'll be speaking for five minutes max. Thank you.
Thanks. Good to see you all tonight. My name is Tim Mail, resident of Ward Two, 7003 Woodland Avenue. And I'm gonna speak about four issues, the first three quickly. With the utmost respect to Officer Sims who's here, I think we're a better place that doesn't need to have police protection for our politicians from our residents. And if we're gonna put police protection anywhere, put it at our schools. Put those hours of the police force, the limited police force we have, at our schools when kids are walking in and out, and not in meetings like this where I think we're the kind of community with comity and civility and respect for one another that doesn't need a gun in the room with us. The second issue, taxes. I urge you not to raise the tax rate. There's no vote that you make that is more important to gentrification than a decision to raise taxes at a greater rate of increase than residents' median income. That's a way to price people out of a community. And third, a specific question or challenge for a council member, Kovar, who we used to work for Congressman Barney Franks. I don't think Barney Franks ever voted for a reduction in business taxes without, you know, business tax revenue at the federal level, without some sort of offset in spending reductions. I don't think he ever voted for a business tax cut that benefited businesses like Advanced Auto Parts, a national corporation that donates to Paul Ryan and Ted Cruz. And I'd urge you to not pass that tax cut without an associated way to balance it with a reduction in spending or an explanation for how you do that in the future. And I think that's lacking right now. On the junction, I am really excited by the change in the junction light timing. I've been through the junction in the last 48 hours, six times, on bike, on foot, and in cars. And the extra 30 seconds during rush hour in the morning makes an enormous difference in terms of clearing the intersection. It still works for pedestrians. It's exciting, as Sally said, to have that crosswalk that goes straight across. And it's really wonderful to see that after six years of work, and I hope someone sends a thank you letter to the county in addition to me, even though it took six years to get that change to happen. I am really excited to have walked around the junction with the white lines on the pavement and to be in what would be the public space. And in my mind, that's a bigger public space than I had expected. And I'm excited by that space. And I'm excited by the size of the lay-by, the delivery space in the front, and how big that is, how vast it seems if you walk around the space where you can imagine any 18-wheeler or box trucks if they're allowed to park there. Those things excite me. The sense of the design is exciting, and I'm looking forward to the kinds of services that would move in to the junction. So in balance, I'm for where the project is headed, excited about what NDC and the city would do together, and all the steps in what I know is still a long process. However, I want to disagree with what Sam on Central said earlier, which is that it gets to a point where it's just a binary vote. And I hope that you all feel like, and I know, you know, God bless you all, the hours you put in, that it's not, we're not at that point where it's a binary vote yet. I still, I was surprised to not see what I was expecting to see in terms of a site plan. I see a PowerPoint, but I don't see a site plan that describes, for example, the green elements that we called for in the development agreement or the lead equivalent plan that we called for in the development agreement. To the best of my ability, it doesn't even look like it would be an ADA-compliant PowerPoint presentation. You can't, for example, read how wide the sidewalk would be or how wide the lay-by would be or some of the distances on the map. And I just think there's a narrative that needs to go with the site plan before you could accept it. Before, I would have voted to accept a site plan at this stage that is still lacking. And the presentation is great, but it's not, it's just a PowerPoint with little narrative. So that's one point I wanted to make. I would urge you to think, again, not a binary vote, what does 10% better look like? If you can get more open space, if you can create a smaller building envelope, if you can get some of the aesthetics done right or the transit and mobility issues as the development agreement calls for done right. Focus on what is that for you and your constituents? What does that 10% better look like? And see if you can't fight for that in the process that you still have before you with NDC and the county and all the steps in advance. I was really struck by architect Rick Vitolo's comments tonight about how the designs are presented. And I know we all have ways to provide information in the most, you know, the best storytelling way. I'd urge you to follow up with Rick, follow up with Eric Saul, ask the architects that you know to tell you whether they think that the way the design is shown is honest or whether it's a little bit misleading and try to get designs that are done right. And my last issue I want to raise is that the co-op and the lay-by, my expectation is that you'll end up deciding that that lay-by is really all the physical space. I don't mean it's not all the accommodation, but it's all the physical space that the co-op would get. I'd urge you to make that decision sooner rather than later and ask NDC and the co-op to talk about the use of the site in a way that can make development work in terms of reasonable accommodation. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Jared Hughes and Betsy Taylor.
Thank you for this opportunity to raise my voice in support of this project. My wife and I moved to Elm Avenue 20 years ago in 1998. We signed up as lifetime co-op members soon after and purchased dozens of the $100 bags of groceries there every month. We are raising our family here and have taken great pains to cultivate a magical neighborhood community that is the envy of many a Facebook friend and a major selling point in multiple realtors pitched to potential new neighbors. It could still be better. We have watched Old Town on the DC side develop smartly to the benefit of the Tacoma, DC community. We were very much in favor of the arts and crafts style condo complex at the top of Westmoreland that included parking across from the park. We were dismayed 15 years ago that a vocal minority were able to stall the process to such an extent that the developers finally threw up their hands and gave up. I didn't formally speak up then and I regret it ever since. Based on multiple conversations with dozens of neighbors who were not able to offer testimony, I am sure the vast majority of the denizens of the People's Republic don't want another missed opportunity to vastly improve our community's retail, dining, and gathering options at the junction in particular to pass us by again. We know why there are several vacant storefronts in the junction for years, one glad rags for at least 10 or 15 of them. There is not enough high-quality shopping and interesting draws to bring the foot traffic. This plan would solve that. A tweak I would offer as a professional nonprofit fundraiser who has served on the boards of three local nonprofits who have been confounded by the dearth of walkable, attractive event space where we are able to host full-service events, encourage the developers to include a large multi-use gathering space that would allow for that. We are written up over and over again in national publications that tout our diversity, our quirkiness, our progressive and inclusive ways, and of course, our penchant for total and complete consensus to a fault, I might add. 25 years has got to be long enough. It is time to move forward with reasonable modifications to keep the co-op whole while allowing for desperately needed development of and improvement to the junction. Let's not squander this opportunity again and have to wait another 25 years. Please vote in favor of this plan.
Thank you. I have Betsy Taylor and Susan Schreiber.
Thank you, Betsy Taylor. I've lived here since 1986 and live on Willow Avenue. You've heard me many times. I wasn't planning to speak tonight. This is the first night of the many years I've been coming. We've had a big turnout of the pro-NDC voices, and I have to say, it's been good to hear you. It's been helpful to hear you and to see your concerns and your hopes. And my guess is that we're not so far apart as it might appear. And I think most people on all sides, all sides, want revitalization, want to protect a walkable grocery store, want improved retail, want improved open space. I hope also that we all want an inclusive community and that avoids gentrification and that we do something here that serves the whole community. I speak because I hope to urge the pro-NDC site proposal folks that are here, as well as the council, to still really look at some of the key questions and threats with the current site plan. One is scale. You did just hear Tim repeat that our local architect, Rick Vitolo, said that the drawings are a facade. They are actually not real. They are actually not at scale. Do we want a 40-foot-tall building? Please ask NDC about this, both for those that support the site and the council members. The fire chief says he's worried. Please, the traffic studies did not speak to rescue personnel nor the crossing guards. I ask that you do so. Like, we really do care about our kids. We really do care about elderly people. Please talk to them. Lay-by will, in fact, cause trucks to be backed up. And we're not facing that. The traffic studies did not actually resolve that. So there are going to be trucks backed up in that intersection. They're not gonna drive around the... How are we going to deal with that as we relocate the bus stop? Those are still unanswered questions. Three local renter businesses, not owners, but renters on the other side have testified here. They are fearful that the congestion will drive customers away and that they may actually shut down due to rent increases. I know we heard from Sue Immerman with a different point of view, but Spring Mill Bakery in Bethesda did shut down because of development that drove the rents up. We don't want to do a revitalization that shuts down our grocery store and local businesses as a consequence. Rents, I do hear Laura Barclay talk about what the rents are, but who can pay $45 to $50 a square foot? It's gonna be retail chains more likely than real, small, independent businesses. The co-op probably will shut down. As I've heard tonight, I've been shocked at what the NDC assumptions are about unloading in particular. Just unbelievable that you would go into Sycamore a lot while there's shoppers and cars in there. So in the past week, over 500 people have signed a petition urging you to vote no. There are over 150 personal comments. I will submit these to you. And I just end by saying, there are alternatives, and you need to use your authority to look at those and to ask NDC to make some changes. Thank you.
I have Susan Schreiber, followed by anyone else who would like to talk.
Oh, my goodness. Well, I'm gonna try to do this in 45 seconds, but we'll see. Thank you, I'm Susan Schreiber. I live in Ward One. I've been in Tacoma Park for many, many years, several different locations. And I wanted to speak very briefly to the relevance of the city's racial equity policy on the development of the junction. A year ago, Mayor Stewart and Councilmember Smith released a statement on behalf of the council summarizing the city's commitment to applying a racial equity lens to decisions across government and thereby continuing to build an inclusive, equitable community and ensure a vibrant and healthy community for all of our residents. I agree that the public needs to see the criteria and data that the city staff used to determine the new development, used to determine that the new development would not have any impact on racial equity. But just in closing, I think that the question, I think what we want and what we need is something a little different. And that is, shouldn't we be evaluating how, whatever the development is that goes in, and particularly right now, the NDC development as currently conceived, how that project is going to strengthen and increase racial equity in our city? We should be asking that question, and I hope that the council will start to entertain that and talk about it seriously at a meeting soon. Thank you.
Thank you. I invite Mike Tabor. It's just about your time to get up, isn't it? So you better go now.
Mike Tabor, Erie, Ward Five. I have an interesting, I'm in an interesting situation. I've been farming for almost 50 years, and during the offseason, I'm an activist in Tacoma Park. So I want to explain something about delivering to stores. Twice a week, we deliver to between four and six stores. We start at 4:30 in the morning, and everyone puts pressure on you to deliver by a certain time. I've found in the past, what I've had to do, unfortunately, in the case of at least one operation, is not to deliver anymore to them because there's a line. The pressure is on to get to the next store. So if I, as a farmer, come with a truck, and now I understand I can't even necessarily be eligible to wait in that line as a person who doesn't own an 18-wheeler, but maybe a 25-foot van, there's no time to sit and wait. What I'm more likely to do with those apples and peaches is make one delivery downtown, come back, and if there's no space, stop making the deliveries. So those $1.49 fresh, organically grown apples that are a buck under the pound of what you pay at a farmer's market here, the co-op won't be able to get those and sell those. Same thing with the fresh peaches, the fresh greens. It's not doable. This is, and I hated to see it, this is an incredibly toxic and divisive project. If you could rearrange things so that the developer is friendlier to the co-op and friendlier to the citizenry, it would be different. That means rejecting this plan. But to try and compensate for those $150,000 per underground space with the rents they're gonna have to charge, you know, I saw something, my wife and I saw something really painful. We went to the Bethesda co-op on Sunday after watching one of, a person running for office. There was no business in which was once the most thriving co-op in the region. There were two workers in the store. There were three people buying in the store from what was an incredibly active co-op. I come into the store, the co-op in Tacoma Park, there are 20, 25, 30, especially on a Saturday and Sunday, shopping. I'd hate to see that co-op begin the process of becoming a ghost store. And that's what I'm afraid of. It's one thing to say, oh, I'm in favor of the, I'm in favor of the development, but the devil is in those details. It's not that easy. We'd like to have a nice development to walk to, but charging 40, $50 a square foot, you're not gonna have local business. You're not gonna have something that works for the community. Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Bedett, Sycamore Avenue. I went to the pop-up on Sunday, and I just want to say that I had to actually physically grab the NDC design people who were there and bring them over to where Byrne had his design on display as well. That was apparently the very first time that they had actually taken a serious look and discussed with him what his ideas were, okay? His ideas didn't come out of nowhere. They came out of the junction development process that, I don't remember what it was called, Task Force that had been meeting for years and years prior to this, okay? For a developer to come and just... For a developer to come and just, you know, pull something out of a hat, well, I'm not, that's a little too, you know, harsh. But to not even look at a project that shows a lot more green space, which was one of the things that we wanted in the ultimate design, you know, I just think that that's, you know, verging on irresponsible. Also, you know, there needs to be more collaboration and re-establishment of trust with the co-op and NDC. You know, if they can't do it by themselves, you all need to mandate that they work with a mediator, okay? So that they can actually come together and create a workable design that allows the co-op to stay in business and to thrive during this whole process. So the other thing, I don't know, from the traffic studies, it seemed like pedestrian crossing turned out to be one of the major issues with, with the, you know, the traffic, like creating traffic problems. And so I was thinking, just sort of out of the box, maybe an overhead kind of thing that went from, I don't know, you know, from the new development over to the other side, you know? I mean, maybe something like that could potentially work. Anyways, okay, that's enough. I'm too tired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Esther Segal, Erie Avenue, Ward 5. And I've never heard my husband be so emotional about something, and it kind of frightened me a little bit, actually, because I feel, I feel like everyone, we really all want something to happen there at the, at the lot. However, if we don't protect the existing businesses and sort of make them feel like they're expendable or not important, then what are the other businesses going to feel? For example, what if some development, you know, bizarre thing, and it was going to disrupt Republic or Mark's Kitchen? Would we just sit by and say, well, you know, it'll work out. Don't worry about it. But I was mostly struck by something that Tim said. He said something like, try to squeeze 10% more out. And all of a sudden, it hit me, wait a minute. We own that property. We should be telling a developer what we want, not the developer telling us what they want. And I was sickened to my stomach listening to the co-op explain what the particular issues are. So these are issues. They're not like, should there be development or shouldn't there be development? These are issues that have to be resolved. And if NDC is not willing or able to accommodate to us, then they're the wrong people. It's not that there shouldn't be development. It's they're the wrong people. We should be designing it and developing it and deciding what should be there and then find a developer to do it, not the other way around. And that's why I, and I'm sad that so many of the people who were speaking for this development were speaking so broadly, I am for the development, but most of them have gone and didn't hear what the co-op and others had to say about what the issues are that are the reason, which is why it's so critical for you to not accept this particular plan and do it the right way instead of this cockamamie way that is not reflective of your ownership, our ownership, of that property. So that's why voting no doesn't mean no development. It means something is wrong with this particular one. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Greta Eric, and I've been living and working in Tacoma Park for 20 years. And I'm wondering, is NDC actually represented here tonight now?
I don't believe so, no. Okay. They're upstairs, but they'll be down for the later discussion.
But are they actually listening to people, folks' comments? Okay. Okay, well, anyway, that's good to know. Thank you. Earlier today, across town, American University announced that they have reached their carbon-neutral goal, a couple of years ahead of schedule. Carbon neutral. I am wondering how the NDC proposal helps our city to reach our environmental goals. Does it meet the highest lead standards? What Tacoma Parkian ideals are we going to hold them to or perhaps take elsewhere if need be? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, very quickly, I'm Catherine Desmond. I have no prepared remarks. I live on Park Avenue, and I've lived here for 31 years, all in Ward 1, Peter. I'm no fan of heat islands. I would actually love to see an ice skating rink that converts to a fountain where nannies and moms and dads and children can go. And it could be surrounded by perhaps some shops, certainly some trees, not a 40-foot-tall building over which one cannot see the bank or the trees, the scraggly trees which are there now. So I'm also no fan of divisiveness, and I feel it. I'm also very late to the game. This is not my first council meeting, but it's my first council meeting on this issue. No, excuse me, second. I came on Monday night to hear the traffic studies. So we're not tired of waiting. Let's develop this because we've waited so long. The word is not waiting. The word is working. We're working for the best plan. So please. And then I guess maybe the last thing, because I didn't really write this down ahead of time, is that we waited a whole long time for the Silver Triangle, the Lloyd Moore, the American Dream Mall, which was going to present a replica of the Washington Monument in downtown Silver Spring. And Doug Duncan had the courage, for different reasons, lack of financing that the developer couldn't come up with, to say no, to pull the plug. And I'm not saying that that's what you should do with NDC. I'm saying, please listen to all the voices that are here because we really could come together, develop that heat island, whether you turn it into an ice skating rink or something else, something that will embrace our community, not divide it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Roger Schlegel, Allegheny Avenue, Ward 3. And you know, I've been looking at all the details on this for about eight years. Couple other interesting details. At the pop-up, the lay-by was painted as 10 feet wide. It's supposed to be 12. And the building front line was pulled back about three feet farther than it should have been, so artificially widened the appearance of the sidewalk and the public space. Also, in all the overhead drawings in the site plan, the plan pushes out about five feet into the street. I don't know if anybody has noticed this, but if you look at every single overhead drawing in the slideshow, they seem to be promising that they'll be able to take land from SHA to build that public space. So there are all kinds of ways in which I see NDC going through contortions to try to meet all of the needs that we're asking them to meet on that piece of land. They're pushing back into the woods, 6,000 or 7,000 square feet by putting the lay-by on the street. That pushes the driveway to the far end, within 60 feet of the Philadelphia Avenue stop line, which creates impossible left-in and left-outs. Between the two of them, that squeezes the public space down to what I measure as about 1,200 square feet. Then you've got pushing back into the woods, about 7,000 square feet. You've got losing the bike-share station, bus stop, who knows where that goes. If we adjust the traffic, we're going to have no crosswalk between Philadelphia and Sycamore if we use that triangle configuration. We've got a 40-foot building, I don't know why. We've got high rent, it's going to create an enclave. These are all things that we didn't ask for, but they're going through these conniptions, and that's about what they can come up with in a revision. So if you trust NDC and you feel like they're doing the best they can, that's a big question. And if you want all these needs still met, including the underground parking to serve the whole district, right now they're doubling commercial space and only adding about a dozen spaces, maybe we shouldn't be blaming any side in this controversy. Maybe we should be blaming the difficult site and its difficult situation. This is just a really, really hard site to work with, and maybe there's no way for a private company under the model we're pursuing, even with generous lease terms, to meet all those objectives and still make a reasonable profit. So this has been a valuable exploratory process to see what private development could do, but maybe we need to consider how much public money we want to put into this development alongside NDC and maybe even alongside the co-op. At critical places in town, we've done this. The Civic Center, the library, Public Works, the Rec Center, Flower Avenue, Green Street, just to name a few. So I'd like to ask the council to pause and consider whether this calls for a justifiable public investment to get this right. Thank you.
William Recker, Ward 1. There's been a lot of talk about it tonight, about how the development doesn't necessarily, is too big or doesn't necessarily cater to the co-op's needs. Despite being the youngest person in this room by a very good amount of years, I have worked for a construction company, I've worked for a nonprofit lender and developer, I currently work for a very large financial institution. I can say with almost certainty, if you guys want to go in a different direction, if you want smaller development, if you want to find someone that will cater to the co-op, no one will touch this project for decades. You've already had a company come in here. This has already been four years in the making, just this time around, and to turn it on its head, no institution, no company is going to come in here and put that amount of time into just five years down the road, get shot down. Also, yes, this is the city's land, but it's not the co-op's land. And while I commend everyone here for trying to work together to help innovation and development in our city as well as continue, companies that are already here thriving, it's not the city's job to cater to a for-profit company. If the co-op wants to capture this and wants to try and make sure that the developer caters to them at every single corner, at some point, I think the city needs to move forward and do what's right for the city, not for the co-op. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jimmy Daukis. I am in Ward 2. I live on Woodland Avenue, been here for 24 or 25 years. I was about to say, I want to say exactly the opposite thing that he just said, but I actually want to instead say, it's this divisiveness that is really a problem. And what I think that you guys can do and should do is insist on some mediation so that he and I don't disagree. Because it's the process that's gotten us to this point, that people say, it's 25 years, we got to do it now. And I'm saying, yeah, but I think actually with mediation, right, forced mediation, I would ask legally to look into, can't you force NDC and the co-op to sit down and try to figure out what could happen? Because right now, we spend three minutes just going back and forth, and it's just not really even a good use of your time. But if we could sit them down, I just can't believe that all that space with an anchor tenant can't be resolved. But the way we're doing it now and the way we've done it the last two years, right, has not happened, and it seems like it's actually been exacerbated in the last go-round of the last week. I think we can do this, but you got to really actually bring people together, not with just three-minute comments. And I think you guys could figure out a way to mediate that. And that's what mediation will do. It will find. It is not right or wrong. It is not development or not. It is not, it will help for those groups to figure out how the reasonable accommodation can work. And if you did that, I think the rest of it flies.
Thank you. Well, it looks like that's it for tonight. We can move on to council comments.
We can actually start the meeting.
Before we do that, though, I think we should take a break. It's been three hours or four hours, I guess, four hours. And my doctor tells me you should get up every hour and walk around for a bit, so I think we'll...
Councilmember DeBala, thanks to everyone who came out tonight. One thing that was kind of heartening to me tonight was that I heard a lot of, people talk about the reasons why they came to Tacoma Park and the things that they value and to kind of seek some common ground between different opinions. And so I hope we can continue to build on that. I'd like to see more of that, you know, to agree to disagree on some things, but to find commonality. So I wanted to call attention to a couple of upcoming events. I will be having two listening sessions for Ward 3 residents where I hope we can kind of build on that sense of collaboration and share opinions while kind of seeking to find common ground. One of them will be this Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. here in the Community Center in the Azalea Room. And the other will be next Thursday, May 3, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., also in the Azalea Room. I also want to let people know about an event tomorrow night, if you're still willing to go out for another night in your evening. The Council of Government's Transportation Planning Board is working on our long-range transportation plan for the entire metropolitan area. And part of that process involves public forums where people can come and have a participatory opportunity to learn more about the plan and share your perspectives on transportation. And I know a lot of people expressed concern about traffic specifically here in the junction, but I think it's a larger problem throughout the region as well. So I encourage people to take advantage of that opportunity to provide some input. That will be tomorrow from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in Rockville at the Executive Office Building up there. And I will be there. If anyone wants to carpool with me, please let me know. I'd be happy to arrange something like that. So I look forward to seeing you at some of these upcoming events. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. Thank you, Acting Mayor. I want to thank everybody for taking the time to speak to us from Ward 1 and all the other wards about taxes and the budget and Tacoma Junction and a couple other issues that snuck in. And I took a lot of notes, and I'll be thinking a lot about all of that. I am hosting an opportunity for Ward 1 people to meet with me about those issues and others. And I don't suppose we can really kick anybody out from another ward, but that's going to be on May 1, which is Tuesday of next week, 7:30. It's in the hydrangea room. I'm not sure if we're battling with Councilmember Kostic's folks or not. So I hope anyone, folks will attend that. And then I just wanted to mention one other thing, one of the other good examples of the Tacoma Park spirit that so many people cited is the volunteer efforts that so many people are involved in. And so one of our great volunteers, and I've talked about her and plenty of other people have over the years, is Pat Rumbaw, who's also known as the Play Lady. And she just received this award from the Montgomery County Commission on Children and Youth. She's been selected to receive the Dr. Nancy Dworkin Outstanding Service to Youth Award in the Outstanding Volunteer category. And the letter that was sent to announce that, that description, actually ended with an exclamation point. So it's a really big deal that she got that. And I'm not going to talk all about how it's named after Dr. Nancy Dworkin, who's the past chairperson for that commission. But for those who are interested, on Thursday, May 24, at 6:15 p.m., there will be a ceremony, and it's at the Gilchrist Auditorium in Johns Hopkins University. So if you want to go, you think you're going to go, contact me and I'll give you those details. But I just want to say, congratulations to Pat. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Cirson.
Man, we're not talking, not speaking to empty chairs. It's almost 11 o'clock. Thank you. Thank you. I just want to reiterate how excited I am to see so many people here using their voice, even when it may not be popular. even when it may not be popular to say what you want to say, even when it may appear to be intimidating. The fact that there were so many first timers coming up and letting their voices be heard, it really warms my heart, and I'm so thankful to all of you, those that are sticking it out, and those that were able to come in earlier and give your testimony. That's what democracy is all about, and so I'm so grateful that all of you took time out to let us know what you think. For those residents in Ward 6, I hear you. Emails that I've been receiving about the tax rate, I'm responding to them, and any that relate to the junction, don't worry, you'll get an email from me soon if you don't have one already. One announcement on university, well, the Purple Line, will have a community advisory team meeting on Tuesday, May 1st. It will be at 6:30, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Langley Park Community Center in their multipurpose room, and that's 150 Merrimack Drive in Hyattsville, Maryland, 20783. And that community advisory team includes the Tacoma-Langley Station that will be on University Boulevard in the crossroads area, as well as the Riggs Road Station. So it is a great opportunity. There's some folks have been invited that participate in various neighborhood associations and the like, but there's also a portion of the meetings that are reserved for public questions and comments. So if you're interested or want to learn more about what's happening in the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads, specifically as it relates to the Purple Line Station that is under development, please come out on May 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. First, I want to thank all the residents that came out this evening for the comments on the junction development. I know we've done this for a long time now, many years, but it's always good to see the passion in the room, and I look forward to more comments. You know, the process, we're not done with it yet, so we are listening, and, you know, I do believe that the project could be better, especially the public open space. I thought, you know, we were going to have a green roof that was accessible to the public. When we started this project, it was something that I proposed, but, you know, we are somewhere else, and I don't think it's adequate just to have the public space in the front of the building and call that enough. Tacoma Park has had a tradition of being part of the environment, being a green community, and I don't think there's enough green in this project. I want to mention a Ward 5 resident, Jacquet Fraser. She's the executive director of Lunch and Learn, and she was recognized by B Monumental Award. She will be recognized at the Capitals Wizards game this Friday, the playoff game on Friday. So this is a great honor for Jackie, and I want to make sure that people know that she got this award, so it's really, it's really nice. Over the weekend, I had an opportunity to speak at the African-American Health Program that was hosted at Montgomery Cottage. It was a huge turnout. They had screenings for, there were free screenings for all residents, not just for Tacoma Park, but Silver Spring, and they had a nutritionist teaching people healthy eating on the third floor. One thing that we are trying to do with the executive director of the program, George McFarlane, is to have them go into the apartment buildings here in Tacoma Park and provide free screenings to people. It's something that they already do in Silver Spring, but it was an excellent program. There were healthcare practitioners from Holy Cross, from Howard University, and from MedStar. So it was really good. Hope to do more work with them in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I had something happen today that upset me a lot. I had an elderly woman call me this morning that, she lives alone, and she was very distraught. She had received a door hanger from the code enforcement personnel, and also a registered letter and another letter in the mail regarding the same thing, and she was told that she had to repair her roof and paint her house, repair her front steps to her porch, repair the sidewalk, and repair her car, because it had a flat tire and a headlight broken out of it, and so it was inoperable. And she was more distraught about this because she's right now going through foreclosure on her house because she had been a cancer patient and had just recently gone through chemotherapy and was recovering now supposedly, she is clear of the cancer, but during that she fell behind on being able to work, obviously, and fell behind on her house payments, and so she's trying to get that all resolved, and she gets this kind of bomb in a letter. And again, this gets back to something that we've talked here on this council about in the past of trying to walk our talk and be a little bit more understanding in the way that we do things such as code enforcement, and not come out of the chute with a blast like that and a registered letter. And of course, you know, the letter says, "You have 30 days to get this resolved, or you could be in violation," and you and I could read that and say, "Well, it says might be in violation," but she read that in a panic, knowing that she couldn't afford to do it. And so she was very upset today. Fortunately, Police Chief DeVall and I were able to go over and talk with her and assure her that it wasn't going to be, you know, a big hammer dropping down on her, and that we would try to work with her to help her find the resources, and also, you know, give her enough time that she could actually do this. But I bring this up because I'm, as I said, very upset that we're going about it in this way. I think Chief DeVall understands that. He is responsible for the Neighborhood Services Division. Isn't that a funny name? Neighborhood Services Division, and they cause a panic like that.
Exactly.
Let's live up to our expectations. Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to city manager comments.
Thank you, and yes, I had spoken with Chief DeVall also about that item and about how he will address that.
Thank you.
I'll be very brief. My comments will be for the record, but I do want to note that in, not that long from now, at 7:00 a.m., the front walkway into this building, the main entrance, will be worked on, so it'll be closed tomorrow. This will address the bump in the levels of concrete that our peace delegate has complained about and is a problem, and also the surface treatment. So it's just for one day, just the Thursday, but letting folks know. The other thing that kind of goes along with that is because it's warmer weather, sidewalk work and paving work is begun again now across the city, and so we'll start letting you know when these various activities are happening and affecting your area. Briefly, there have been a number of bullying incidents in this area. We've worked, we've had a couple particular problem youth that we have been working with, and we're working with the various schools. The chief will be sending a personal message through the Tacoma Park Middle School morning TV show, as well as sending out information to parents about it. And we've got the TKPK 5K on May 6th, and I really want to, even at this late hour, maybe especially at this late hour, thank the many staff that have been working on the Tacoma Junction project for many hours. We had a large number of HCD and Public Works folks helping put together the pop-up. They spent many, many hours preparing for it and doing it, as well as our media specialist, Jeremy Dickie, and I really appreciated their great work on getting that set up. So those are the main things I wanted to mention tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're now going to move on to our voting session with the second reading ordinance exempting 100% of inventory from the business personal property tax.
And there's no change from last week. This is a second reading.
All right. Would someone like to move this resolution?
Move.
Yeah, any second? Okay. All right, any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say again that I think this is really important to do because it's an unfair tax, but I also am very mindful that we need to be looking for other sources of revenue to replace the revenue that we're going to lose by doing this, and I'm not going to let everybody forget about it. Just, you're on notice.
Thank you. I don't think we're going to forget about it, and we also look forward to Mr. Kovar's suggestions, too, on how we make this up. I know you've been looking into this quite a bit. All right, if there's no more discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
It's a second reading, so we have to call the board.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember DeBala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Siemens?
Aye. All right, that passes, and we go on to our second item, which is a single reading ordinance authorizing a contract for computer software and support for the Computer Learning Center. Any discussion?
Just a note on this, that we've been working with Userful for some time because they have very specialized services that are, that you can't get from any other company. We did go back and double-check because it is a sole source, that this was by far the entity that got us the most capacity at a very reasonable cost, but they provide some particular benefits across the system. So we've got a lot of background information, if anybody wants to find out more about it, but I do urge you to support it.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to...
Sure.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
All right, we have enthusiastic support for this, I can hear. Are there any questions or discussion?
At some more reasonable hour, maybe I could get some information that's on the blue sheet about the energy costs and how that works out.
Sure.
Just interested.
Sure.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
I'd like to.
Oh, we do, another roll call? Sorry.
It's okay.
Single reading.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Siemens?
Aye. All right, now I'm through that training session, let's go on to the next item.
I appreciate having our library director here for the evening to make sure that she could hear this, your vote on this.
Ah, you hung in there, very good. Well, thank you. Did you want to come up and speak about it? It's a little late.
No.
Okay.
I think that was a hint.
All right. Okay, so next we are going to move into our work session for a discussion of the Tacoma Junction site plan, specifically the traffic and circulation.
Right. So we, so we're very fortunate to have the representatives from the two firms back again this evening, due to the late hour, which we expected would be. We're not really going to start from scratch and go through everything in detail, but we can go quickly through and with the opportunities for you to answer some, ask some questions, and if you've got some highlights of information, gentlemen, that would be fine. And I, I don't know, AMT wants to start? Oh, wait, we've got to turn that on.
I'm sorry, I, geez.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh.
I did it again.
Don't touch it.
All right, we got it.
So Jack has been working with us for some time, and so was not able to be here on Monday, but he's here now.
Jack with A. Morton Thompson Associates.
I'm here, Bandas, A. Morton Thompson Associates. I was over here on Monday.
You want to do a quick highlight of what you have, or is, how did...
Yeah, I know we, let's see.
We talked about this a really long time ago, earlier this afternoon, so...
Let's see. I was wondering.
You know which one it is?
Yeah. Yeah, right there.
It's got today's date on it?
Yeah.
25?
So if you just want to do a quick highlight and then answer some questions, it'll get there.
Yeah. We received some, you know, questions from Cindy. Received some questions from Cindy from Monday night, and we just want to address some of those questions as many as we can. And I know the first question was with regards to the traffic counts and how basically it was collected. I know there was some discussion from some of the citizens about the methodologies and, you know, how the traffic council perform. So as far as the traffic counts and, you know, what is considered typical, so pretty much from, you know, for traffic engineers, you know, typical weekdays what we look at. So we're looking at Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays while school's in session, preferably with good weather, especially when we're dealing with counts where we have to take into account pedestrians and bicycles. So I know when we met in January, you know, we wanted to do some collection immediately, but because of the weather, we couldn't get any good, like, at least 50 degrees, we would prefer for our pedestrians. So I know that's always a topic. We don't count, and like I said, within school, not after major holidays like Labor Day or Memorial Day. So from a traffic engineer's perspective, a typical weekday of the Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays. Now, there are situations where if we're near shopping centers or things like that, we may do weekend counts, you know, peak periods, say from like 10 to 2, or 10 to 3, or something like that, but for standard weekday count, you know, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And we typically look at 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., so we're looking at, hopefully at the start of the rush hour in the morning to the end. For these counts, we did do video counts, so we do have the capabilities of doing, we basically left the counts up, the cameras up, and they recorded for 24 hours. I think we had them up for 48 hours, but as far as the actual analysis that we looked at, we look at a 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. period, and that's what we were scoped to do there. And I know the other question with regards to more, more about options for vehicle traffic impacts of pedestrian crosswalks in various positions. We're still kind of refining that as we go along as well. I mean, obviously, we know about the main one that was just opened up from Grant to the existing parking lot, but for the relocation of the intersection proposed concept, we did show, let's see, push that along. Go to propose, yeah. Yeah. So we do have, you know, crosswalks, yeah, okay. We do show the crosswalks across, obviously, the proposed relocation, and then across the street, across 410, from the relocated Pork Chop Island, new relocated island, across to the co-op. Now, we are looking to, based on what you see there, basically shows the crosswalk tying into the entrance, so obviously, we got to work to relocate that, so it's not crossing into the entrance, but, you know, those are one of the things that we're going to continue to refine as we look at our options and we gather some additional information from not only working with the traffic group, but also with Sarah and the group there.
On that, it's just the crossing at Grant Avenue is still shown on these. Were you running your figures assuming that that crossing remains?
Yeah, for right now, we're looking at it to remain, but when we run our traffic numbers and we look at our signal design, and again, working with the traffic group, we will have to see if that can remain under the future traffic conditions, or that will basically be the new crosswalk at the new relocated intersection there. But we'll do whatever we can to see how we can kind of incorporate that, you know, into a new intersection design.
Can I ask a question? Mindful, mindful of the budget for the... Can I ask a question? Mindful, mindful of the budget for the project, but if it's possible, if you've, if your recommendation is that, that you would not have that, I would really like to see what it would look if it stayed in place.
Sure.
How much the, how that would affect things.
Okay.
And if I might, one of the things that I'd like to work with both of the firms to get for you all is, is a real comparison of some trade-offs. So for example, if you're going to put, and I, I mean, I, I particularly still would like to see a crosswalk at Philadelphia Avenue near the Healy Surgeons kind of location up to the, so you have the, a full range of crosswalks at that intersection, but that has implications on backing up along Philadelphia. You know, what are these trade-offs for these different kinds of locations so that as, as the council and the public are looking at these, they can say, well, I'd really rather have this crosswalk, but yes, now I see what it does to this queuing, or maybe it's acceptable to have that kind of queuing to get these other kind of pedestrian or bike ways. So I think that's some of the, the trade-off information as all of you go through that I think is helpful to present because ultimately, there's going to need to be some feedback on those items.
Right, right. Okay. And then as far as the draft written report and backup information, I'll get to some of the other questions, but as of now, I mean, probably when we developed the initial schedule after this meeting here, we were looking at two weeks to develop a draft written report. We'll still have to do some exchange with traffic group as well as discussions with Sarah to see, based upon all the information that we received from Monday, what we can incorporate and when can we have a draft report, so we can get back as far as a particular date on that.
Yes, we're looking for some numbers for the school.
Yeah, we also have to include some numbers from the other traffic studies that, from the school, I guess Tacoma Park Middle School Expansion, and I think it was another study. Yeah, John Evans.
I have a question about the, the, sorry, about the crosswalks.
Mm-hmm.
So in the image that's on the screen now, and I'm, I'm not sure if the info that was presented by the traffic group is the same, but on Ethan Allen on the
Mm-hmm.
Western side of that intersection.
Yes.
So there isn't a, a crosswalk at that spot? So.
On the eastern side.
So if you are where it says C. 32.7.
Yes.
To cross the street right there to the other side, that, I, I don't remember why or can't sort of see why there wouldn't be a crosswalk there. Because people would be stopping there, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's definitely an option. We looked at having it, obviously, on the co-op side, just because it's the pedestrian generator there. You know, I was kind of reviewing that as well. We'd also have to look at sidewalk availability. I know there's a sidewalk there, but as far as ADA requirements, having, you know, ADA compliant landing.
I mean, the challenge is though, it looks like if you were there where the box is that says C. 32.7, and you just wanted to cross right across Ethan Allen, you'd have to kind of go all the way around. And since that's a narrow street, a lot narrower than Carroll, I would just worry that that would be, you know, an invitation for people just to
Sure.
shoot across as opposed to
Right.
going around three different
Right.
crosswalks. So that would be something to me that, if there's any change at all taking place here, you might want to look at.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's always a challenge sometimes with crosswalks and obviously, you know, there's just called desirable lines. You know, people are going to walk where they feel comfortable, where they're going to walk, what's the quickest A to B point. So, but we'll definitely take a look at that as well, so. I mean, it was, and a part of Cindy's email, this particular question about the city study and, and discussion about the new task six, and the question about what's the largest truck that can reasonably use Sycamore and reasonably use Columbia, I guess for the deliveries to the co-op. So based upon our auto turn, we looked at a WB40, which is roughly 45 feet in length.
That's the one in this image?
Yeah, in that image there.
Did you, did you?
So as far as looking at anything, in, in discussions with Sarah, we knew it was a semi, I guess most of the deliveries were through a semi tractor trailer truck. We could look at obviously a box truck, you know, like a UPS truck, a smaller version to see, to run auto turn and see what we can fit along Sycamore and possibly Columbia, we can still look at that. But that was the truck that we specifically used to make those particular movements there.
Yeah.
We didn't look at the 73-foot length that was proposed for the lay-by, obviously, so.
Because, because of some of the comments that we got to, tonight about options for the co-op, we'd like to, I'd like to see
Sure.
how that plays out. Thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, Councilmember?
Yes.
Searcy, do you have some questions?
I was just waiting patiently.
Thank you.
So I do want to piggyback off of a comment that Suzie brought up earlier about pros and cons. I don't know if I'm alone, but I feel like I'm in option overload right now, and I'm doing a lot of trying to make different cross comparisons between the different options that you all have laid out versus options that, you know, others have laid out and trying to compare and contrast the, the different approaches. So definitely think that the pros and cons would be helpful. And also, I don't know if in the final report for each task, if the plan is to make specific recommendations based on the task, that would be helpful.
Sure.
And I, I don't know, and I could just be missing this. So did you all include the lay-by, the impact of the lay-by in your work, or no? It was only the traffic group?
No, it was only the traffic group.
Okay.
We were basically just looking at the intersection configurations at, pretty much at 195 and Sycamore. We had performed the previous two studies from 2015 and 2016 through SHA District III. So we were kind of piggybacking off of those, and at that time, we didn't have any idea about the Tacoma station and the lay-by area. So we were kind of looking at just alternatives, options for the intersection reconfiguration.
For the, okay. And did you take?
And Councilmember, they're also, they're, part of the information that's not, we don't have in front of us at this point, is the data on intersections around this area, because our approach from the city's perspective was, you know, the traffic group and NDC have to look more at their project and what the county requires for that kind of a traffic study. We wanted to look at impacts around the area as well.
Sure.
Okay. So, and that would be part of the final report?
Right.
Where we would see whether or not option 2A.
Right.
The impact that option 2A may have on surrounding traffic.
Right.
And so would that also address like Woodland and some of the others closer in street? Okay.
But again, you know, again, you want to compare, right? So if you all are proposing something that's slightly different, then trying to figure out the, the impact it may have to the broader area, I might be missing something, but.
That's right. I, I mean, that's part of the reason that, that right now, the two firms are actually coordinating a little bit. I think there were some questions about why is that happening?
Mm-hmm.
And that's because they're looking at it from different, a different, from, from a little bit of a different perspective. But when it gets down to those pros and cons, you need to know the impact of one on this larger and vice versa.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask, I'm following, can I, is it okay if I follow up with another question? I have a series of questions that are sort of for both of you, but I, related to the slide that you had up before with the reconfigured intersection.
Mm-hmm.
I had two questions about that. I was wondering, when you did those simulations, was that with an all red walk sign for pedestrians, the sort of barns dance cross, or was that looking at there being, and, yeah, in this one, if.
Okay.
Did you look at that, were pedestrians crossing one side when traffic was going
the other direction with a green, or was it all, was there an all red?
When we, when we do the reconfiguration, so then, we didn't, we didn't do that all red phase because essentially that crosswalk go.
Okay.
So it, yeah, so it's essentially, when you, when you're crossing Carroll Avenue, you're basically going when Sycamore is allowed to go versus the north leg.
Okay, and then, this might be irrelevant, but would there have been a right turn arrow for that right turning lane coming south on Carroll Avenue going on to 410? Or is that just a general green light?
Yeah, we can, depending on the, the amount of right turn traffic, which is pretty, pretty heavy there, we, you can always provide a phase for a right, you know, the, the green right arrow, which would overlap most, most likely with the left turns coming from 410 up to Carroll Avenue. So there could be, depending on, it's pretty, a pretty heavy right, so we probably would look at if it warranted a right turn green arrow that would overlap with the lefts.
Okay.
And then during that particular phase, you know, there wouldn't be pedestrian, obviously pedestrians crossing that particular leg.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
And, and along those lines, are you, are you, maybe not tonight, looking at whether making a change with Manor Circle or making a change with Jackson would ease the traffic? That, those were options that were on my list, but we don't need to do that right now.
I'm sorry, can you, I'm sorry, read that?
Along, along the lines of, of other options that you may have considered and rejected for a good reason, but changing traffic, traffic flow direction on Manor Circle, changing a right on, onto Jackson off of Carroll at all times, whether those help or hurt as options. So you didn't present them, and I presume it's because they didn't work out. But I would like to hear, again, not necessarily right this minute, I'd like to hear about that.
Yeah, I know we focused on, or our options that we would look to scope at were at the intersection, basically the whole 410 Carroll Avenue intersection. I read your comment about the right, the 2-way on Manor, and I'm assuming probably years ago, the right turns were prohibited during the AM and PM peak periods at Jackson for cut-through.
Right.
It looked like to go to Boyd, then go to 195, and then it looked like Manor Circle, there was a triangle that was installed. It looks like it used to be 2-way, now it's just outbound to prevent that cut-through. We didn't factor that necessarily into our configurations here as far as numbers or anything like that. We would have to do a little bit more detailed analysis to look at, probably look at some type of origin destination or license plate to see how many of those would necessarily be doing that.
Okay, so you, you, you didn't look at it and eliminate it, you, you just were focused on something else?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to get that clear. Thank you.
Yeah.
So maybe we can have the traffic group come up and, and do your.
I just had a, can I, can I ask a few more questions?
Yeah.
If I just want to go first, it's okay.
Did you? Go ahead, Mr. Kovar.
Just a couple, just a few questions. One of the things that I believe you had said yesterday, and maybe this was true of the traffic group also, was that the data was gathered before the signalization that changed, because that just happened with state highway. So to what extent is that put some questions into how the flow would, would work, or is it more, that's just managing the same traffic flow? And does the signalization affect it at all? I guess that's what I'm, that's what I'm curious about.
So while we're out there at the intersection, we were talking with the county folks that were doing the timing. And originally, our study included 150 cycle, 150-second cycle length, and that has been increased to 180. So we're up to three-minute cycle length. And that will be incorporated in our final study that's submitted to parking planning.
Okay, so.
But, but I did want to follow up on it. The, one of the things that we were always concerned about, about this study, was that we knew the signal changes were going to come.
Mm-hmm.
And so part of the reason that, that we were watching this is that if the, you know, if the signals had changed, and so people were then more, and so the, the intersection works, worked better, then people wouldn't necessarily avoid the intersection. You might get a full number of counts when you were doing existing conditions.
Mm-hmm.
You know, state highway did not change it over, did not change over, did not change over. And so the original counts were based on, on the number of cars actually going through with the signals that were there. So just, you know, that was one of the things that plays into that. But most of these are projections based on other, kind of other factors.
But there will be an attempt to project that into whatever the final information's going to be. So another question I had was, in looking at the, the list of the backups that you have at the different intersections, and it shows some that are C or D, which I guess are still acceptable, and it's only bad when you get into E or F. But since it's really all one intersection, and then if someone stops somewhere at a D and then drives 200 feet and gets another D in all part of the same trip in the morning, is that sort of cumulatively actually worse than a D, if that, if that's the way to phrase it?
I think where we submit the final report, we'll actually have like queues
Right.
noted next to it. I think that will sort of give a, a much better picture when it, so basically what happens is because these three signals right now like coordinated together, if somebody, if, like, what we see right now is happening is they spill back. So essentially, if, if the queue spilled back from one intersection into the next one, obviously, it's going to spill back into the other one.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's cumulatively, it gets worse because of the queuing from a previous intersection, which just keeps going. So when I have, so when we submit the report, we'll have the queues which will sort of show that.
Okay. So let's imagine that we go to some point in the future, and some version of one of these proposals is adopted and put in place, and, and so it, it ends up causing traffic to flow much more smoothly through the intersection. I think one thing the city manager said is that could attract more people, but probably not enough to, to really cause a problem. But what happens then, you know, at the intersection that's, you know, half a mile away? So people fly through here, and then they go down Philadelphia, and when they get out here, is that then back up more because more people have been able to get through in each exchange? And is it sort of a ripple effect that never quite gets caught up because the streets are narrow?
Yeah, well, depending on how far away that particular intersection is, we would like to try to coordinate them all together so that, you know, have a nice steady progression stream. So people aren't racing through one intersection, get to the next one, and that one starts backing up because maybe that cycle length is not tied to the previous one. You know, it all, it all depends on, we have to look at the distance between the signals in order to see if we can coordinate those. But that is always a possibility where if you have a group of intersections, maybe you have an isolated one, those intersections are coordinated, and then we get to the isolated one, it's not coordinated, and everything starts to back up, so.
So just one last question, and maybe for the city manager, too. A number of people asked, and I was wondering myself, what's the process by which the underlying data, in addition to the analysis, is that released as part of the report, or how does that, how does that all work? I see everybody nodding, so.
Yeah.
Yes, a typical, a typical traffic study has, you know, this amount of actual text and recommendations, and then a whole lot of charts.
Okay. And is doing it just for one day, as long as you pick the right day? Is that, is that standard operating procedure?
Yeah, I mean, typically, we, we like to pick a nice typical weekday. Depending on, depending on our scope, I mean, sometimes we may be asked to look at a week's worth of data sometimes, or even the weekends, you know, particularly, maybe like in an area like this where you were concerned about the shopping area, we may look at that. But on a normal traffic study, we're always say, a nice typical day, schools in session, not after a holiday, that type of thing.
Okay. One thing that I would like to note here is, what I did is, since these are state roads, SHA has traffic counts for these on their ITMS website. So when we did our counts, the first thing that I did before the analysis even started was to make sure that it collaborated with the, with the data that's already on ITMS website, so then we can sort of show, okay, we did the counts correctly.
So you have more than just one day.
And theirs is, theirs is a broader collection set, I guess.
Right, I mean, they do it over the years, and we, we, we have that contract too. So we, we, over the years, we, they collect the data, and it's, it's.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dibala?
Yeah, I actually wasn't done, but that's okay. No, no, I, I let you all get ahead of me, that was fine. But I, I do want to, I asked on Monday, and I didn't write it down, that I'd like, if, let's assume for a moment that everybody's excited about a reconfiguration and wants to move forward. I'd like to get your sense of what the steps are going forward and the timing on that. You can write it down and send it to us.
Okay.
You don't have to do it right now, if you, if it's too late. I mean, that's up to you.
I, I think we could keep it moving along.
All right.
I quickly wanted to actually go over, I remember on Monday, you specifically asked about details about the bicycle pedestrians. So, Jack's here, he can go over more details.
Yeah, so we looked at, we were tasked to look at ped and bike improvements along Carroll Avenue from Park Avenue all the way to Jackson Avenue. And along, between Park Avenue and, and Philadelphia Avenue, in both directions, there was approximately 13 feet of lane width from the center line to the face of curb. There is an existing stripe now, a white stripe, so roughly a 10-foot lane and a three-foot shoulder. But we were looking at possible ways that we can especially prove bike improvement. So, you know, one thing I thought about in, per S H A's bike guidelines, there's an opportunity to incorporate sharos. So, the, the bike markings along the road, approximately every 200 feet with signs that say, "May use full lane" with a bike symbol. So, there's an opportunity for that along Carroll, was from Park Avenue to Philadelphia. Currently now, there was a, between Philadelphia and Carroll, there was, I think, can't see right there, but there's already currently, I think, bike, bike signs there now. From Sycamore to Jackson, very narrow, no shoulder width at all. Basically, you're looking at 10 to probably barely 11-foot lanes. So, we were looking at incorporating definitely the, 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 may use full, full lane bike sign along that section as well as the, the shero markings to help with that. There is sidewalk, obviously on both sides of the road, all the way throughout our limits. There was that one section between 410, between Sycamore and, I believe Manor Circle on the north side, where there's no, there's no sidewalk there. So, there is some disconnect at that point. But for the most part, I mean, all the sidewalks were ADA, five-foot width. So, obviously by all the folks who walk to the co-op, you know, they utilize that already, so.
All right. We can move on to the next presentation? Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Glenn Cook. Had the pleasure of being here Monday night. Rather than going back and reinventing the wheel and going through our full presentation again, we received a lot of questions over the last two days from your staff, believe it or not, which were, we believe most of them probably came from you all. And there were some hangover situations from the other night. So, I was just going to touch on the study portion of what we've done to try to address the questions that were asked rather than repeating everything we did.
Thank you.
And then Jack came up and gave the presentation, and he took about 75% of what I was going to say away. But one of the things in the comments tonight that we heard and the other night when we were here was the fact that we did traffic counts for one day for our traffic study. That is common across the entire United States. In this particular case, because A M T and ourselves are both doing studies, we were not in concert when the studies were done. They did their counts on one day, we did ours on another. And the days that we can count are dictated to us by government, by Park and Planning, basically. And Jack explained that Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, schools have to be in session in clement weather. We turn the cameras off, we don't count because you don't get a true indication. So, what we did for our study is common practice, not only here in the state of Maryland, but all over the country. People were asking for supporting data, and you were mentioning a traffic study. This is what the traffic study looks like with supporting data. The reason why this has not been submitted yet is because the timing, that's a bad choice of words, the state highway administration turning the signals over to the county and the county changing the phasing and timing at the two intersections out there. We went ahead and got that information from the county before they implemented it this past Sunday. And that's what our original study was based on. And it showed some problems existing at the intersections. That's not a surprise to anybody. But we did have the opportunity to go out there Monday and talk with the technicians as they were. You can use formulas and equations and come up with answers, but the best way to control and find out how an intersection operate is to be at the intersection watching it. And that's what most technicians do. They work up a plan, they install it on the computers, or the controllers, if you will, and then they go out in the field and they tweak it. And from Monday to what we saw tonight out there has been a vast improvement. So, they're making the right adjustments. Paul had mentioned that originally they were planning on using 150-second cycle, but they found they had to increase that to 180. And I heard several people tonight when they were testifying that things are getting much better out at that intersection. So, I think the, the plan that the county implemented, now that they're in control of those intersections, is going to make traffic better, okay? The, when we did our study, we looked at existing traffic, we looked at background. After the other night, I did go back to look to see how much traffic was going to be generated by the daycare and the expansion of the middle school. And again, that, how you determine the traffic that's generated by use, there's national standards that we're required to use, it's not our guesswork. And what he equated to was, when you looked at both of them, at these two intersections, you're talking about one or two additional cars going through on a complete cycle of a light at an intersection. That's nothing that's really even going to be noticeable. And it certainly wouldn't affect the delay time that we used to gauge the intersection. So, I think the improvements the county has made, tomorrow I'm going to get in touch with the county, find out what the final timing settings were that they put on the controllers, and rerun our numbers and revise what we've done, the, for the exhibits and all. The question was asked about one intersection working better than the next. And we did queuing analysis, and the exhibit you saw the other night showed projected queuing. And that does happen. And a perfect example of the situation, I know it's not in Tacoma Park, but US 50 going to Ocean City, for many years, there's always been backups as you head to the ocean. And the minute the state highway administration fixed one further downstream, you ran into congestion again. So, yes, when you fix an intersection and get it working more efficiently, you run the risk of having to adjust the timing on adjacent signals so you don't create those bottlenecks like that. So, with that, I'll sit down and shut up, I know you all heard a lot tonight, and let Paul add a couple of things.
I, I do not believe, I need to go through the alternatives that we looked at. As Glenn said, we have a traffic impact study, and when we submit that to Park and Planning, it can only have one option to fix the problem. And as you know, you have an existing problem today. So, again, our study assumed the timing that was put in as of Sunday, which was 150-second cycle length. And our queued it, queue delays here, which again, southbound in the morning were over 1,000 feet. And then in the evening, driving eastbound on Carroll from the west, you know, were, were 700 feet. So, that is the existing problem. In the morning, it's southbound, and in the evening, it's, it's eastbound. And excuse me, and that's the only thing that's going to improve if you use the county's new timings, right? Is the existing? That's correct. In the morning, it's southbound, Carroll making the right turn to head westbound.
Got it.
And also Ethan Allen backs up for over 1,000 feet. So, I would like to talk about operation of our ultimate concept, which again, reduces delays and it does eliminate the all-red pedestrian phase. And one of the things I want to point out is, today, under the all-red phase, if you're sitting, if you're standing in front of the co-op and you're waiting for the all-red phase to come up, today, after they made the adjustment, you will be waiting 180 seconds for that all-red phase to come up. So, our proposed signal phasing, again, if you're at the intersection of relocated Carroll Avenue and you're standing on the corner in front of the co-op, you won't have to wait the full three minutes of cycle length because your phase is going to come up in the second phase. And that goes for all the other crossings. You, you are not waiting a, a full 180 seconds to receive that all-red phase when most people cross. One of the other issues that was pointed out before was the southbound maneuver, you know, that we weren't showing how vehicles were going to head southbound on Carroll and access the, the existing co-op, which is one-way southbound.
Can you just go back to just what you were talking about? So, you don't have to wait three minutes to cross, but you have to go on two crosswalks plus traverse the island if it's constructed, right? So, how much time, would I think about the same amount of time, or?
I do not believe it's going to be any longer than 180. If you just take half that 180 cycle length to cross two, two crosswalks, yes, you, you will have to traverse the, the green space area, but it will be less time than a full cycle length of just sitting waiting for the all-red to cross. So, again, talking about the maneuver of heading southbound along Carroll Avenue, and again, this stop bar, again, I, I actually drew these plans. And this stop bar was actually pulled back in order to allow movements from Ethan Allen and from Carroll Avenue right turn into the existing co-op. As it was mentioned, you cannot drive southbound and get into that lane because again, we're trying to keep that area out in front of the co-op, between the co-op and the, and the, the green space free of vehicles. So, again, we're, we're trying to look at a balance between cars and pedestrians. And in this particular case, we're using the pedestrians to dictate what we're trying to do. So, we will, and, and we have written responses to the issues in the questions, but basically, we, we will have to work and coordinate with the co-op to possibly reverse flow their traffic. So, they would enter in from the Sycamore entrance and exit out like a normal gas station at an intersection. We will, we will relocate the stop line up approximately right behind the crosswalk. So, as the signal phases change, the co-op traffic can exit northbound. So, that's, that's how we're going to address it. Again, we have to coordinate that with the co-op and coordinate that with Maryland State Highway.
Can I just make one point about that?
Sure.
The reason that it's important to look at that in, in different configurations is based on some of the test, some of what we heard tonight. If, if that's, if there's an expectation that smaller delivery trucks would be going in there, then that's gonna, which way they're going and how they're turning around and whether people can park at the same time is going to be something that we'll have to understand. So, just heads up.
Again, my history on the project's two years. I was brought in early on and, and did auto turn simulations probably for the first four, six months. And going back to the count, we actually did a, a full traffic count on a day that we had to just throw in the trash because there was a bridge out. It was brought to my attention that that count was not good, so we had to wait for that bridge to be completed. Again... Excuse me, excuse me. Councilmember Siri C., did you have a question?
I do. Can we go back? Because I'm a little confused. So, so I get if someone is going down Carroll towards Ethan Allen, the expectation is that the right turn would be fine. But if someone is coming...
This right turn, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to make sure I'm talking about the right thing. So, I'm talking about going, no, the red, the one below, what's this? This is Carroll, but which way is this? Eastbound, thank you. Then the expectation is you're making a right into the co-op, right?
Correct.
Now, if you're going westbound on Ethan Allen, is the expectation that you could ever make a left, is the expectation that you make a left turn into Sycamore and then circle around?
Well, that's what we would look to make the change. But under, under this new design, if you were, if traffic was still southbound, our assumption was if you got stuck here, the eastbound movements would get red and you would just pull into the existing entrance.
And so, is the expectation that you would be able to, I guess, turn this, what currently, looking at the arrows, appears to be a one-way?
One-way, southbound, and exits out on Sycamore.
Right, so are you proposing to make it a two-way?
It's not wide enough because it has angle spaces, which are actually smaller, and 90-degree parking. And the arrow, I'm sorry, the, the drive aisle is actually narrow today. There's, there's no way we could do two-way traffic on that. So, what we would hope to work out with the co-op and work out with state highway is we would reverse flow it, we would flip the angle parking so you can drive in off of Sycamore and then head northbound into those spaces. And again, exit out onto this area.
Okay, I'm still confused. So, that means you cannot, so under what you're proposing, you can't make a right? So, if you're going this other way...
Correct.
Then whoever it is, you cannot make a, you couldn't...
You would make a right on the Sycamore, I'm sorry.
Everyone would have to make a right on the Sycamore. So, there, there would no longer be, you could go, what is that, eastbound? And make a right. You, you, the only entrance would be through Sycamore, and then you would exit. Okay.
Unless it stays like it is today. And everyone, everyone would have to make a right turn off of the eastbound, make a left bound off of, I'm sorry, a left turn off of westbound, and everyone would exit out to the light to go in all directions. But then you have the problem with the people that are southbound on Carroll. Correct. So, and again, that's, our proposed fix is to, to reverse flow and again, work with the co-op and the state highway to address that issue.
And then, as I was trying to say, thank you for being more clear about what I was asking. So, then you, you might want to look at, well, I would like you to look at whether, if that's used for small truck deliveries also. Factor that in, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a whole tree of lights here, so Councilmember Costin?
I, I just have one quick question, then. That, to me, suggests that you would not be able to turn left out of the co-op parking lot, is that correct? Because there's no way you would be able to cross that.
We wouldn't recommend it, but it's possible.
Okay.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, I'll be, I'll be quick. There was a resident that mentioned that she works in Bethesda, and a lot of people are coming from Hyattsville and cutting through the city. There's a, a new apartment project that's going to deliver summer 2018, 350 units. Did you guys look at that in your?
We were not requested by Park and Planning if...
It's 3401 East West Highway, Hyattsville.
Okay, as of today, we weren't requested. We had three background projects and then the addition of these last two with the school and the daycare.
Okay.
So, we can check with Park and Planning?
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead now and get a few more questions in a minute. Sure, okay. Talking about truck deliveries, again, meeting with the co-op, it was our understanding that they use the biggest truck. And we designed the, you know, we looked at trying to get every opportunity to, to turn trucks on site. And again, a 73-foot truck cannot go down Sycamore, cannot go down Columbia, they're residential streets, and they cannot make those maneuvers. One thing I wanted to point out, that this truck lane is a public truck lane. It's not on private property, and no one can restrict trucks as they drive up into the queue. It's my understanding that the co-op is free to use this, that no one has indicated that they would be restricted from using the lane. And, and let me make sure I understood your, your answer there, that, that NDC would not be able to say that trucks couldn't use that lane? Correct. That, that land, that the truck lane would be dedicated to Maryland State Highway, and it would be, become government property, just like the other lanes on Carroll Avenue. I think that was some confusion earlier tonight, so thank you. Agree. And again, we're, we're showing a trash truck pickup for Tacoma Junction out front with a couple other trucks behind. And based on my observations with, again, looking at one day of observations for the co-op, I have the times that they receive deliveries in the... co-op, I have the times that they received deliveries and the amount of times that they were on site. And we do not believe that there's going to be a large queue of trucks. Again, those trucks all occur in the morning when the, when the southbound Carroll Avenue to get over to the west is the primary movement, the higher movement. This is a lay-by lane that we, that the traffic group designed in Baltimore City. And as you can see, this, this street is Eastern Avenue. It carries a large amount of traffic in both directions in two lanes, just like Carroll Avenue. And this project started out with trucks out in the curb lane. And the architect, the site manager, met with Glenn and myself, and, and we met with Baltimore City, and it was an easy fix. You know, you still provide the sidewalk, and now we have trucks out of the area. A very important thing happened today when we were out looking at the peak hour timing and watching the traffic operate. We observed a WB67 sitting in the southbound bus bay. And the rear of that truck is out in blocking the right turn movement. And we heard a lot of horns. And as you can see in that photograph, there is a UPS truck right behind that pulled up right behind and stopped, and both of these drivers were nowhere to be found. So without a dedicated truck lay-by lane, we're scared that this is what's going to And again, the Tacoma Junction trash would be picked up out front. The property management would oversee bringing out these cans, and whether they're larger or smaller, you know, that's to be determined. But they would certainly be front end picked up and, again, brought out. And this shows the, the one co-op truck, again, we're designing this 130-foot truck lane for the one tractor trailer that, again, is perceived that it's the co-op truck. It will handle all other trucks.
Can I, can I ask you a quick question about that?
Sure.
I think you said this on Monday, but I'd appreciate it if you'd say it again. So, so in terms of the truck radius, the biggest truck-
Yes.
-call-in, are they going to do what I do sometimes when I make-
They will not swing to the left.
...turns to the left, and then-
They will not swing to the left.
So this angle will be big enough for-
Correct.
What size truck to do that?
The 73-foot truck. This is an auto turn simulation. I work with this program.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify.
You sure?
Yeah.
It can actually, the WB67, the 73 and a half foot truck, can pull into this lane without swinging left into the left turn lane and straighten up-
Mm-hmm.
-without parallel parking like you would do a vehicle. Yes. One other very important thing I wanted to point out about the truck lay-by lane is I went to Montgomery County Planning and met with Dr. Marie LeBalle, who's a PhD, and she heads all reviews dealing with fire access, building access, and she basically reviews all site plans. And she had not one thing to say about the truck lane.
And we presume that she knew that there was a fire station just-
Correct. Yeah. She actually said that was a good thing.
She is the person who's-
She's the permitting person.
She is the permitting person for fire apparatus.
Right. Thank you.
Quick question. I just want to confirm, I know, and it's late, so it could just be my memory is failing me. The lay-by is not restrictive based on the size of the truck, correct?
Correct.
So it's not the case that smaller trucks, smaller delivery trucks would not be able to be in the lay-by?
Correct.
So it's basically as you have the room, first come, first served, you can use the lay-by?
Yes. In today's event where that truck stopped southbound Carroll, if that truck lay-by lane was there today, he could have come from a different direction, pulled into that lay-by lane. He would have had to move merchandise across the street, but it's safer than blocking the lane and taking up the bus stop.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And if I could just follow up, in the image here, as you were saying in response to the question from Councilmember DeBala, the large vehicle would go right in. But if there's another truck of some size already in there, then that becomes a little bit more complicated, right? Because he'd still be sticking out a little bit until he got to-
That is correct. But again, it's our understanding that the co-op receives only seven trucks per week.
Right.
And if one truck came each morning before the peak.
That size, yeah. But so there was this question, and maybe someone from NDC can just answer. Can any other sized truck be used by the co-op in the lay-by? Because it's-
Yes. We discussed it upstairs.
Quick question for the city manager. Do we have any updated information from the co-op regarding their delivery schedule and the size of the trucks?
We don't have any additional information that I know of.
Okay.
Since October.
Since October.
Right. And, and yes, and we just, I don't, I didn't have a chance to read the letter they sent today if there were more details in that, but, right, I don't have anything new. Okay. Thank you.
And, and we need-
Mike?
Sir, Mike. Thank you. And, and let's just put it this way. If you have not looked at the October information, you have the counts that you've, you've done, and then you have the October information from them. If you could also look at that and factor that into your recommendation, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Costin?
Thank you. Okay, I have a lot of questions here, and it's possible some of them have already been covered. I apologize if-
Excuse me, can I just-
Yeah.
-make one observation, that we only have 24 hours to go before it's tomorrow.
I understand, so I will try to be fast. And I appreciate all the work that you have done on this. So I just want to understand a few things a little more. First of all, you talked about, well, I'll skip over that one for right now. So in terms of the, the lay-by and the current intersection, you don't show any images of the lay-by in the current intersection-
Actually-
-as I recall, or is there one?
So this is a, is a different design, and this shows the double right, which wouldn't work from a weaving situation. You know, those two lanes are battling for which one's going to go to Philadelphia and which one would go westbound on Carroll Avenue. So this design is something that we couldn't support.
Right.
But this shows a smaller lay-by lane. And again, we, we're trying to balance community area over deliveries. If, in fact, we were to keep this crosswalk, I would recommend that, and actually State Highway would restrict the truck lane where the existing stop line is. So that's already established that with the existing configuration.
So if, if we kept the current configuration, the lay-by could not be as long as it is in the current proposal? Is that what you're saying?
Or it would get pushed back.
Or it would take some of the public space.
Or it would take the public space.
Yes.
How much of that public space would it take?
Again, the goal is to allow that truck to maneuver without having to parallel park. In previous versions, consulting with our architect, I've taken about half that space as a bare minimum to get that truck straight so he can unload. And again, the further west, the more distance we will be moving merchandise to the co-op.
So from your estimations, this would work if the intersection is not reconfigured, but it requires losing public space and-
Correct.
-walking farther with the merchandise.
And again, we hope that the trucks come before the peak hour where they would have room to maneuver and get into the space and out of the space.
Okay. All right. And so if the intersection is not reconfigured as well, what are your recommendations for where the bus stop goes? Because it seems like it may not work in the place you were considering in front of the co-op.
Right. I can, I could go to the, to the recommended relocated bus stops. And again, we have way, we have more detailed plans that show the, the bus routes and what buses go in each direction. And there's actually a previous plan to this, which wasn't uploaded because I thought we were strictly talking about realigning Carroll. There is another intersection plan for Philadelphia. Again, if the, if the lay-by lane gets moved to the west, there's a lot of frontage between that existing stop line of the signal and the co-op entrance that the bus stop technically could be relocated to. We don't really recommend moving it to the west because there is one, this yellow star here, it would put, it would put the two bus stops fairly closely. But I do understand that there's a southbound maneuver of a different bus that has to stop in front of the project. This bus stop can work with the existing condition and with the proposed, for sure.
I'm not sure if I'm thinking of this correctly at this hour, but wouldn't it seem that there, is there only one lane then? And wouldn't it seem like cars would then be trying to drive around it?
No, actually-
Or is, are there two and where it would be?
Yeah, actually, you may be aware of the westbound traffic drives around the stop bus at the park.
Yeah, which is a problem.
Correct. In, in front of the Tacoma Junction site, there will be two continuous lanes, whether it's under existing or proposed, and that would allow, if the bus was there for any length of time, it could allow a regular vehicle to go around without crossing the double yellow.
Right, so they would be in the left turn lane, but they would move-
It's a left turn lane.
Which is a stand, which is a standard thing. It's not the best, but it is a standard process, and it doesn't back up the traffic.
Okay.
I believe one of the other questions about this property owner here, we are maintaining the existing fence and the existing property line, and that goes for the radius to Manor Court. Again, this, this area is somewhat flexible. I am showing a bus stop that replaces the bus stop that's removed from the northbound We need the bus stop, we need sidewalk, and we will likely need a landscape area, some type of landscape area between the sidewalk and the existing fence. And it's currently shown as 14 feet.
So one other thing that someone brought up was, and I know we talked a little bit about whether you could reconfigure this and eliminate that right turn lane so that the public space was in front of the storefronts.
And I, and I did the calculation earlier today, but I forgot the paper, but it's actually 3,200 square feet. So that lane is 18 feet wide, and it's about 180 feet, so just doing the math. The important things to point out is you're going to lose your bus lane, and you're going to lose some meter parking. And the most crucial intersect, I'm sorry, crucial maneuver at this intersection in the morning is this right turn maneuver. And again, our goal is to separate that so it's not making a right turn here, you know, obstructing the pedestrians that would be turning, I'm sorry, crossing at that phase.
So what, what one person recommended, which I thought was interesting, was could you have, could you move that public space to in front of the storefronts where the right turn lane is right now, but keep a very small island between that right turn lane and the other lane so that you still had that sort of functionality?
Sure.
But you had it in front of the storefronts?
There could be an easy trade-off. If, if we wanted to split that, make the sidewalk area in front of these businesses twice or three times the width, we could still keep a separate right turn and still have a safe pedestrian crossing.
Okay. And you may or may not get more usable or better public space.
If I was a business owner on that side, I would definitely like that.
Sure. Okay. And then my other questions, going back to look at the delay slide at the very beginning, I'm curious what is included in the background traffic?
There were three separate background projects. Do you have it in the report, Glenn? So Park and Planning pointed out three separate projects. Gilbert and Wood Site Plan Number, I don't, I don't think you need the number, but it's about 12,500 square feet of retail. 6450 New Hampshire Avenue, which is about 2,400 square feet of retail, 2,500 office, and 6413 Orchard Avenue, which is almost 4,000 square feet of retail. All those projects generate certain amounts of trips that we've assumed in our study and flowed through the intersections-
Okay.
-and that adds to the delay.
So this is, I'll ask a question about this one, but I do want to go back to the background traffic. Why is, with the improvements that Ethan Allen and Sycamore removed?
That was removed because there would be no more Ethan Allen-Sycamore. It would be Ethan Allen-Carroll and Sycamore, so it would be the line right above that.
And so that's an average for the, the delay at all for-
Average vehicle delay.
Stop lines, yeah. Okay. Okay, that makes sense.
And again, we need this intersection to be under 80 seconds for the average delay.
Mm-hmm. So then, moving forward, when you have the queuing analysis, I think that's where it was.
Existing or proposed?
Um-
Well, proposed, so it shows actually both.
So both, actually. So if you look at like the Sycamore light, for example, you have existing traffic is 88, background traffic goes down to 83, and then total traffic 85. Why would, with the background traffic, does that reduce the number?
We talked about that, Glenn.
I'm sorry.
And it's the same for the Carroll right turn. Why, why would you move if you're adding background traffic? Why would it, why would it remove that?
The, the model that we use is a random model, and it changes every time you run it. Those values change. And usually, if one area suffers less delay under a scenario, that delay is picked up on another approach to the intersection. So it's really a function of the overall intersection and the delay being distributed through there. So sometimes when you see something where you're saying, well, you're adding more traffic, but the delay is less, that's because the average delay isn't, your heavier roadways with the heavier volume of traffic, those you want to keep with the lowest delay. But what it does is it drives the delay up on the side streets. So again, it's, it's a matter of timing. I mean, you know, by adjusting the signal timing, like the Montgomery County technician DeBindeau in the last couple days, you can adjust that. But the software program, it varies because every run you make can be a little different. That's why when we do it, we run it at least 10 times so that we get an average.
Okay. Let me see. And this may not be a question that you can answer, but you mentioned that the, the lay-by would be public, basically it would belong to SHA, so it would be a public space. How is that managed then if somebody wants to just park in it permanently? I mean, I guess you just put up a sign that says you can't park here or this is-
The signs that will be installed will be specified by State Highway, and they will contain signs that says this is a loading area only. And it could have additional sign at the bottom that says you, you will be towed if you're found here.
Okay.
This would be something that the police, the city police would end up enforcing.
Sure, sure. And, and the property management could certainly come out and yell at people, not issue tickets, but-
All right. Then, then I, I wanted to go to the garage and the garage entrance. I just want to, I feel like this is something that there isn't a lot of information about in this presentation, and it's sort of important for us to understand. So just in terms of the queuing that exists and people's ability to get in and out, can you just talk about that a little bit?
Sure. In the, in the morning peak, we will have less than 25 feet of queuing because really not a lot's going on site. And again, the model would show one vehicle exiting the garage. In the PM peak, we're showing about 109 feet currently, which equates to about six vehicles. So in the evening, the garage will encounter, in that worst hour, the peak hour, some delay getting out of the garage. Based upon the cycle length at, at relocated Carroll, hopefully, based on 150-second cycle length, that signal would turn green 24 times for that direction. So that's 24 times that, again, our, our queue length doesn't back up to the entrance, so you could easily turn a few cars out each cycle length to clear out that six-car delay.
And what about the queuing going eastbound on 410? So that people could turn left?
Eastbound, you mean westbound. Eastbound, you mean westbound.
West, yeah, westbound.
Okay. One of the things, as, as Glenn was mentioning, when you fix one intersection, the, the delay goes to the next intersection. In this, in this image, you'll see that existing westbound were about 70 feet in the right turn and 131 existing under today's operations. With the, with the project and the realignment of this intersection, more cars will get through here, and this actually will back up further because this intersection is fixed, doesn't have an all-red pedestrian face. So, certainly during the evening peak, exiting vehicles will encounter traffic heavy enough that they may not be able to make a, a left turn, and they would resort to making right turns. And again, I think, mentioned Monday, that State Highway has the ability to restrict right turns only during certain times, or they can make the access a right in, right out, once we get to that point.
The queuing that you see on there, that is the maximum queue length that we plan, well, not plan, the model shows is going to occur within the peak hour. So that may only happen, that specific length may only occur during one cycle of the light. The fact that the lights are synchronized now, much better than they were before, because they've got two different controllers that are operating them, it creates gaps. One of the things we looked at Monday was, it, our location is a little bit further to the west, but it's not much different than the existing parking lot and cars trying to get off of there today, because the queues are so much longer today than they used to be. And, and normally, during the cycles of the lights, you can sneak a car or two out during the yellow phase. So, we don't anticipate that there'd be a major queuing problem. The, the site distance, we did look at the site distance to make sure to the west, because it is around that curve there. And we, we do have safe stopping distance for vehicles. We don't have intersection site distance, which is what you'd really like to have, but in the alternative, the, you know, you have to have at least safe stopping site distance, so that a vehicle incoming can see somebody if they are coming out. And we do have that. And again, all this, the access location and design will be subject to approval by the State Highway Administration.
Can I, can I barge in on this particular point? I go back to the fact that I'm still on a crosswalk there, and one of the things that I wonder is if there were a crosswalk in, between Philadelphia and the stop bar there, how does that affect queuing lengths? Because I think, you know, one of the things that I heard that was of concern of coming out of the parking garage is cars that would be coming north on Philadelphia and making the left. And, so, but if they have to stop because it's a crosswalk, does that help that movement? And it's, it still could be an issue about trying to turn left out of the garage, I understand that, but I, that's one of the pros and cons that I'd kind of like to see some evaluation of.
Sure. Typically, State Highway and, and the county, if they don't have to, if they can provide a safe crossing, at least to get to all directions, they would not put a crosswalk here because of the right turn overlap. So you have people trying to get to Philadelphia, and you have the left turn off of Philadelphia, and you want to run that as long as you can to, to get the vehicle queues. Adding a crosswalk there would create more delay.
More vehicle delay.
Vehicle delay, correct.
Right, and so, that, again, if I have a deference as to the pedestrian crossing, but that's a judgment call that we have to do as a community.
Thank you.
All right, where are we now?
I have just two more very brief questions. So, it sounds to me like you think the garage entrance will work. Is there ever a situation where you would look at, look at this and say, and not this, but a project, and say, no, there's just no way you can put a, a garage entrance in that place?
There are some things that we can do to make that access safer. The adjoining property to the west, the Surgery Center has some landscaping and things out front that really do block sightlines.
Yeah.
And believe it or not, the, the fire staff has a vehicle, a large vehicle parked in front of their building on the sidewalk that limits sightlines. And one other thing to point out is the, the queues along this stretch of road with the intersection being reconfigured are gonna be less. Again, trying to get emergency equipment through, having the truck lane there, the truck, lay-by lane, if, if you're trying to get cars out of the way, it's a great spot for cars to just jump into the lay-by lane to allow emergency equipment.
Just like that, one thing. Like I said, the State Highway Administration will review this access, and if they have a problem with it, I mean, they could possibly say, this is not safe, we're not comfortable with it, you know, we want to restrict movements in and out of the garage to right turns in and right turns out, and that way it doesn't, you don't have to worry about the sightlines. That's obviously not the preference we have, and we don't think the town, the city would like that, because what happens is that's when you end up getting cut through the residential neighborhood, because people have to get around the block. But those are things that would be considered when the state, but the state, I mean, they have, we have, you know, volunteered to build right turns in, right turns out when there's restrictions, but at this location, we're pretty comfortable that it'll be fine.
Great, and my very last thing for this, I assume that if the intersection is improved, that would presume less cut-through traffic, is that correct? That you would, would, on, on other streets, or is, is there an analysis that needs to be done of that, or is there sort of an assumption that that goes away?
Certainly, if the, if the intersection's realigned and it's, and it's, you know, expected to have major delay reduction, a half, if not a third, the cut-throughs may be reduced, for sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Kolar?
I just, I just want to, I know that I still have other questions that I've sent you, so in the interest of sanity at this hour, it, we could find another way to get the more technical questions.
We've, we've prepared written responses, we can-
Yeah, we can, we can deal with it some other way. Yeah, that, that would be great, thank you.
Councilmember Kolar?
And thank you so much for all your work.
So just two, two remaining, two remaining things, and I hope it'll be quick. One of the things in the resolution that we had passed in, that we passed in October, October 25th, I think it was, where we laid out some of the parameters for the study, in there, it included, in effect, three different size buildings in terms of retail square footage that the traffic study would take into account, and I think it was one at 34,001 if the car repair place was purchased, which would make it bigger, and then one with the third floor. So, do those differences in square footage make enough of a difference that your numbers would vary at all? I, I don't think I really heard anything about that.
Well, as I mentioned, we are looking at-
That was my question, too.
I'm sorry.
That was, I, that was-
We're looking at one solution to fix the intersection problem.
Right.
And we look at one possibility with what the maximum construction could be, the worst-case construction.
Okay.
X amount of square footage of the retail, restaurant, and office space, and those numbers are dictated in our report currently, and they may have expanded because of the Tacoma Junction Auto Clinic was added.
Right, but the only thing I guess I would say is, a lot of people have talked about, you know, if you heard the last three hours, wanting a, a smaller building. It would be nice to know if cutting the square footage made a very significant difference or not in terms of the flow.
Definitely, the bigger the building, the more traffic it's going to generate.
Right.
But the problems out in this area are existing problems that exist today. So, if we put a 10,000-square-foot building on the site, we're still going to have, add traffic to the existing problems that exist today. So the size of the building is really irrelevant, because we gotta correct the problems that exist today. What we did was, we went to the maximum worst case with the largest density to see what would be needed to, to fix that.
So would you say a smaller one, would the difference be major or, or not that significant?
If you had a 10,000-square-foot building versus-
No, not 10,000, the difference between, say, 50 and 35, or whatever.
Obviously, the traffic would grow proportionately depending on the size, but with the issue being an existing problem, something needs to be done to accommodate that traffic.
So, thank you. The last question then is, you've talked at various points about MNCP, PBC, State Highway, and I'm not sure if you talked about it, but historic preservation would maybe come in if we're talking about moving the, and I don't know if that would be supported, but this plan calls for moving it. If all those entities have to look at this in some way, how does that factor in with us thinking about a site plan? Because would we potentially be voting on a site plan without knowing and getting back all, all of these major changes that would completely change it?
One thing, certainly, I mean, if, if that structure that's within the park area is historic and it cannot be moved, then this design doesn't work. We are understanding it's not historic, I believe.
It's not, so, but the other thing is that all of the right-of-way in this area is, is not part of what's considered that, under that historic control.
Okay, but setting aside that for a moment, there is MNCP, MNCP and also State Highway. And so, if, say, some version of the site plan, maybe not the current one, were to be approved, and then linked to potentially your changes, that all goes to State Highway, and if State Highway comes back and says, you gotta change all these things in a way that really made the site plan not work, does it make more sense to get their feedback and then approve the site plan?
They are part of the review process, is one of the questions that someone had Monday night, I believe. What is the review process? And once we get through, you know, this is the first step for the development of this property. Once we get the city's permission to move forward, then we'll start dealing with Park and Planning, where we get into preparing detailed site plans for review. And if I'm not mistaken, you all are referred to that process by Park and Planning to provide your feedback. So if the site plan comes in and you review it and there's issues, you make those issues known to Park and Planning, and they can condition us or the developer on making those changes. The review by the State Highway Administration runs concurrent with that. So hopefully, by the time we get through the county process, you all will see the detailed site plan with all the specifics on it. Park and Planning would see the whole bundle, and the state would have seen the traffic study and the proposed improvements. And that's when the county would make their final decision as to approve. But it's my understanding that you all, that the local jurisdiction is always part of that review process from Park and Planning.
Right, if I can, though. Part of the discuss, we, there's been discussions all along with State Highway, there, and I've even been corresponding with the State Highway Administrator to, to ask and to say, you know, if there's a no-go somewhere in here, can you give us the heads-up? So that we don't go down a path that really isn't workable. Generally, they're hesitant about saying that, because it's not the normal process. Nevertheless, they're trying to be helpful to us, and so there's been a lot more communication on this project than there normally is through a development review project. Can't rule out that we wouldn't be surprised further down the process, and then it would bounce back to us and the developer, and we have to all talk again, but we're trying to minimize that and, and to have those-
Well, maybe we should have a conversation among ourselves without, I mean-
No, but I mean, that's, but, you know, they, they also try to ping off the people that they work with on a regular basis at State Highway.
Certainly, the State Highway, again, hired AMT to develop their impact studies to address the problems, and some of these designs are within that earlier study that the state contracted with AMT.
All right. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Dibala, are you?
It, it has to do with the, with the process. If I understood you correctly, what you're recommending is that this, the process for reconfiguring the intersection and the process for review at the county level of the proposed development be concurrent. And, and I, I ask this because there were a number of people who, who, who came and commented tonight, who said, well, we should do one before the other, but what you all are recommending is that they go smoothly together?
Correct, they occur at the same time. The, when you submit a development package to Park and Planning for their review, a traffic study has to be part of that, because that's when the county addresses the adequate public facilities ordinance that we have to comply with. That's the 80-second standard that you've heard us mention multiple times. So they see the traffic study the same day they get a site plan, that's a requirement of the submission package. So, all that occurs at the same time.
All right, Councilmember Kostic?
I just wanted to briefly follow up with the city manager on the process question and say, not now, but perhaps at our next meeting or through email to us, if you could just explain how, what elements of our role would be involved if there are changes down the line that need to be made that impact what we've approved as what we want to see as a site plan?
We'll, we'll try to have that for you. We're also preparing a, kind of a schedule for each of the various components that are either in the development agreement or in your resolution, and identifying at what process the decision on that component gets made, because you may make, making a recommendation, but it may not, that process may not be decided until a little bit later, so we're trying to have that all clearly laid out for you.
Thank you.
All right, I thank you for your time and your energy being here, and it is tomorrow.
And I do have, I do want to bring up Colin from Street Sense, and I'd also like Alexander briefly from NDC on two items.
Good morning. I only have 30 or 40 slides to go through this time. Now, Colin Green with Street Sense, I just-
He's disconnecting right now.
We don't have any slides this time. Actually, I just wanted to mention sort of three things, because they have been brought up this evening, and they do have impact on circulation, travel, et cetera. We do have them, okay, great. Wanted to talk about the elevator idea. We mentioned it the last time we were here, wanted to be clear that that is an option to add a second elevator. We need to talk with the co-op very clearly about the requirements, location, weight, number of people, and other items that would need to be installed in that. So until we can get clarity on what kinds of requirements there are, we don't have them in the drawing, because we don't know what that representation will be, so that's number one. Number two, there was a question about the specifics of, well, not necessarily the specifics, but, but how trash gets handled and where dumpsters get located. So, just speaking about the Tacoma Junction new project, just these slides kind of run through how we arrived at the sizing and placement of those and how they would be carted out. So just to give you the background, there are, the, the way that you calculate in the design phase for how much trash you're going to produce onsite has to do with the use of the space, has to do with how much you generate, and the variables that are included are how many times a week you can pick it up, so you can change things, how large your dumpsters are, et cetera. So what we did is there are basically three uses at this ground plane, and by uses, they're all retail, but they have different requirements in the same way that parking would. For example, the highest use on the site or generator of trash is food and beverage. At about 8,500 square feet, they generate a yard of trash per week for every 350 square feet of floor area. Not gonna ask you to do the math, but just let you know that that's 25 cubic yards per week.
And that's the, and that's the yellow area.
That's, those are the yellow spaces in this drawing. In the next, the retail, which is sort of the next level down in terms of generation, those users generate a cubic yard a week for 850 square feet, I'll get to the punchline in just a moment. Seven and a half cubic yards per week generated by those spaces highlighted in this image, and then what we've been calling kind of studio at the back, there are a bunch of different types of uses, all of them generally are very low trash generators, whether it's, it's fitness or spa or even office in that space, something yet to be determined, generates about 25 cu, I'm sorry, generates about four cubic yards per week in that yellow zone that you're seeing there. All that being said, if you look to the right-hand side of this image, maybe I can show you with the, yeah, this area that we've designated for our dumpster area has been sized to accommodate about 40 cubic yards, necessary is 36 and a half per week, with three pickups per week. Now, if any of those things could change, our goal is to suggest that we have areas also in the back of the space that we could add to that. So, if uses change, if there are larger dumpsters necessary, all of that could be handled, again, up against- again, up against that service corridor, easy access from the corridor itself, and could be expanded at the loss of some of the square footage in the back of the building. What that enclosure is, is a lockable facility. It's open air to the side and to the back, but it is covered by the second floor. So we don't need to use any kind of special exhaust equipment for those sized spaces. It includes a lockable gate apparatus on the outside. It also includes a tamper-proof hose bib and a drain so that it can be cleaned, taken care of, et cetera. So at trash times, those would be ported out to the service corridor and out to the truck lay-by lane where they would be picked up. So only the top section on this drawing, and I don't want this to be misleading, are really necessary for the trash generated by the new project. But there is room in the project to add more and expand that, should that become necessary. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was the length that's shown in red here, and you heard Paul talk about the possibilities of movement depending on the intersection adjustments, et cetera. That distance from the very back of the lay-by lane to the center line of the service corridor is 150 feet. So it was shown as 145 in the real sort of hardcore technical drawings that TTG put together, but we're just saying it's 150 feet to that spot. Of course, then from that point, either through the corridor to a door, through the front of the store, but we wanted to be very clear about what that sort of overall length was at the street frontage. And that is, again, not from the back of the truck, that's from the very far end of the lay-by lane. So if it's a short truck, it's much closer. I think that covers the three things I wanted to get in there, but I have questions.
And the service corridor is covered, right?
It is not covered.
It's not covered.
No.
Would you consider, again, not answer now, but just, I think you and I talked about this informally, whether you could look at some kind of tinted cover?
Let me comment this way. It can be covered. The issue would be how it lands on the ground and how close it comes to the neighboring property. It also would affect potentially, we would expect it simply to be a lean-to apparatus of some sort, but we've left it off due to the complications that happen when it hits the ground. So for now, this is the cleanest and easiest way to do it.
And when you're talking about the waste collection and the trash and recycling, what you just described for now is for the tenants in the building.
That is correct.
And do you have anything to say about neighboring businesses? Or do you not want to get into that now?
We can get into that on another day. That is, so yes, what we have shown here...
I wasn't putting all this trash stuff up, I'm just saying.
No, I know that it was a topic, it is part of our circulation. We know that we need to deal with these things holistically. We wanted to be clear about what we have designed to be able to fit in here and what the potential is for future. Thank you.
And it's not...
You had a question?
Just real quick, so this is just open air, it's not refrigerated, it's, if somehow they're overflowing, it could be smelly?
It is, it is not for now. Those options still exist depending on the different users and what tenancy brings to us. Because they would be open on at least two of the sides, we don't necessarily see that they need to be refrigerated. It also has to do with how frequently things get picked up and when they get carted. So all of those are parts of that variable expression. The size requirements are taken care of.
A council member from Ward 3 has a question.
Thank you. So just to clarify how these are taken out to the lay-by? These would be taken out when the truck is there and not taken out and sitting on the street, on the side of the street. Is that correct? Or would they be taken out?
Correct. No, the intent is to have this be much more efficiently managed and centrally managed so that the timing and the movement of those are consistent, not that they're sort of left there for a few hours hoping that the truck will come. That because of the scale and size of the project and the details of an agreement between a refuse operator and the project, that can be managed a lot easier.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the plan seems to be that the trash truck would come to the front of the lay-by and pick up the dumpster and put it in. What if there is an existing delivery truck in that space?
It would, it would, first of all, the timing could be different than the delivery timing. And secondly, we would work toward that sort of timing issue to try to avoid that completely. The deliveries all kind of tend to happen in the mornings. Trash can be, and recycling can happen at other times. But we would make sure that those things aren't sitting out there for any extended period of time at, you know, I mean, as short as possible. Our intention is to store everything on-site for most of the time and only during those times. Bring them out, get them removed, and brought back in.
Okay. That seems feasible to me. I'm just thinking about what we just discussed.
Sure.
With regards to this being a public, more or less a public delivery lane. So there could be a delivery truck from across the street that's parked there when you need to get garbage picked up.
Yep. You tend to have a little bit more opportunity to exercise your demands when you have a private contractor do things like that. But again, that's, it's an important thing to consider and, you know, we would have to be able to be, deal with those situations.
This is where the mayor has to really be agile. All the lights are out, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
That happened fast.